Let us pray. Most holy and blessed Father, Thou art God and God alone. Father, we thank you for your loving kindness and tender mercy that you show to us every morning. And Father, we ask you right now to bring your holy presence into this meeting. Lead us and guide us. Give us strategic ideas, give us God ideas, not just good ideas, but God ideas, to help move our city forward. Because you said in your word that he who watches the city watches the bank. He that builds the city builds the bank. So Father, we want to do our watching and our building on your leading and guidance. And Father, when all of these things are done, we want to come together in collaboration and have the courageous conversations that we need to have. And these in all of the blessings, we ask the name of that son of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Much obliged. It is the life of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good to see everybody this morning. Thank you for being here. Pete, can you hear us okay? Hey Pete, you there?
Thank you. So, you Pete?
People will be joining us, so much.
Yes. Especially Daniel briefly last night. I want to try to be efficient moving through today, even though when you're debating hundreds of thousands of dollars is important. So we need to be careful. But I do want to be efficient and expedient where possible. Danny, we're going to start out going through revenues, which I believe should be a little less controversial. They're our, our staff's best guesses on what we can expect based on the last three years. And then once we get through that, that'll lay out the expenditures part where we might have a little bit more back and forth. So let's do it. Danny, would you want to kick off your start presentation?
Sure, sure Danny. So of course, this is the fiscal year budget 2022, 2023. Just a few kind of things we're going to talk about today. Of course, summary of revenues. We're going to start with the general fund, go through the whole general fund. Then we'll go into the other parts of the city. Of course, we will go through each department. We did the general fund first, we'll do some capital plus, not that many this year, we'll go over those. Couple of things to highlight. First of all, we are recording this meeting, so it's going to be available for streaming afterwards, for viewing afterwards. So speak loudly and clearly if you have had concerns about volume on our speaking. And then also just a couple of highlights from the budget. First of all, there are no tax increases in this budget. We did not need to increase any taxes to balance the budget this year. So that's a, I think, a good success for the city. We do have some outside factors that have affected the budget overall. I think I've covered those. Yep. So we are anticipating a COLA of 2%. There was a dialogue once, we'll talk about that anyway, but the COLA is anticipated in this budget. Retirement, this is the last year, we're talking about 1%, so that's an outside factor we have to account for. And then the other one that we're still waiting to hear what's going to happen with, but we didn't budget for it, is PIB is requesting an 18% increase in health insurance costs on part of the city that we pay. And so that's a big year, it's going to be effective in January if it does go through. So that's a 9% increase, so that we had to include that in the budget prepared for that. So that did go in, even though it hasn't improved yet. And then our load factor for insurance is still 1%. So that's still, is that kind of guided how we anticipate all of revenues and the expenditure throughout the entire?
But the PIB thing would be approved by the General Assembly or someone?
Yeah, and they ask for it pretty often. But this is one of the largest ones they've asked for, and their reasoning is pretty sound. Costs have just gone up. That's just what's going on. And typically, they do ask for a lot of increase a lot of times, but this is the largest one. All my contacts have said that they do anticipate this coming through with some passion. So I don't know if it's going to be quite 18%. If it's not, great, but if it's still higher than 18, great. So, but we are anticipating that, so we didn't budget it.
So, just to say that one thing to think about too, since that has been a year. So this year, if that does pass, we'd have the 9% this year. Maybe I think next year, we have another 9% that would be added on that as well. That's already right off the bat, before we would even start the budget next year. We know we're going to have another 9% increase if that 18% is the budget that goes past.
As far as money goes currently, with current employees, that was about 200 something thousand increase with 18%. So we're looking at 100,000 increase this year from that. And then it'll be 100, 100 some total, 200 next year if that's going to work.
Daniel, give me, two or three years ago, didn't the state, was it our retirement?
The retirement.
That they, um, and we had to, yeah. How far along or are we close to being at the end of the road?
This is the last 1%. So this is it. This was good in a lot of cities.
So now they're not happy, they're going to go to 9% with the insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You nailed it. They, the state continues to struggle with retirement system and our health insurance. I mean, the health system is pretty strong. So this is, when they request things, it kind of is listed to the retirement system, of course, as its own issues. But that 1%, I think it was a, was it 4 or 3% increase over seven years. Sorry, but I was in gooseberry. Five years, and it was unfunded. So that was, several cities had to raise taxes to cover. So, but again, we don't have to cover, based on these factors, we don't have to do a tax increase this year. We can still cover whatever things we talked about. And that is keeping in mind, we did not do as many capital projects this year because the costs and materials are just so high right now. We could pull it off on, we were going to. And that was kind of just a general concept as well as expenditures. Any questions on any of this?
Yeah, help me out with the load factor.
Sure. So the load factor, essentially, we take into account every single incident we've had. And I got over this man here, but let me know if I talk, sorry, Amber Matthews, she's a bless.
Stop it.
I know. But a load factor essentially calculates all the incidents we've had. And then if we base that across, it's with our other, it's a pool that we're part of. But if we have several, we have a lot of car crashes, we have a lot of injuries. That can affect our factor that goes into our, what we pay for our insurance and things like that. So if it was, if we had many, we had more incidents, if the police got to one or two more wrecks, maybe a little more, I'm thinking about back there. But if they get the more wrecks, or if they fire us an instance, or sanitation has an instance, we have trips and falls. That can increase our load factor, which can increase the cost for us, for us. But it is a pool that we, so we have the benefit of having it split amongst the entire South Carolina base that we have. So one is good, it's about what we should be. I think, can we go any lower than one? Yep. Less than one would be better. So we have a normal amount of injuries and falls, I would say.
I wanted to ask a question about the Medicare insurance premium, why could that get dropped? For those of us that are retired, that already received Medicare.
Sure.
Do we have a, is this like a whole one thing for us? Is there any benefit for us at all? Or we're just paying?
I think, I think we're just paying in.
I think you're just paying in.
We're helping out everybody.
Right.
So, no, it depends. And there's several cities' employees who across the state who aren't carried and things like that, they're just paying in. But they are drawing retirements and things like that. But I think you're, if you are receiving something, if you're spending, it's about everyone else.
That's the federal law.
Yeah.
The 9% on the health insurance, again, dollars and cents, what does that about come down?
A hundred thousand, a little bit over a hundred thousand this year. It'll be 200 million when it solves up.
You said no tax increase, kicking the can down the road a year. In a perfect world, if everything stays status quo, do you feel like we could absorb it again? Or we may not have the same conversation this time next year?
No, I think we could definitely absorb it again, where our, I did start our revenues are trending.
I think we're paying for a lot of things to increase. We have new property taxes and everything else.
Is that, the only thing that would trigger a tax increase is if we want to do something out of the side of the, so if we want to build another building or something like that, or we want to add a lot more employees, things like that, then that's going to trigger a need for tax increase. We have not raised taxes in several years, many, many years, in fact, we did lower taxes in 2017 or 18. And so.
That's called a bright.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
So.
More speaking to the camera.
That's right. So the main thing is that we have no, we have no need right now to raise taxes. In this budget, I don't anticipate unless we do something outside of what we've kind of been trying to be doing. But again, if you, if council has a desire, they want to do, they want to build a new building, they want to add a whole, you know, whole slew of employees, then we need to do that. We will probably carry some taxes. And there's a cap to how much millage we can do in our mill.
And you can look back how many years, three, two?
I mean, so maybe Charleston has a mill, it's like 1 million dollars, and we have a mill, it's not that. So it's, you have to be pretty judicious on how we do that. And understanding that we probably, for raising the taxes, will generate maybe like something a million dollars. It's not that much. So that's why it's kind of, city manager talking, it's a good idea at some point to intermittently raise taxes to keep up with costs.
Well, that's where I was going with that. Like if you thought we were going to have to go 2 or 3%, work our way into it rather than.
Yeah.
Hitting them with the whole.
Sure. I mean, that's, that's a strategy. And one that we have not really, it seems like the city council is not going to take it. They don't have taken that approach, but certainly is an approach you can, we can explore that if you guys want to.
Because there's going to be projects, and like you said, as expensive as everything is, I'd like to have a little bit of seed in there that if we did have the right project or we felt like we wanted to go forward with it, we wouldn't have to wait till the next fiscal year to put that in motion.
Understood, yeah. I mean, so like, like one, one project that comes to mind, maybe this public safety building, to pay for a bond, I would absolutely encourage to celebrate taxes to cover that cost. And that would be tied directly to a need. It's, I think it's easier for people to swallow because it's, it's tied to public safety, it's tied to this physical thing we're going to be improving. When you're just raising taxes to raise taxes, that sometimes can get a little, you know, hard for people to understand. But the amount of money that is raised when taxes are raised is minimal for the individual. But it's greater collectively for us, because we only have 7,400 residents or so that we're taxing. And so it's, it's not much, but it is a strategy we certainly can explore. I think that we start looking at capital flow through plans and start forward planning as we look at improvements for all our departments. And, you know, expanding them, we do need to take a look at the tax increase approach as we go forward. That could be, I think, maybe an extra strategic plan, we can start looking at that, incorporate that into that.
When's the next county reassessment?
No, I'll have to look up for that. I'll find out today if we can get it for you. Got any helpers here? But that would be good to do. We just haven't.
I think our last tax merge was 2014.
No, we definitely have one since I've been here because we did the tax rollback.
The tax rollbacks when we rolled back?
Yeah, you do it with the reassessment.
You're talking about recent taxes, seriously?
No, but the reassessment, so we did it, well, we did the rollback based off of the assessments, right? So it went up, so we were actually able to lower again. That happened in.
17, I think.
That one happened, it was, I think that was at Disney doing that, doing that spreadsheet. So I remember doing that spreadsheet on.
Probably that was your first year here.
18.
Second, it was 18.
18.
Yeah.
But you're saying 14 you had a tax increase?
Yeah.
Okay. So we had a, we had a reassessment, which we did lower taxes.
That's right.
In 18.
And then we put mileage on to, to pay for some, what is it, bonds or something?
Yeah, debt service.
Debt service is what it was. And that was a good one.
Seven mils.
Yeah.
And we did, and that was to pay for when I took the roots up at South Lights. That was the last one that we done with the G O debt.
Why don't we, let me do a full analysis of what our tax history has been, increases, decreases, and whatnot. How like you guys can have a full understanding of where we've been, where we feel we're going. And then as we think about that, we can look into all the future plans and see how we can incorporate in the strategy to help us with that. Because we can't, we're not a federal government, so we can't. So we can find somewhere. I know, I tried the best about like that. So, all right. Anything else on this code, we can move into the revenues. All right, great. All right.
How many slides we got?
Forty-six, let's go. But somewhere like this, you're pretty slight, so it's great. All right, so this is just a history, if you guys looked at your packet, you did get a DENDUP, which is a three-year analysis lookback. To caveat, 2018 to about 20 was all actual costs. And then what we did is looked at the budget of not the last year, to the cost of the budget for this year. We did that because there's a lot of money flowing in right at the end of the year. A lot of revenue comes in taxing, business license comes in. So we do, when we start this process in March, in February, there's a lot of revenue that's missing. So we don't include actions for the past year until we're close to the end of the year. So as you can see, we've had our, 2018 to 2020, we've had steady growth in the revenues. That is taking into account of some COVID, we did anticipate less revenue in 2020. But our actuals actually show us breaking the bank there. So we anticipated in 2020, I think about 10, we actually did about 12. That was, that was building in less revenue, because we anticipated over COVID.
And the expenditures are pretty much flat.
They're getting, but you can see, I think the trend to watch here too, is that we are consistently going down in how we spend. And that's been something that in the past years, we've been pushing for, is after expending, control of our spending. That's what's led to a greater fund balance, which we can cover later on. So we're going the right direction, increased revenue, increased expenditures. That's, that's the bottom line, that's something to take away from this slide, so.
So in 2021, we actually spent less than we did in 18, 19?
2021? Yes. Yeah. And that's again, us being pretty judicious about how we expend money. And we do have to say no, unfortunately sometimes, but we also say yes when it makes sense. Okay. This is just the, this looks pretty stark, but it really zoomed in here, that's only 440,000 difference. But that is showing, that is our anticipated growth in revenues for general fund alone, $440,000 worth of revenues. And of course, we have to balance the budget, that's expenditures and projected that. So again, going in the right directions, it's good stuff. It's a 4% increase, which I think is pretty steady. Good. Any questions on any of this? All right. This is summary of what our revenues have built up. Of course, 53% taxes, 32% licenses, that's the one I'd like to see increase. That's the one we really do have some control of. I would love to see that closer to 40, 40, and then the rest of it builds up. We of course do have a transfer in bar from our utility fund. We do sell some capital assets, but you can see the waterfall of our money, it's taxes and business licenses.
Now, licenses did go up.
It did.
From past year to this year, a bit bit one.
Great segue Johnny. So the areas of growth that we have are, so this is the four highest that we have. And so local option sales taxes, growth around the county, and we get reimbursed that. So that's our part of the largest, $350,000. Business licenses has grown $215,000 from what we're anticipating. We were able, because of growth in utility fund, to increase our transfer ins, that's 0.4 million, 0.34. And then accommodations is steadily going back up, so we do have to transfer back for that too, at 41,000. And you can see the growth rate of local sales tax, 20%, 11% for business license, and transfer utilities at 4%, which is not far from that.
And that accommodations one does look rather large, but that's because we increased it so much.
Oh, yeah.
So that's why you're seeing such a large jump in accommodations. We're starting to get back to pre-COVID.
Accommodations.
Accommodation revenues.
So would you, would you generally say that the, the reason for the increase in revenues is just economic growth within the city limits?
Yes, absolutely. Growth in the city limits and outside. We do benefit from outside city limits, but really, the business license, when we look at that, we're anticipating new stores opening, higher revenues for stores, and just knowing what's coming down, what stores are opening. And this includes apartment complexes opening, happening, all those things. Anything that draws a business license, we're seeing that growth go up. If you look at the past three years, that trend is, is going in the right direction, which is good. And as we continue to push economic development, what we've always been doing, that's what we can continue to grow.
You know, we've been pretty judicious about finding businesses that are not paying business licenses that may be?
Yes, that's, we do hire service that helps us with that. It's pretty common for cities to have either an on-staff person or a service that goes out. Essentially, they just call. I mean, one example is, I think it was Hallmark. And most of Hallmark sells cards in the grocery stores. But it is, they're a vendor for that, they're not actually part of Food Line or wherever. So we got a business license from them because they have to, they pay money. And of course, we did do the changes to commercial rental services, which does help. It's not a lot, but it does make sure that we're kind of close to $1,000 a year or something. But it's still, it all goes towards the growth of the city, and it helps pay.
And it levels the plate.
It does. And, and the reason why it's important is because this next slide, those are, that's the general fund. That's all the departments the general fund supports. And it's, it's a lot. And so this is, you know, about 50% of our total expenditures a year is general fund. And that's all coming out of this, this, that money. So every little bit helps to pay for police, fires, sanitation, not sanitation, but streets and grounds. Me, of course, which is most important. So all those things, that's what we're going. But that's where you can kind of see where we, the breakdown of how we spend things. Public safety is the largest, almost 40% of our money gets to fire and police. General governance is the support systems for all of that. So of course, you have, you know, myself, corporations, mayor and council, city clerk, this is every, that's all in general services. Recreation is about 5%. And then we have the kind of small ones, and public works from 7%, which is lower than I would expect in most other cities. That's typically a very large portion of the budget, but that's for streets and grounds only. So, any questions about that?
Will we get, sorry, will we get too far away from business license? Because I feel it more and more that that's becoming a hot topic, right? Especially because we saw what happened in State House, you know, the paths for how that we can pin, or charge people for that. It's, it's a hot topic, and you asked about how we collect it and all. I just know that, you know, they did get creative this year, but that we do have Marguerite that comes in and helps with that. And Marguerite has many years of experience with the city and business license, so she's really able to help to create and manage that task. And one other thing that Brandon was able to assist them with is, this year, they were able to use, you know, we went to the automated phone system for the call, and they were able to export that out, how many people had paid. And I think Brandon, he said it's probably close to 1,000 businesses they were able to call.
In one day.
One day, right? To knock that out and not have to have a person calling for people that haven't done it. And automated call to say, hey, y'all, it's time, it's your time.
I can imagine that resulted in a big.
Yes.
Jump in the number.
A big jump, and we can talk from the online payments, because we saw, I saw a big jump in online payments for business license. So being able to do that and utilize that type of technology is, I can't imagine how much that can help them, especially town wise. We definitely, you can see from the early business license, it is something we need to continue to collect, make sure that people are, are doing that.
That's the beauty, unless you raise taxes, that is pretty much the sole source of revenue for us that we can have some control over. Control of it, I actually encourage it to grow faster. And that's why we push for new businesses and growth around the city, it definitely helps.
Here. I'm sorry. So that service is free.
It's free. It is something we pay for, we use it on the utility side for people. And I know that people are greatly appreciative since we've started that. They get the automated calls before we do the cutoff. And actually, sanitation going forward, we're talking about that's what we can do to tell people for scheduled holidays when it changes. Now, Brandon, I believe he was pretty to that type of service, maybe from D O R. It was something that he had really worked on to get us that phone system in place to go make those calls. So it is not just the law though for, for water, sewer, we're actually, we use it for this. I think all it uses is a spreadsheet of the call numbers. We generate the message, record it, and then they're able to send it out that way. I mean, it is a service we pay for, but it's one they ever pay.
No, 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 I wasn't asking if we pay for the service.
Sure.
The customer does not pay for the service.
No, right. Nope.
Because when you pay our bills, several instances, we pay our taxes in the county.
Yeah.
There's a fee.
Right. And we actually, we absolutely, we absorb that cost. They did not have to pay.
That's great.
Right? I know, I tried, I paid for a car for my taxes in Chesterfield, and I was like, I'm paying what? Credit card. And I said, if I came in person and I'm charged, and they said, yes, you're still charged with credit card payment.
That's a hot topic.
Right? No, we absorb that cost, it's worth it for us, absolutely. If you're going in, I'd much rather do this, so we absorb it.
Make it easy for them to give us their money.
Exactly.
Right.
We pay for them.
Yes. It's fine with us.
But you see, business now charging for using credit cards.
Absolutely.
Instead of cash.
Yeah.
Because you get a, you know, oh, take three, just in a song, you know.
Yeah. And I would say one thing that Terry has done well, her system does not lose our business. She reaches out to them periodically, especially because we have to use Car Connect for water, car, and other places. And we let them know, Brandon can help with one project as well, with the utility side of it. Here are the rates that were being offered, and they match it. So they don't want us to, they don't want us to spend. So that periodic review of where our rates are at has been really helpful to, to try and keep it as low as possible.
That was one of my notes in here. I would, I'd love to see what we're paying in credit card processing fees from our major providers. Always been curious about that.
Sure. You know, I think it's built into it obviously.
Well, and it depends. I mean, if we can get those rates, it really depends on, across what is it for? Because some systems are required, you don't have a choice, right? So like Smart Fusion is linked up with our online pay system, things like that, we're stuck there. You don't, using that service.
Where's what line up?
To have GoHub, oh, we'll bank processing things, that can be important.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll cover that if we get to.
Yeah.
I mean, I saw the dollar number, but I'm curious about what it is as a percent, and if it's, what their, compared to if they're really being.
Right, because Terry, I'm not sure the actual numbers right now, because Terry does keep going after the lowest number every time.
Yeah.
And the other thing I forgot to ask is, just going forward, if there's an index for these department numbers to help you understand the, the fund codes?
Oh, sure.
You know, I'd like to have that as a reference.
Yeah, that, so we, we did, that's the accounting function, it's our ADP, it's just so we can identify with that five digit or five digit, it's four to five digits. But, but section code that it develops. So that's largely, I put them in there to help us essentially find it. So we, we refer to it as 410 or 418, but you guys definitely should refer to this, you know, parse bracket we're going to be talking about. But we'll get back to you, you know, probably.
So which part do you vote on that? What the department is, is that what you mean?
Well, like, just a reference for what 426 means.
Just that list, the magazine.
Okay.
Or like the, just the, the various components of, of what, what does the first two digits, 01 mean versus 08? Just a quick look at and see what those are.
Got it.
Yeah, so 01, if we get into 01's general fund, then the next code is the department. Then the next one is.
Rarely used, is project.
Project, and then the other one is actually the use of it. So you see those get repeated across as we were talking about. So like, I'm trying to find what these are, what these are right now. So one that's easy is like office supplies is always 3.
3 is always 40.
So that's, and that's just for our accounting needs, but that's. Well, I'll get you a definitely breakdown of this for us.
Yeah, and I think it would be helpful.
Something you can go and talk.
Yeah, so like when you look up here, you'll see it up here as well. The only one that, that wouldn't be up here, so you always have the fund number, and then you have the department number, this is business acquirer. So those would be at the beginning of each one. But I'm trying to think, I think the code we need in there, which I think would be easier to draw if we just had the name of it. I don't want to throw it off more from our internal accounting perspective, right? I don't want that to have to throw it off our code numbers, right? I don't know if y'all actually need that part of it, if you should, that's what y'all want.
That's why I was joking with, that this Florence uses a 15 series of codes. And I, I love Kevin Yoko, who's the assistant of mine, story of the city. But he raves about it, and I just don't see it. It's, it, that's getting the capital first, don't get into the others.
Yeah.
No, that's Kevin, I'm sorry. But anything else we want to move into? All right, so that is our revenues and expenditures for general fund in total. So now, we're going to jump into the departments. And what I do anticipate with this, I have just a screenshot of the, kind of, charge and the overall expenditures. I'm going to essentially say, all right, so first one up is general fund administration, 410. Let's hit that, if you do a pick, we can do a line read if you want, or we can just say if you have anything in it, let me know, we'll talk in there. So first up is 410, 416, this is our general fund, this is where a lot of catalog that we don't quite fit in directly into a department. And also our legal department, legal fees. So any type of attorney services that we have for, you know, anything in the city typically comes out of here. So, any questions on this one? We're on page 23 of the budget area. Sorry, I'll call this out.
All right, give us a second.
Sure. So the main thing here, you know, this, one of the. What was included here? What's that, what's that was included in this one? Can I pull the, my
So the total budget actually went down slightly?
Yes.
Yes.
The general fund.
Mayor's. That's mayor's, to be more accurately predicted by mayor's. We're always a little behind.
That's right.
We do tend to, our employees perform well, so we were able to, so we actually act more accurately predicted of mayor's this year. Every year it's been steadily increasing as our salaries increase. So that hundred fifty thousand dollars is solely for mayor's department.
And that one, we never included FICA. So we, we included the FICA this year. So that's why, that's why I also included that
Yes.
to get the FICA down. Put that in there.
Yeah, it's a hundred forty, a hundred ten thousand.
That's bigger represents does not if everyone got a merit bonus and pulled it out.
Yes, we're, we're about, that's what average about it. It's about average.
And that's based off of, when you look at, when we have this one, when we look at what have we paid out in years past, going up all that and continuing with our employees of a hundred and twenty full-time employees. So that's what that's based off of. We look at the prior years of what we got just in, based off of how many current employees we are seeing that for that.
So you can't want it bumped up by forty percent this year?
It bumped up because we were underfussing it over the past years. We were not accurately predicting how much we're actually getting. So every year we seem to be kind of breaking the budget there, so we're pushing it up to more accurately.
Trying to look at that because that one oh three, that, I need to look at that number because we definitely spent more than that. Our total out the door this year, yeah, year four, like if you look at what we spent this year, oh, which is not in there, so you wouldn't see that. We talked about this, didn't we, Johnny? We just talked about this yesterday.
That's right.
So we spent close to one forty this year on it, especially that, at the door with taxes. And she, I mean, she can pull up that number, whatever you may get on that, but it was like that one forty.
Anything else?
It's, it's, it's just being more accurate this year.
Absolutely.
The money was still going out the door.
Every year we get tighter and tighter on projecting these things. And one department in particular that is, is looking at how that process works is operations maintenance, which is the department that's relatively new, about two years old. And that is general maintenance disposition we have from when I first started, essentially going around doing the workforce for the city. We're getting better at predicting where we can book the revenues. So every year we get tighter and tighter. So this is one example of that.
So Karen, from an accounting standpoint, help me understand that if the money was really coming out, it was closer to a hundred and forty this year, then where did it, where was it in the budget? Where did it come from? How did it balance out before? You know, like you said, we already spent one forty. So where was it?
We would be utilizing understanding in other areas, and we'd also be utilizing contingency on that. That would be based off of the scale within police. I felt like for this year and for the years past, we've continued to up it and try to accurately reflect it. And we continue to add police. And that is one that you don't, you don't base off of that where your budget is at, your review process is set up the same, it's a five percent scale. We need to treat that in the way that it is. We weren't going to take away money from that point. We weren't going to do that. So that would be where our savings across the board and other areas would help to
Yeah, basically, that's what I was getting at. If you, if you need to go pay it out, but you didn't really know where it's come from, how did you know you had enough under budget and other casualism given in fact it was all the other day to pay out?
So we look at, that line, that goes over, we have other lines that we're monitoring. And so the whole general fund is what we're looking at. And so we look at, we currently are always monitoring what's the percentage of it should be at. So if we are over budget one item, we definitely can make it up. Or in years past, we've had to do budget minimum and things like that. But that's, what we're anticipating this year is not a budget minimum for that reason. We have savings across the board that can help with that.
So the transfer between line items?
There you go.
Yeah, that's what we do. We have a general set number that we do not go over in our mind. If we have to go for anything like that, it's either kind of counsel. But there's a certain number I can make up that I can, I have the authority to go ahead and use that between, if I want to see that. All right. Anything else? We'll move on to the next one. All right, sir. This is Sharon's favorite one.
What page, sir?
It is page twenty-seven. Oh, right. Yeah. Thank you, Karen. One thing that was in addition to that general four ten, we are, we did write for a new website, which came out strategic plan, so thirty thousand dollars of budget. We will be thorough on that process to start and just try to stick to that unless it's too difficult. That was just a guess. All right.
Sample, new website?
A new website, yes.
Yeah.
Where's the good book, can you please?
That's in line special projects, zero, one, four, ten, seven, thirty-five. All right. Mayor and council, twenty-seven.
And actually, page twenty-five, this is
Yeah, it goes on page twenty-three, line thirty-five, only shows forty-three thousand
Seven thirty-five, four, ten, seven?
Seven thirty-five is forty-three thousand versus thirty-five, which you're only an increased to eighty, no?
That's right. We're going to utilize a portion of that thirty-five for any award that we have. We're, we're noting that of the money in the sentence, the thirty thousand that we're, we're planning to push from that.
As opposed to a different special project for this year is the website.
That's right. And we base up at that off of how much we've utilized out of the special project funds of this year and the years past, to determine that we have that number there.
And those, that fund is generally for if something comes from you guys that you want to do, we tend, we go to that one for, because it's not quite a department. All right.
Look right up above that, Karen, on page twenty-five, I just highlighted, what is our core software? And I see the dollar figure. Is that something we use across all lines and all departments? Right at the very top of the page, line four twenty-four, making those contracts for core software.
Yeah.
Forty-nine, one fifty-two.
Let me confirm that one, that detailed thing, the less thing, Amber forgot because that is all about her. When we have core software on that line, what, what would all that entail, that forty-nine thousand? Yeah. When we came up with that, or is that the one we did check?
Changed the description.
Oh, we did. So one thing we got away from this year, and I wanted to do this, is I took vendor names out. That's why we're in the core software. So while my chassis pulled up, we left it on the side. I want to get away from having vendor names.
I would imagine it's Smart Fusion, Officer sixty-five, stuff like that.
I try to make sure on that, that would entail Smart Fusion, which is one of our biggest, Hairs Cloud, which would be all our accounting software, business license software.
That way if they change the software service, then they don't have to change the name.
Right. I appreciate y'all translating things from accounting to English for us.
Of course. Well, yeah.
I really want to get away from, I did not want, I really want to get away from vendor names in here, just more of a general.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
That's one thing.
And I'll take this opportunity to, to say thank you for this giant tome of information. Being new, new to it, I found it really helpful that, I mean, you spent several years making it, but these definitions and descriptions and stuff, just the amount of detail, really, really appreciate that.
That's Terry and that city all day, they, they work really, really hard.
This again, this is the second year we've used this.
And it's, they do the work, but like all the charts, every department head, we send it to them, and they send us all their updates. They send us all their breakdowns. It is a leap across the city to make this massive.
About a three, I think, or four.
When we enter our department, when we enter our budgets into Smart Fusion, we put these notes in there.
That's right.
So they just transfer that over and then help us revise it a minute.
Kind of bottom up, it's not from the top down.
It's kind of a picture.
So we might, we might finesse some of the wording on these things that, that come in from it, right? We take their notes that they enter in.
Not calling out any department, sorry.
No way.
We'll do that.
Okay.
Not, not gonna do it. But it is absolutely a team effort. I know Tracy and we're very thankful for all the information they give. They give any fun to us to work with. It's a lot more.
I was going to say too, the core software, that is our county software. Our Hairs Cloud, which we access Smart Fusion, which is our county software. That's that.
Any else to move on to the next one? Ready? All right. So the one thing to note here is that we are reactivating position, the deputy seat. So that's been in there. It's approved position, but it just hasn't been active. So that's, you see the increase. Another thing in here is that we have budget this year for every single council member to be able, if they want, to go to the A W B as opposed to brief. I really think it's a great opportunity for you guys to, to hear all the information at the same time. I know in years past, we've looked at doing split in for budgetary reasons, but I think that the budget's in a good enough place that we can afford for all of you guys to go. That's what I really see a lot of councils. It's, you know, it's fellowship, it's, it's building up that, or you need to make contact with other council members, other cities. It's a great way to build those relationships. So this year does have that in there. And that was really the main thing I just said along with the deputy seat.
And speaking of that, the annual meeting this year is July thirteenth through seventeenth in Charleston. I will be getting in touch with you soon about whether you're going to be able to go or not. So please check your calendars because the deadline for us to, and again, we don't know where we're going to fall in what I call the lottery.
The whole lost lottery.
Last year we got, we were at the bottom of the list. But anyway, when that comes down, and I mean, I have like a day or two to get everything in, and then I have a designated appointment time where I can get everybody registered. So I usually get that information from you guys a couple of weeks ahead of that. So it's soon, because those appointment dates would be like June sixth, seventh date, something like that. So it's less, it's less than, less than a month.
It feels like they did kind of wait a little bit.
Yeah, it's a little late for coming out.
Maybe they had trouble securing the location. I mean, I see those, securing the location. So.
Well, because of COVID, some of the hotels were
I think Charles Place has been sold and bought on you. I don't know if they
But they look these things out years in advance. And so, but please, I do encourage you guys. I think it's great. We'll definitely do dinners together. You definitely can bring your, see your others and lucky alike. And please, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity for us to kind of meet and talk, not in a, you know, council setting. So.
But I'll be in touch with you soon, at those dates, the thirteenth through seventeenth of July, and again, Charleston.
Any other questions about this department?
So the, the increase is for the new, not the new position, but the reinstated position.
And that's part of our succession planning and the, not kicking anybody out. But Sharon and I have been talking a lot about what it will look like when, you know, Sharon, for two years, what she wants to see us go. And we decided, actually, we almost moved it up a year because next year's election year, it also is redistricting. And that is hands-on experience that a department needs. And so instead of, now I try to say, because then we have to wait another four years, so, but in interest of time, we're moving forward on this. So it's probably going to be about a two-year succession. But it's, it's definitely a good idea to start in that. I've been stressing that all my departments, succession planning, not to get anybody out, but just make sure you have everything lined up. Because you never know what's going to happen. So, and it's good for the employees, good for development of the employee. So that's the main thing for that department.
And Daniel mentioned redistricting. We are a year behind with redistricting because of COVID, because the census was late. And you notice the redistricting everywhere else and all the hoopla about it. But we already have our benchmarks at the state, the department that works with us at the state, the internal affairs, revenue and affairs, they've already sent us the benchmark. However, they've asked us to hold on to it and not release it because they have to get everybody redistricted that is having primaries. That's people who've had to file for election in March of this year, now their primaries have gone on because we don't have another election until 2023. So towards the end of this year, no later than the first of next year, we will be working with the state on our redistricting, which those of you who have been through a redistricting before, you know how time intense it is in the public meetings we have to hold and so on and so forth. So I went to Daniel and I said, this would be a perfect time to train somebody because we won't be redistricting again for ten years. So I'm trying to look out for the best interest of the city.
And that always follows the census.
It always follows the census. We're just late because of census was late this time. We normally would have done it in 2021.
Other cities that had elections before us were put to the top because they needed to have it redistricted. So we, because we had a year, and they, and I mean, boy, talk to us about, we've been in contact with the election commission, things like that. And they, they're, they're working with us. So.
So we'll have a redistricting in 2023 for sure, and we'll have an election in 2023. So, and we will have another election for two more years after that. So I was trying to look down the road.
Maybe a special election. So anyway.
He's campaigning.
We didn't have budget for that because we wanted people.
Well, the law, the law for redistricting does not take into consideration special elections. It's general elections.
You're right.
Karen, look at line three fifty-two again. Y'all are typing him crazy. I know I shouldn't, but what is M F O C T A, the very first one, we're professionals.
You got that. Minus for, minus for finance officers, clerks and treasures. Minus for finance officers, clerks and treasures. Finance officers, clerks and treasures. My FICA. My FICA.
Oh, wow.
I had never heard it called that in the beginning.
Oh, really?
I never had heard that.
Yeah.
And that's, he's not really good at it.
All of the acronyms have names.
Yeah, M E Y, it sounds like a cat.
But it does.
It does like.
Yeah, and you don't want to miss that cat.
Anyone has any question that I can just ask us, please.
It's worse than the military. Everything in the military has an acronym.
We say, we write it out to state, believe me. All right. Anything else? Okay.
Daniel.
Ma'am.
You know, I spoke with you earlier, I see telephone to you, excuse me, for the mayor and city council, our day-to-day, you know, whatever we do. And I had spoken with you about a telephone or some type of device.
Yeah.
Because they, they use up so much space.
Sure.
And when you download stuff, it, it uses up space.
Yes.
And so we need to talk about a phone or a tablet or something just for city use.
So we, we do have the tablets that are for council to take. They're older now. Those are older. I'm not sure how old they are. I don't know what generation they are. But in case, you know, I'm talking about the, the city assigned cell phones and things like that for our council members and mayor. It's, it's just something, if you guys want to look into a budget for it, or you want to do that, or you guys are interested in doing that, first of all, having something that's dedicated for city use, you would kind of be required to bring it to meetings and stuff like that and to maintain it. But is that something that you guys are interested in, all of you guys? Because it's one of those things where it'd be good to probably do it for all versus one.
One of my reasonings behind it was that if the city issued the devices, they could manage them and the security around the devices centrally and push out updates. If we need a new app, the, you know, the city could just have that app installed on all of our iPads or whatever the case may be. Configuration profiles, email, Wi-Fi, stuff like that could be managed centrally so that we don't really have to worry about it on our, on our issued device. So I think it helps protect us and, and the city by managing the security positions centrally. And, I've lost my train of thought, but that's the gist of it. And Daniel and I talked about too, it could be, like you said, it's all versus one, but it could be optional to, you know, if I, if I say I, I got my laptop, I just don't need iPad.
You have a lot of budget for all of them.
Yeah, exactly. Whether or not you actually run the device, maybe could be optional.
I think it needs to be optional. I have no clue, keeping up with one app only other than two or three devices. But for those people who want it, I think they should, yeah, get it.
Well, and, and, I mean, and so if you do do for a phone stipend, so we offer our employees, a lot of them either have taken the phones, or they have a stipend phone. So we maintain and pay for, or we have a stipend. Just for not caution your tail, but just sort of that does kind of hook you up to more void. I mean.
Are phone stipends added to their salary?
Already, or is it?
I'm asking.
No, I think it's a separate.
For anybody.
We have
Send the salary.
They send the salaries.
Oh, they can't really have that.
Be able to mess with salary.
No, I was going to say they can't do that.
They can't add, have to vote to change that, it's like a But unless we issue them on phone.
Right. I think you could issue them on phone, but I don't think the stipend would be an option there.
We have to issue phone, so you have to carry a phone for that. So city council can't raise their, in the same year they have to vote for the next election year. Now, if you did it this year and voted for fifty dollars, so next year, next election, you go to the
After the next election.
After the next election.
End of next year.
End of next year, so. Planning, or we can issue a device. At the same time, we can look at a tablet though.
And the tablets we currently have, they are all, I mean, Casey set this up for us, they were refurbished when we received.
I'd imagine they're getting close to vintage and they may not be even eligible to relieve this latest, receive the latest software updates, which introduces.
So we might want to look at replacing those.
They definitely need to be replaced. Absolutely need to be replaced.
Well, that's my computer. I still have one though, Seth.
Then you need to shoot that because it's a security risk.
So I don't do anything on that computer though.
Well, so two things about that, we can definitely look into tablets. I mean, a new iPad, based mostly on twenty-eight hundred, twelve hundred dollars. So that's something we can talk about, a burn iPad.
And we could still use them in the same way that we use them, so we don't need anything, the latest, you know, all that power to it. And then they could, and they could sign them out.
Yes.
If they, you know, there's an agreement where they can sign them out.
The second part of that is that, so part of this phone upgrade that we're going through, the Spectrum, Spectrum Business Account. They do offer a service that we're going to get essentially for free for this, because it's going to more voice, over internet protocol and FOIP. And so part of that is a app that actually can be downloaded on your personal phone that lets your office phone ring to your phone. And that might alleviate, so essentially the mayor's office, you know, you don't have them physically. Can be assigned to that phone and that way you could, you could have them on essentially for the same cost that you have for running our phones anyway. So that would not be a reimbursement at all and you can set it up. So that might be more relevant for that. So when we get further in that, we'll, we'll look more further and see what we can do there. All right, so do you guys want us to look at adding in tablets, new tablets? And we don't necessarily have to, we maybe have to pay for that in this year's budget or even if, or if you really just want to, because that's about, if you get seven new tablets, seven thousand dollars, you just want to throw it out there easy.
I sure don't. I mean, the only time I touch that tablet is when you have things pulled up more than the council. I can't see taking that much taxpayer dollar just to have a tablet that, you know, that's over the council. I'd rather raise salaries, police, but I'd have a tablet for six years.
So what would, going back to Casey's point, what would be the normal, if they are approaching vintage, which means they can't be updated regularly. Right. Security reference. Or, I don't know, what would be a normal replacement time? Did you replace them anyway?
I mean, what, how old were these tablets?
If you fill them up.
Casey, when did you start?
I'm going to guess eighteen, maybe. And again, they were refurbished at the time.
So they were already a couple of years old anyway?
They were, we had them before that because we moved into the new city hall, they looked at getting, it probably was more like fifteen.
Could have been, could have been.
They looked like fifteen months or something like that.
And so they're already seven years old?
Want to explore the security aspect of it and let's, let's, let me get some information on that. That might be something we're just able to afford this year, you know, it might be affordable.
A lot of my census.
As opposed to kind of worrying about seven thousand dollars right now. I mean, seven thousand dollars is the max. That's, they might, they would find some for five hundred dollars.
Yeah, you can get them for like three.
And the goal there, I think, is what Johnny's alluding to with Casey's, that at some point, if we're going to continue to use them, I don't want them hooked up to our internet as a security issue. If they can no longer receive security updates. So we might not have a choice. So if we're going to continue to use tablets, I think, I think you guys do find them helpful in our needs. Because those computers are off or looking around, just as the screens up there are just displaying what's going on, but you're able to look through your gents or that, that might be something we just need to do in charge, so.
On a related point, are we getting all the screens fixed, you know, sometime and also the microphones?
Yes, we are. So the microphones, it looks like we did have our, our gentleman who helps us with that, he actually already diagnosed the problem that was like this new sample that we need to get fixed. And because the speakers still work, it's just it's not going through the proper piece of equipment. So that is part of that because we have issues, as we said, with the camera. It is an ADA concern that people can't hear us talking or speaking, so we need to get those things, we might just not have a choice for that. So, you know, we already did spend ten thousand dollars to upgrade the video system in there. And so I think it's important to keep expanding and making sure that is up to date.
We've got to keep it up with it.
Oh, it's kept it, yeah.
But that two thousand we were on, when we got that reimbursed.
We did.
That was the original.
Oh, that's good.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because the justification with those is when we started launching so many online meetings, COVID, you weren't reading them personally.
And we're still pushing like a dozen watches on YouTube or something.
That's right.
We're doubling this now.
Trying to watch out.
I know.
I think all of our staff are dealing with it.
What's the option of viral?
It's, we're bacterial. All right, anything else? All right, next is court operations, which is on the screen right now. Of course, this is our court of court of deputy court. And three judges certified.
What page? What page?
That is on page thirty-one. Any questions on court? All right. City manager.
Throw it all away.
So that's work for you guys.
How do you talk?
The main change is here, of course, Mr. Brez. Is that we did have the inclusion of, this is the city manager, Karen. We did budget for the whole amount in, or half of a year last year, which was close to ninety thousand. But that includes all benefits and like that. And that's still max hours for that fee. We ended up having internals that were qualified, so we ended up keeping internal. And through that process and also some savings about not pushing, I waited to push up the job. That overall probably saved close to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars as opposed to doing the internal. The main thing's here is I split the cost of it between city manager and finance because she's a C M and CFO. And I did increase, I'm going to bring her to trainings to get her up to speed with SCAMA, which is South Carolina City and County Manager Association. And ICMA, which is International City Manager Association, and up to mix and loose as part of training. Any questions about that? All right, moving on to IT page, Sharon.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, good job. Any questions about IT? No, we did have one, this operating, again, this is the reduced for the past years, VC three, which is our.
Awesome, do that, the problem is.
Yeah, they have pushed on us a new security.
MASC is required.
MASC, MASC maintains it's kind of a contract with them, that's how they can order them. So they require a security update that is passed along to all of us, so that's that increase that we see there.
And that goes with our insurance?
That does.
Yeah.
Cybersecurity, because if we don't do what they're requiring us to do and we have an attack, they're not going to cover it.
Yes, so many cities unfortunately are targets of cyber attacks where they hold data ransom. And if you don't have proper insurance in place, you don't have proper data redundancy in place, you can be in real trouble. And it's not, I don't think they're just going to be big cities after small cities.
Do we back up every day or what?
We do back up.
Constantly.
We do back up constantly. I think it's daily. So at the most, I think we'd only lose twenty-four hours of work. And that's not detrimental to us. That would be, hey, that would be not detrimental. But the main thing that people do is they tend to get it and then wait, and then wait, and eventually what you have, you're outside of that kind of backup period, they'll get you.
So our employees are stressed with phishing things, you know, clicking on links and attachments and things. I see Karen looking around.
Have to take those, Amber sends these emails out every day and y'all, I get phishing attempts. I get them for y'all, I get them from y'all. I got one from Sharon, I get them from Daniel, like from Daniel. They come from all of y'all. They're always wanting me to send gift cards or money.
Because she's CFO of the.
I get it nonstop. And then also they have really good screens that looks like the Windows login. It's not, don't click on it.
Someone who's had to do would be your friend.
So it's made it happen one time. But y'all, it's Amber Danitz all day long. I can't, I can't believe this.
When it says it's time to change the password.
Okay, password, that happens every single day.
We're constantly being attacked. And it's, it's those type of rudimentary attacks that happen, but it's, that's the, that's our biggest thing. Our employees are the best attribute, but they're, our biggest link when it comes to cybersecurity.
Amber does a great job. She sends it out a lot.
Yeah, humans are always.
It's human error, it's what it is.
It's all the operating, right?
Ask Public Services what they come with emails.
That's right.
I actually got one.
What do you call them?
I don't know, I don't know what they call them.
They call them emeralds. Oh, yeah, emeralds. That's smart. No, she does a great job keeping on us about those. They, they look real.
And part of that, for the process, we had to assign a cyber securities person that is our permanent risk management manager. So we are on top of it, but it's, it's only as good as, there's constantly, we're constantly under threat. An old IT director had once time said he lives in constant fear. So, you know, it's just, it is the world that.
Well, thank y'all for staying on top of that. And no news is good news.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And you'll be the first to know, if we're getting, you know, ransom, I try not to negotiate with terrorists, but we might have to negotiate. Shitting unfortunate, so they want bitcoins now.
Bitcoins and gift cards.
Page forty, finance.
Look at that, he sent a page.
We're going to try and.
Can we talk? All right. Again, there's ACM and then we have, yeah, so we do have a new promotion, the director of business services, Ray Brown is over back there. And then we also, we did transfer over the business license salary line to here because business license permitting will be coming out of the finance department.
Will be coming out, it'll be in.
Business license will be operating out of the business department, but it will be in this budget line. All right. Any impact is in there? There's also SCUBA for animal heated.
Yeah.
And BLA.
And Bullhead.
South Round Utility.
Association. BLA, business license.
Why is the professional development going to five thousand, four thousand?
Yeah, so that is for, I split the increase in trainings, so again, trains will be coming out for the base here and then finance director, CFO, split between us and those are the new trains. We also are going another addition to those trainings, I did mention it was ICSC conference, the International Consumers and Shopping Centers Conference is where we can go to promote new businesses in the city. So it's increasing to travel to us to go out to.
That's the one that Shannon just.
Yes. And so far, I have some success with it. Still, of course, these businesses take a while to develop and things like that. But two have already been approved and four have been approved for our area. So that is great. That means that they saw us, they looked at us, they vetted us, and that we are approved for a franchise to be open here. With that then, there's also at least, and one other kind of small department store is looking at us that way too, is more of a seasonal store. And then the other one, we have about ten others that are looking at us and we're keeping up to date with them. Us going there and putting our face there with the different people. The national conference, which we're not going to this year. So we went to the makeup one for COVID, but as I was reviewing the expenses coming up for this year, this is in May, the national one has about forty thousand people going. Costs are just too high. Plane tickets were plus eight hundred dollars a person and I just couldn't justify that expense. So we're not going for that one, but we will return next May for the CMO plan. We'll anticipate, hopefully the fuel prices will be lower and things like that.
One thing I wanted to note right quick is that Bobby, to your question, Chastity is a new staff, so we have that included now in that budget. Also had to note that earlier, Corinne, our business specialist, business license specialist is moving over. You have that on there. This actually, when you look at this finance professional training and conferences, we're covering a lot. Because we're covering utility dealing, OPA, GFOA, for all of our, so ICSC. And then you have for risk management, the annual meeting, which is Amber, the business license and then CPE trainings, all this. And one thing too I wanted to note, y'all are going to see conferences across the board come back up. Over the past two years, I think we cut it about thirty to forty percent and we felt like COVID is at a spot now where we can start sending people back to training and conferences. It's very important. We develop our people. It's one thing we absolutely take pride in. So when y'all see that, you're going to see it across the board, you're going to see our conferences being backwards what we used to budget for COVID.
And some increases, that's what we've increased.
Absolutely.
To, but again, that's something that we've been stressing this whole time.
Thank you for addressing it because it is, it runs through the whole thing of that. And I understand ramping back up because we did cut back, but then when I just looked at, just take years of Daniels and I wrestled this all night, I didn't say it. But to go, y'all go into five or six conferences, do we have to ramp back that much in a given year?
I usually don't go to that many. It was more, we've had discussions about this, but I just go, yes, that is all just two days, and I say, hey. And actually, we just cut out the Bay Vegas, right, for ICSC to save money. So absolutely, we do look at the cost. It is nothing that is, if we don't feel like we're gaining from it and straight designing with the money, I wouldn't go.
Well, you know, if there's one of you can go to one conference, one go to the other one, you know, somebody steals. Somebody had to run the city.
So, so that's, that's something that we talked about. That's essentially what I'm deciding.
I know you can get out there and go to different places within meetings, but I get.
No, that's ICSC, everyone's different places. So this is part of my professional development as well as the professional development of the ACM, which is very important. It's not so much as being represented, that means the conferences, it's part of training that we go to. So I think it's important for the ACM to become prepared to be a city manager one day and go to the conference.
Yeah, we got to go to, I'm not just saying all of a sudden to ramp back up and for two conferences and now there's six this year or five, just, just.
I don't think there's six.
Okay, not six, five, maybe six.
Which one, are you going back to the city manager?
Yeah, I'll just, you know, go back to city manager, go back to your department.
Sure.
What page, Bobby?
Go from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, one, two, three, four, five, I'm sorry, five conferences. It's page thirty-seven.
I would say this too, a part of this is, is that with the towers, and that is something that I would work for as well. So they will be required for the ICMA. Those will be required.
Yeah, so that, the new conferences, retail conferences, we're pushing towards ICSC, so that's relatively. But MASC annual conferences, that's a membership that you go to in other conferences.
What is the retail conference? I mean, who's, who's sponsors?
That's the.
ICSC.
ICSC conferences and then annual conferences. There's a regional one that we go to and also. Again, that's part of that push that we've talked about. We went through the training and so now we're just going to the conferences.
Do you have ICSC annual conference and then ICSC retail?
Yes. Oh, and as far as, so this is a conversation I've heard too, because you mentioned about money and city. So when we're at these conferences, we're not out of pocket. So when we run things, we still have to relax. So we, it's, there's no longer really a need for physically, you know, things that we have to be out now. For instance, I'm looking at going on a cruise later on this month. I will be out of pocket during that time. I will be out of the country, so it will not be available to talk. But every other time, we still work at these conferences. They're working for us. Same with the annual conferences, something that is part of.
All right, this, this, plan on taking a little break, it's in thirty, fifteen minutes?
Yes.
You want to move through a couple more slides?
Yeah, so we can go and see human resources. All right, human resources, that is, you do see there is another, essentially an expansion position.
Page forty-four.
Page forty-four, thank you Sharon. So HR had at one time, it had the director, it had an HR specialist and a generalist, we know generalist three. And they had a, what was the previous employee's title?
Specialist.
There was another specialist that dealt mainly with the water park and other things. We've been expanding that to make sure and kind of handle all the HR and the city, so now we have two HR generalists to assist the director with that. So that's that increase right there, thirty-five thousand. And they are going to more trainings to get those people going back, ready to go. Any questions there? Oh, right, and Bobby did ask about, there was an increase of professional services. So if you saw the email last night, that's twenty-five thousand, that is for classic comp study. We've been talking about that since I got here, myself and the staff. When we looked at the fine, great people that we're working with to find our public services director, we're hard to. we're hard to fill positions that the local pool doesn't have maybe the technical specialty to do it. We also budgeted twenty-five thousand for a recruitment fee because that typically is about twenty percent, twenty-five percent of the salaries of those recruitments. That's how much they cost. It's high.
The headhogs?
The headhogs. They're a long business.
Really?
It's a great business. It's a great business. That's our current, Byron Chairwoman, or not Chairwoman, Vice CEO. She was doing that right before she came in here. She was doing well. So essentially, we did look at her company too, but find great people. So far, it's been successful. We're actively recruiting and making offers to one that they did find for public services. So it was successful, we think. And so I just wanted to throw that in because that was relatively new. I do have one position that I'm looking at that might be hard to find, planning and zoning. That is one that if you don't just, if you look at an lead and when it gets posted out to them, everyone just thinks they can be licensed as a director. It's not really the case. So that might be necessary. So we did budget twenty-five thousand. I hope I helped to use it. But in that discussion, find great people, because we've engaged with that, can also do a classic comp study for twenty-five thousand. And that is a very, very reasonable rate for a classic comp. Because when I just did one in East Creek, it was eighty thousand dollars to do one. And that is what federal employees would still, and that's not including the cost they recommend. So this goes into the COLA conversation. So we have kept up very well, I think, with salaries. The past, this is my third city, and I would say this is the best one as far as, I'd say it's the best obviously, but the best one that has kept up with salaries. Other cities that have not done COLAs and because of that they fall behind. So a classic comp really is that catch-up period where they have to go from no COLAs and then they do a classic comp, find out that they're ten percent behind, and then they have to do a massive increase in salaries to raise up to be competitive. I don't think we're going to have that many positions, especially the higher paid positions that are going to be out of sync with different areas. Because what it does, it looks at every single city and area, all competitors, private industry to a certain extent, and looks at how those salary lines compare. And then it gets you kind of a bell curve where you want to fall. Do you want to be above the curve, below the curve, the average, you know, that type of thing, the median? And then you get a cost with different options. I think it's really going to impact a lot of our below fifty thousand salary employees who a two percent COLA per year is not quite.
Yeah, is this a good time to have that conversation?
Yeah, I should say.
I looked at some of the numbers. I went back five years. And the three-year, look back in the little addendum we got. And I looked at the CPI, Consumer Price Index, for the last five years and added it up. And currently, and looked at the COLA, which has been two percent five years straight. And currently, our employees are about two point two percent behind the CPI. And I'd like us to consider or talk about going from a two percent COLA this year to a three percent COLA. And that would catch those folks up. I think CPI for the last year went up almost five percent to four point seven percent. If you've done groceries lately, you know what I'm talking about.
Johnny, if I could add to that, when you look at the COLA that we've been incorporating every year, it's a combination of the CPI and the ECI, the Employment Cost Index for the Southeast. And then they come, then they come up with a combination of that and then a recommended COLA increase. In some years, it has been less than two. In some years, it's been more than two. And then the city manager decides where we're going to fall.
Well, I think past five years, we've just done two percent.
I don't know the last time they done two.
I see that. Who says that?
And I saw in the paper yesterday where the Senate and the House and the state legislature have agreed to a three percent across the board for state employees.
I just want to make the point, it's not just the CPI, it's also the.
Yeah, I don't know what the best measure is. If the inflation be CPI, I don't know what the best measure is.
Well, Johnny started having that conversation yesterday, and you were talking about CPI. At first, I went and pulled CPI yesterday, the report for March, and they include a twelve-month. This increased eight point five. And in the last month alone, one point two.
Yeah, it's crazy.
CPI is sort of a, I mean, you can see at the groceries, which on hindsight, I guess that helps us with the loss right with our low option sales tax and our cost wheel and all that. It is, the cost of food specifically is astronomical.
Well, I think the most valuable, most valuable asset we've got are the folks that work for the city.
And it is the year, if they're calling in the HR room, it is the year of progressive action.
And I think you said yesterday that if you have to replace a person.
That's right.
It takes about a year for that new person coming in that position to really get up to speed just the learning of the learning curve and everything else. So if we can eliminate departures.
We've got our money, we've got our money, Sharon.
I'm glad that y'all said that. I think we get the same point in the meeting today when we're talking about, you know, this is staff's recommendations. I have some areas where I would spend the money differently. And I know one thing, absolutely, is I was going to suggest a four, possibly a five percent raise for all police and all fire for the very reasons you just mentioned. A, we don't want to lose these people. They're out there doing the things we don't want to do. I put a dollar figure to it. From there, just, I was just talking about them. And I wouldn't consider what you're doing, but everybody, but just for them, it's a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty thousand dollars. You may have figured that wrong, but to give them a five percent raise, everything. Because I want to keep those people, keep the people, protect us. And that's a cost, I mean, that's a fortune of life thing. Here, having good fire and good police is another thing that protects us and brings people to the city. They know it's a safe place. They know they have good fire protection. So that's something that I really want to consider, vision, supply from some of these other areas. Promoting there, that's number one. But I got a lot of stuff, but that's just, that's number one on my list is all police and fire get at least a four, maybe a five percent raise.
So we talked about that, and it's not only police and fire, the rapid issue of retention and recruitment.
I understood that completely, but I'm just saying, that police and fire are a different category.
Well, I understand that. I mean, I consider all the employees in the same, you know, very valuable as all equally. But what that classic comp will do is give us, so we don't know where they fall. That's the issue. So that's what the classic comp is going to tell. So it very well may promote a five percent increase. And then we have the justification to do that. And that essentially assigns every single position and looks at them, compares them across state, and sees what our competitors are doing. It is a flat rate to only two departments, I think, would be problematic because it does kind of cool unfair feelings across the board. And so I think that that classic comp will give us the data that we need to do maybe just that.
So how long would it take to get that?
So if we budget for it, I would engage a bit soon July one and go for that.
So if they came back with a recommendation.
We do a budget amendment.
We do a budget amendment next year.
Exactly right. And one thing too that we have talked about, because we met with police and fire, right? We meet with each department and have these discussions. And we have talked about ways that, we talked about internal promotions, the classroom private. That's why I keep looking back there because we've had these discussions of what could we do in the meantime until the class and comp study. I think one thing that you've done really well with is looking at take-home policy, things like that with cars. They've done a great job of, with their schedules, of reducing their overtime. Money is important, absolutely. We want to get more money, and everyone's talking. There's no doubt there. I will say though, that police and fire have done an excellent job of retaining their police work-wise, morale-wise here for that. But there are discussions with ranking and classes of what could we do to.
No, we still take one.
That's right. So promotion is important. You want to see where can you progress to. They have some great ideas around the rankings, and they're working on that for us to be able to do that for them right now until the class and comp study, I know for police specifically.
So would a little ground here be to authorize a class and comp study and maybe go with the three percent until that comes in? And if they recommend a adjustment to, to make the adjustment by a budget amendment next year?
The class and comp will give you guys all the information you need to make these decisions. And, you know, because that is a, to do a blanket raise like that, unless you're doing it across the board, that's a difficult position to put us in to do that. Because then you're really kind of singling out certain departments and elevating them above others. Although I do hold them all in higher part, all of them all have specific jobs. But your equal set of public services is doing sanitation in the city, their frontline workers, our staff downstairs, they're dealing with customers, or any hits. It's important to analyze them all at once, to put them all in the same bag. And I understand your direct desire, but we're having, the retention issues is not just a police or fire specific thing.
But it does take you far to go to find cities offering signing bonuses.
Absolutely.
You know, so, and that's something that we want to keep as many qualified folks as.
And that is, that is, that's one way I would say, you know, you could use that type of model to fill specific, hard-to-fill positions as opposed to flat out department, single amount like that. If you had a specific position like a firefighter or a utility worker, there are options to sign on those. Now, that's different cities and different cash flows and things like that. And so, you know, a sign-on bonus of, I saw one for five thousand dollars in some city.
I think you can go in Hartsfield Drug, and they've got a little video board there. There's, I forget, Flacaster or somewhere, you know, offering a signing bonus for certain things.
They spend a lot of money on marketing.
I'm, oh, just right, go ahead.
The, one of the best investments we can make is in our people.
Sure.
It's absurd to not keep up with the CPI. You're literally paying people less. I've always thought that was absurd.
Yeah.
So I think it is, I think it's the right thing to do, and I think it's a good investment to seriously consider increasing pay. So that we're paying people fairly and so that people have a reason to want to work for the city and not elsewhere, right? Recruitment and retention is hard enough as it is, and it seems to me that this would be a good way to help improve recruitment and retention. You said that the staff were constantly asking, like, give me something. Please give me something to help retain my people and find new ones who fill some of these positions. And to me, this is a pretty straightforward way to do it. And I was, had pretty much settled on the three percent. But Bobby, your argument kind of made me wonder if we wouldn't try to afford three-five.
And that does kind of break, so this is just a quick kind of, these are just net numbers. And so this would have to be all calculated through FICA and everything like that.
Yeah.
But right now, in general fund, the other funds can handle the increase. And so what we're looking at is the contingency right now built into the general fund is a hundred and thirty thousand. Last year, I think we had a hundred and fifty or so. So we're right on par with what kind of ever we did last year. But if you were to look at doing a, we did have present increments. And we could, I mean, look at it's probably about thirty-four, thirty-five thousand per path percent roughly. So that is the impact to.
How many?
By, by, right. By, I think. So this is the line that shows the impact to the contingency. Because we would pull it out of contingency for this purpose now. That's just the easy way to do it. You could look at, you know, other areas. But this would be the easiest way for us to do it. And if you did, two point.
Yeah, let's keep just, here's our thirty, thirty-four seconds.
Starting with the clock.
You said thirty seconds.
They, they were playing soccer. But if it was church playing out, it was killing them.
Yeah. It was Saturday the last day. One of the building office, he's small, he's young, he's married. They should, their last man was Saturday. And I don't feel bad.
They don't think they're doing anything today.
Yeah.
They can't see that, Daniel.
I know.
Not like that.
Eighty-fourty-eight, somebody. Yeah, I think they're.
They don't do it as much as they used to. Before COVID, they only had a couple weeks. And when we were in scouts, I mean, it would like all summer.
It was, yeah.
Now you just, St. Luke's don't have scouts for long.
Yeah, they didn't have a door. They'd meet you in that church.
And then y'all had pulled out your sponsorship.
I didn't know that either.
Quick sponsor. I don't know, but because of liability and everything, they were scrambling to find somebody that.
Is it because of lawsuits?
Lawsuits. Boy Scouts are here.
Down the right aisle.
Yeah. Their bank will, but it's something going on. But they still, they still let them use the scouts, but they still got all their footprints. But St. Luke's is not an institution that sponsors them all that.
These chaps still never hit your like?
No, no, this is behind St. Luke's.
Behind St. Luke's. The Scouts is still a link in the curve.
Yeah.
So if you fund it and there's legal action, they could put your name on there.
But they, but, but St. Luke's pulled out before they got it straight, and it's straight. Church, when you do it, they could do it. And I don't know if it's your administrative council or who, trustees or who, if they make that decision. Rudy would know, he talked to him. And Thomas would know, he talked to him.
Wonder what kind of, I'm, I'm.
It's an apology. And they do some fundraising stuff, you know, they sell hot stuff and stuff like that comes out.
All right, here we go. Now, let's get this ball back rolling, please. May I understand? All right, so we're going to go through three budgets. These are all one of the budgets, but they're three separate budgets. So just a kind of overview of all of these, since we're all together. Two, Main Street and Marketing Communications Department. So again, we have a, I have done some tweaking to this department. Director of Tourism and Marketing for Communications is going to be over this. We're going to have a reactivated Main Street manager, who probably had that position already. Oh, that was the previous one, before we merged with Lawrence. We also have a marketing specialist that's already included in that. And then, yeah, that's right. And so some of these positions are split. For instance, the marketing specialist is split between either Main Street Tourism or, and Tourism or Neptun Islands. So there are two funds. And then the director is split between, I think, Main Street and. So that's where the kind of money comes from. So there are some increases, but they're split across the board across that. And of course, Museum Operations is a, not a department, but a part of this, they follow me.
This is page forty-eight, seventy-one, and Museum is eighty-seven.
So let's start with Main Street, page forty-eight. Any questions there? All right, let's move on to the Marketing Communications, seventy-one, page seventy-one. Again, the Marketing Communications person is going to be the PIO and in charge of the three, manager of the three positions and the museum. Yeah, with special events, there is the Main Street manager, the marketing specialist, three employees, and then two employees in the museum. So the Tourism and Communications Director has three employees in that building. It's going to be the Main Street manager, this Special Events Coordinator, and then the Marketing Specialist.
Insurance is good employee.
What'd you say about the?
So that, this is the function of the Public Information Officer, as Lauren was before. And she's doing great at doing, we're not happy, we're not bitter at all.
Part of the.
Part of the rest.
For the record, we're bringing it for Lauren, of duty now. I actually texted with her so we could, because I did something, she was happy to help. All right, anything else to that one? Or you want me to do Museum? That's page eighty-seven. And that's two employees, Museum Manager and Assistant Manager. And I'll keep up the museum. There is an addition, yeah. And just one kind of fun thing, we do have a ten personnel in there because we are, through those, the Odd Fellows records. So we have a tenth, that position is funded by the state as well. So we're getting rebrushed, but that intern is helping process those, really half a million records for the Odd Fellows, which is amazing that we're still part of that.
I think you had some volunteer help on that.
We did, volunteers, but they're scanning X meals, but we also scan the turn. So we have volunteers and essentially they're scanning half a million documents and cataloging everything, taking all the data from that and putting it onto online. Positories, people can go search your records from nineteen twelve, twenty two, twelve, something like that. But it's an amazing story, you know, to have time for. It's wonderful that we've been entrusted with those documents. It's amazing.
I mean, that's, we're sharing that information with the world.
This is, this is, this is the Black community in Russell. This is a huge, it's a huge repository of data that people can use to find. Huge, oh, it's, and it was almost lost. And that's, it was in a fire. So I mean, it's, this is fantastic.
Very valuable, very valuable, that's awesome.
So they're doing the board of work.
I'll have any nitpicks that I can find in here.
All right, well then, if nothing else, so we'll move on to Business Licenses. That's going to be page fifty two, so we're going back. Business Navigator, right? Page, I said fifty two? All right, so the Business Navigator again is transitioning to Planning and Zoning Department. Fully, it's still going to have Planning, zoning, director position, manager position. It will have code enforcement still, and it has the building official contract underneath it. So they will be focusing solely on the Planning and Zoning side of it and then dealing with some codes. So that's what they're focused on right now. Business License coming out, perfect.
And running me on to, oh, sorry, I was gonna say one thing too that's kind of came out of that department is that I have CHASTC handling grants right now.
Right, yeah. So this now here, Shannon's position did cover grants as well. We're now dedicating CHASTC and then also various systems.
So if you get a planning director, where would that person go?
Physically. So my goal is here is to actually put the planning director, it's supposed to be upstairs, away from the apartment, downstairs with them in there. So they'll be right next to the manager, right next to everyone. I did, I also did mention, we are moving GIS to Planning and Zoning. I want it to be used as a way for residents, if they want to get maps and, you know, so even if we have data related and also keep track of all the codes going on in the GIS system so that we can pull history of any property in the city as we go through. We'll kind of bring Playing and Zoning and using that GIS tool for that. Currently GIS in the utilities, but really we're using hand engineering to do the GIS work for, for our department. So we don't really need to double, you know, essentially get a whole lot of, so that person eventually, when we move the business license persons to the front, we're looking at getting a desk to have her, that position right up front. Being backed up by an entire finance department, we'll be able to move GIS over, so I think we'll be in house again.
Is there a lot of cooperation between the county, GIS and us, or it's just two separate things or?
I'd like to see more cooperation between.
So, you know, they've got some stuff online that's pretty amazing.
They do, you know, GIS is one of those things where, you know, you have to really kind of, it's, it's only as good as the data you put into it.
Yeah.
And so I think that we're still, we're still growing GIS kind of department, you know, GIS function. So we only, we can still tap into a lot of more to do along with that department. And I want to use it in a way that hasn't been done before, or it had been done, but not quite as much. And use it solely for Planning and Zoning to help give residents and businesses a lot more information and help us keep track of it a lot better. Because we need, the annexations are happening, the growth of the city, I want to keep track, economic development. I want ready access to maps and, and data.
I'm thinking, you know, if you're a blit zone or not, you know, all of that stuff should be instantly available.
GIS typically fine either as a separate department, but then has coordinators in each department, or actually is most of the time located in your engineering or planning. And since we have engineering kind of handling most of our stuff, our GIS person is really just kind of verifying what they already put. And, you know, we do our own locates and things like that, but the data, keeping two separate accounts for the data just didn't make any sense. We can just get it directly from our engineer who has a more accurate record for what's going on, so. Any questions there? Anything else? All right, moving on to Police. So that is page sixty four. Police and Victims Advocate.
Sixty four, fifty seven.
Sixty four, sixty seven, exactly. Seventy, what did I say?
What about fifty six?
Fifty six, I'm on fire, I'm sorry.
I think I was a fog problem.
Well, here I am.
Oh, okay.
Jerry wants to tell about my plan to put you and Jeff in the same office, do Jeff and Jerry show?
I don't think we'd have any problems. We can make a billion of them up there.
Way more than twelve hits on YouTube.
Way more. Would be as a dozen.
They have become influencers.
Yeah.
Subscribe.
You're gonna hit that subscribe button real quick, yes. All right, so the Police Department, as you can see, we're going to go over Police and Fire. This is the largest, one of the largest expenditures in our budget, plus the forty percent. We did, we did do quite a bit of spot adjustments with some of the positions. We have been looking throughout the year at positions that do need some potential areas that we are. We could have a specific position, we can do the research on that and make certain adjustments to be more aligned with what the job descriptions do. So that is the increase you see there. And I believe we're also going from a one and a half positions to two positions. We're taking a half time, part-time investigator, making a full, is that what we're doing, perfect?
We're taking a reserve officer and making him part time and then you were adding an administrative position in the Vice Department.
That's right, exactly.
And it was already there part time, we're making it a full time position. It was there, it was loaded as part time, we switched it to full time.
We had a part time at the main office and we put more to it to make it a full time, that advice.
And the reason why, and we, we looked very closely at adding officers and of course, we have positions that we still need to fill, we're filling, which is good, we're filling them with non-certifieds. We're not getting certified officers in the application pool. And that's kind of a common thing across the country, right? We're just having a lot of issues getting police officers. And so one thing that we're doing is looking at extensively how to bring up recruits and training, trying to bring in non-certified and train them up. When we do train them, then, you know, our goal is to keep them, after we train them, because it is costly, but it's, it's kind of where we live in. So we have three positions over there?
Two. Two, and we had, we had two certified officers applying.
Oh, good.
One backed out and the other one didn't hold standard to the Hartsfield Police Department. But we, we ended up with five. Out of five, there were two decisions, but they are non-certified. It takes, it takes a long time to get them under, under standard. But I think they're going to be too good.
The other question about Police?
On the vehicles, are we still on the rotating?
So we haven't developed a firm schedule for that. We did buy five police vehicles last year. We opted not to do any because of increasing costs for vehicles and whatnot. So we're not doing five vehicles. Of course, at one, if they run into a cornfield or something like that, then we certainly look at doing that program. We've been very successful in it for. That's not a specific example for any reason, but essentially if we do have any program cars go out, we've been very successful without going back to the Department of Homeland Security, getting kind of used vehicles that have still a lot of life in them. That they're highly department for, for Homeland Security, they have a lot of idle hours, but not a lot of use hours. So we just did not feel the need to go after a huge capital purchase of these this year.
That's not the best for it.
Next year, I think we'll look at some more vehicles.
How about weapons?
I believe we're still looking to replace or curb replacement for weapons and keeping track of all that.
We, we just changed out from forty caliber to nine millimeter for everybody in, in the department. They shot a lot better. It's good quality. Still, we go on, we get our automatic weapons and rifles through surplus from the state surplus. Used to be they were completely free, but I think we pay some kind of charge now for paperwork. But it saves an awful lot of money. I think we're in the program that we pay six hundred dollars a year to be in the program, so it's well worth it in the long run. Daniel was talking about the Homeland Security. That's on the federal side. We get the Tahos, the white Tahos that you see. Sometimes we look up and get them with about fifty thousand miles on them, which that's, that's pretty cool. And they range anywhere. Now, they've gone up to thousands of society, but they wouldn't get one usually for about sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand, eighteen, somewhere in that neighborhood. And it really has helped us out in the long run with keeping, keeping our officers going.
The new interceptor top of, in that range, will probably be in the fifty to sixty.
Be, be close, especially when you get it all decked out with all the equipment that it needs. But it gets us by, the federal government has really helped us out a lot.
Well, and that's where we got our new favorite vehicle, which is our little golfer that you see driving around with guns and whatnot. Now, it's through that program.
We looked up on that one, I just happened, when we were getting ready to leave from getting a Tahoe, it was sitting over there and I said, Troy, what, what in the world is that? You know, I've never seen one that looked like that. It's, he said, it's a golf cart. I said, I hadn't got a key and I don't know if it'll run and I don't know what's wrong with it. They had eight to nine hundred dollars on it. I said, what, what you want for it? He said, what you give me for it? I said, well, I can't give you eight to nine hundred dollars. So it stood there, man. He said, he said, seven? I said, no, no, you ain't, he got a key to it. He said, he said, there it comes, Jerry. He said, how about, he said, how about six? I said, okay, I, I, I can pay six for it. But all we did was got some keys made and put some new batteries in it. It'll do twenty seven miles.
Twenty seven miles. It did ride so well, it's comfy.
It's got a siren and everything.
It was really cool.
So that is our new, people love it. We've gotten quite a good response to it. And that's through that program.
We loved them.
The, and this is also a good time to talk about our first capital purchase that we requested this year. We, there were many requests this year, of course, we looked at it, but one that came up kind of as a, as a really good investment to help us with a lot of the issues we've been having lately with kind of people coming from outside of town into our limits is a licensed laborer. We had one of those big sleds. I don't know, do we still have that or is it gone now? I think they took us out.
It's, it's back now. It's the used one that, they have been so gracious sled and let us use one and we got the bottom of the line, but it still works. But it's really paid off with people coming into our city with stolen vehicles and stolen tags. It opens up a big door for us.
So this is a seventeen thousand dollar investment that we could then use on the other side of town to start capturing both avenues or main corridors. In fact, I was talking to some officers and it, it might be worth it to look at more if you're to capture all of our kind of corridors.
We're going, if I'm not mistaken, what we want is the one that we put on the vehicle, we've got a traffic vehicle that we use and.
That's right.
And, and it'll be moving all the time, working everything. So it'll really pay off in the long run against the bad guy, actually.
If you'll indulge my curiosity, what's the ammo cost of forty versus nine?
It's, it's just a little bit higher, but the, the, the nine, you can get a hot round in the nine and it's just as vicious as twenty if you ever have to, I mean, forty if you ever have to.
I always think the nine elevator might be significantly cheaper, just Mr..
It's, it's not a whole lot. Yes, sir.
What's the matter?
Yeah, yeah.
How about body cams, body armor? You and your guys are equipped.
Yes, sir.
For the responsible calls.
Yes, sir.
Up to date and protected.
Yes, sir. We just ordered about eight thousand dollars more in vest because they go out and they got five years shelf life. And we would get through a grant, we'd get half of that back. So that's pretty cool.
That is good.
Yeah, and, and they, they keep the cameras on. They're doing better with that. Sometimes they get in a hurry or get in a fight or something and can't quite get the camera turned on, but it's rare that we have that. They, they doing good with the cameras.
Having cars as well, chief?
We, yes, sir. We've, we've got the, the car cameras too. We keep them up too.
Cool.
So it is, we covered pretty good as far as that. So it's really helped us out an awful lot, especially in lawsuits and whatnot.
And I will say, this is probably the first time really it's kind of been known as cool. So we did increase our vehicle fuel budget this year pretty sizably. We're just following the market. We're not expecting to go down. There's going to be times, there's some sort of war going on. And so just noticed that, that all of the vehicle fuel has been increased for some of these departments that are really using vehicle fuel.
Police at loan, three fifty two and six fifty five. We talked about professional development going up across all boards and this one is projected to be down thirty four hundred dollars. Is that just because we, they're not comprehensive to y'all to go to, chief? You're projecting not using as much money for professional development. Do you think y'all need to be, everybody else is increasing?
Their stance are down. That was one that we didn't really know until end of COVID years. There was just one that, that wasn't. I know year to year, I was just speaking to you, right, wait, now we did.
Year on year, but this year, everybody's is going up, theirs is down, and their equipment, refining equipment for other people, theirs is down by fifteen thousand dollars, which is thirty percent.
Six five five.
Six five five.
We, we had added some money last year for our SRT, your Special Response Team. We had a couple of them went to the school and then we had the rest of them be a train load at agencies. So it adds into that, and that's why we added that into that. So we weren't going to have the training this year on it. So that, that's one reason we, we could cut that.
If, if you're good, if nothing else, y'all wanted to?
Well, there's always, yes, sir. There's always things that we can use, but we, we are taking anything we get, but we're, we would, we can always use other stuff, yes.
So we talked, we can do this process, we're talking about training conferences, and that's these, what they're asking you to go to, came to resolve those conversations. So they were, they requested we go to these departments, these conferences and the equipment. That was the same thing. They believe that was a cut fifteen thousand dollars because we negotiated, we talked through everything like that. So again, these, these conversations happen every month as we go forward. That's where these, that's where they come from.
We can reapply for the DUI initiative, chief. Did we lose that?
Well, and I'm gonna tell you something and not to talk against any other department because I love them all and we all get along with all of them as best we can, but they jumped the gun on that on us. We were, we were tagging the DUIs pretty strong and, and it was one of those things where if you understand a certain percentage, they've got to cut anyway, starting off. And we were having problems with getting somebody that wants to work that. It, it is not a good slot to work. It's really crazy. A young person that, that is absolutely not tied to nothing because all your, all your hours and times are, are normal. I'm not going to point me as a normal person, but you like to have some normal time with your family and whatnot. You can't do it running that DUI thing because it's always set for at night and on the weekends. And you just don't have any good time on that. But we were compensating for that and a ton of privates was working pretty hard about going ahead and keep working the DUIs on the ship and that kind of stuff. And we were working with them and they really kind of led us to believe, we were not going to lose it pretty much.
Well, Jared, I think they also talked about this estate, essentially manages this grant, correct?
Estate, yeah.
Grant, and we kind of got the impression that they're looking to do a premium of it anyway. So they really were kind of culling a lot of departments. So in a normal year, we probably wouldn't have, because, you know, everyone's having issues with, you know, maintaining staffing positions. I think that that really, because they're coming back out with new parameters for the program and we're going to be applying for that.
We got DUI Officer of the Year for the state and for, for our size of the department. We got our size of department, Department of the Year. And, and they take that away. So it didn't, it didn't jive with what was going on, but we still going to do what we got to do.
So you think, Daniel, they backed away from it to revisit, to do bigger and better? So you think, Daniel, they backed away from it to revisit, to do bigger and better?
I hope so. They.
That's a guess of twain's.
Yeah, we saw, we kind of saw what they were saying. When we reported everything, our numbers were still, you know, we're still reporting and we asked if we could use, because we couldn't fill the position to do it, but we're having still DUIs being, you know, traffic complaints. And then they really wanted to change how that reporting had to happen. And so when the whole grant kind of went, went away, they came back and said, well, we're looking to do a remit of this. And when it comes back, our reporting will be different. And so that's the.
Okay. The problem I have with a grant, excuse me.
Oh, no, go ahead.
The problem I have with a grant is that they kind of feel like they own you. And they give you the things to do and a police officer has got to do everything because that's what society expects us, that DUI guy or girl, that's what they do and nothing else. And that's hard to own up to that. And then if they decide to cut it out, what are you going to do with that officer that you got doing it? You don't have a slot over here somewhere else on patrol. So they're going to be out of the job. So that's, that's the grant stuff that I really don't care too much for.
I got you. It's always the commitment, especially.
So it didn't upset you that bad that we missed it?
No, sir, because we did great. Our people were doing great and they held up to the standard. It was them down there.
Okay. Well, I was just hoping it was helping financially and keeping someone from.
Well, we were worried that we had a position, you see. I didn't have anything open. I'd have had somebody there.
Because again, that officer was DUI officer of the year? Was that what it was?
That's the one I'm talking about. They got DUI officer of the year and they still took it. So.
I think there was some external forces going on, but we were going to shift that position. So we didn't lose anybody.
They're regretting it now because they kind of, they kind of chewing on it a little bit down in Columbia.
Okay.
Well, I think that I wanted to highlight with that equipment that came up. And we did not, I don't want it, it doesn't appear, we didn't cut any of the equipment money. Five years ago, we got the Axon body cameras and it was a five-year commitment. And last year was our fifth payment of fifteen thousand. So it wasn't that any, they weren't cut of any equipment or anything like that. I mean, it was just that we finished the payments on the Axon body cameras. Last year was the five, fifth payment of fifteen thousand dollars.
And that's cool. You can't remember everything. I get it.
Oh, no, it doesn't appear that way. And that's why I had her.
I'm just saying, that was in the little narrative and I wouldn't have asked a question.
Oh, no, it's a great question. That's why she pulled up last year. That's why I have Jack City here. Because I'm looking, I'm like, oh, that does look strange. Absolutely.
Yeah. It's a two-year-old document.
Oh, yes.
All right. Anything else on police? All right, let's move on to fire. So we will discuss the fire contract that says in respect to your session or another time. So this, I think that's not a contract, but based on the only kind of how the copy, the package is negotiated, it can't. But saying that, we do anticipate the revenue on that contract in this month.
Excuse my ignorance, is debt service just payment of debt, just routine? Does it cover more than that?
Say it again.
Debt service, is that literally just making payments on ones and stuff? It's not what I'm covering.
And the next schedules are on the back. Some of them, they do get pretty detailed if there's some specifics.
I just want to make sure I understood the term.
You got it.
Yep, you got it.
That's right.
Fire?
Fire.
Go ahead, Bob.
No, I'm just, I was waiting for my cue.
Fire, page sixty-four.
Same question. Equipment, vehicles, I mean, have we applied for any? Usually maybe a truck or?
So that's part of, I think, the conversation in the contract. So that's, that's how we're going to be able to fund the truck going forward. That's the best way. That's the most logical way for us to fund the truck now. If that does not pan out, then we will look at how we can fund the truck through another. But it's not, we did not include a truck in this budget only because the potential for a contract able to support that solely is on the table. So a new truck is definitely needed.
Are you talking truck or engine?
I'm talking an engine, excuse me.
Gotcha.
A new engine is needed. And so we are looking at, if the contract pans out the way I'm hoping, then we will be able to find a truck. And that is unfortunately a twenty-month build out.
Two years.
Two years to build out, but this is, if we have the option to have it funded, that does not impact the city of Parkville residents, then we need to export that option. So the next few months, we'll know. And so you might see, it won't require a budget amendment, but it'll save us for us to refund ourselves.
Yeah, well, no, I would do a budget amendment just so I have that revenue. I'm picturing it. I had, right, that tracking entry. I would have that revenue offset. I'd really like to have it in there. And the capital would like to have noted in there that we have this updated contract, right?
And potentially to have this in before second read is what I'm hoping. So that we can do a second reading budget. So we can do first reading of a whole contract and then go ahead and amend the budget if we need to.
That's right.
But so new truck is on the horizon. We've talked with our fire department. They need one. This is several years of asking. So it's time.
Chief, what, one point two, three?
The amount of means with the truck and equipment on, it's just that.
Well, Daniel, there's a line and just.
Don't draw the radar. It depends on, you know, how everything's going up. So they go up that.
We need, and that's why we're working as quickly as possible to get this contract resolved because it has changed quite a bit. And if we do have that funding mechanism and have the option to do it and get all the contract language correct, then we can, we're going to go after that party.
So Karen, do you refund that back out if we got a contract instead of covering under that?
I would, I would add it to the contract revenue. So what I would do is I would have to add on the capital side, right? And then on this side of it, because it's going to be a loss, you'll have the debt service each year picking up. And then I would go back on the revenue side and increase on five contract revenue line as the offset to make it all.
It would not be our debt.
No.
Correct. So the county would care that debt.
They won't care that.
But that's, that's part of the conversation. We'll, we'll get into the more negotiations.
Is there a set meeting for that contract?
So we've, we'll talk in the next session about this week, is what I mean with that. Again.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on fire? But equipment is included.
Just to ask, you should explain the cutting animal control. I know it's small, I'm just curious.
Oh, so the animal control position was added in as a, it did animal control and then fire inspections. So that was a way for fire to get at every position and they took on animal control responsibilities.
So every dog, if they don't start a fire?
They do. The dogs are the worst margins. And so the main thing that we're having a problem with is that the fire marshal, what it evolved into, as we grow, fire marshal is having to do inspections, having to do, the position grew to what we really needed to become, which is more of a fire marshal inspector position and keeping up with all the, because as we grow, they were. The dog catcher position is something that is becoming problematic for us. Recently, we've had two pretty interesting cases with, one was a dogfight area that we had to maintain. Because we took on the dogs, we had to maintain the dogs and lawsuits that came from that. And then most recently, we had another time we had to take a crippled dog. So it's, it's starting to become quite a big event for us. My suggestion is to give it back to county in basic terms. We also could work with the humane society that's building and possibly give them a sum to take the dogs for us once they build their structure. So dog catcher, I think, position is we continue to do it, but it is no longer really benefiting. It's not really within our scope currently unless we add a new position. And really, we got a new position to have to be in police, but I would not want to take a police officer off the road to take dogs and cats and things like that. So right now, fire is covering it. They do have a truck to handle that. I think right now the shifts are just going out and they need something.
We have shifts fully on daytime, didn't at night if we need somebody to ride and tail.
So that's part of ongoing conversation. Again, there's bigger fish to provide with county right now that I don't necessarily want to push some things. But that's, that's the, pretty much where we ended up with that position. It's to do it right, you really need two decent people that are assigned to it. They need to be class three officers, I would say, so not arresting powers, but still have some authority because they're essentially become code enforcement officers that they can stagger and run the department. Because anything else, you're going to start taking away from other critical positions to do dog catching. So that's what we've kind of evolved into. We've grown and so have our departments changed.
I would, I would hope that the humane society, that they're building their facility is fast because I think we could trust them to, well, one of my biggest priorities here is make sure the animals take care of.
Of course.
Yeah, I think that would be a logical partner.
Absolutely. And they've been very upfront with us about, I've had them twice about their progress. They raised some of the cattle they need to kill it. Of course, they did a part of the land, so they're going to be acting. Darlington County Humane Society is coming to Parkville. So that itself is really nice and what they're designing is designed to accommodate the animals they have currently, plus some. But of course, the goal for them is to not have to have capacity because they want to get the animals out. Currently, their current conditions are just not acceptable. And so the hope is to have something logically close by. And Darlington County does contribute money to them, but it's not a lot. And the city could, it'd be much cheaper for us instead of having a position to pay them a sum, whatever, to then, for them to hire a part-time person to be the dog catcher. And then it's really, we're not the middle name anymore. Now, the county responsibility is the county, which does include Parkville. And so if we said tomorrow, we can no longer do this, it would fall back on them. But they're capable of doing that. That's on them. I have not had this conversation with Charles or any of the county council members, but it is something that happens.
Yeah. Well, I don't, we don't need to spend half an hour on it. I do appreciate the background.
It's quite, we're doing it quite a bit. Obviously, it's been ongoing conversation with fire and police and I for quite some time. But I think that the fire marshal now is sort of, they're giving out, they're going to hire right now. Because we want to promote the fire marshal, hire him potentially. That's what that position is focused on.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Okay. That's a narrative of vehicle fuel, Karen. What's interesting, the line five eighty, we have to take the salary of one firefighter. That, that's the accommodation of fuel.
Yes, that's based off of how much they're increasing. It's across the board. They were having to increase vehicle fuel.
Yeah, yeah. I thought that twenty-seven thousand dollars wasn't much, but all that they have to be approached. Good to see that all the bunker gear, the equipment is coming into.
That's right. And your bunker gear too, is that equipment, one big piece of that for that increase is that they look for this? Does it per your policy, per start call? Tell me if I'm wrong on that, but per your policy, that's why.
Per our policy, yes. Unfortunately, our time and age, we wear home. Do you establish medical call, we go, or if they seem fit? We had some, but like Chief said a while ago, they have an expiration date to miss out. So it's time for us to get some. And the bunker gear line, no control of the bar, went up seventeen percent our part.
Well, Sam, just let us see if we got it looking.
Yes, sir.
And what exactly, what is bumper?
That's our fire gear. We wear fans, airco.
Everything.
And we just, we buy it every year.
And there are some grants for bulletproof vests, but that rate is always a good point for those that do have to be fitted itself. And that can only be for one person, but the ones they want would be once anybody in the department.
We need adjusting for the, sometimes.
Every.
That's right. That's right. All right. Anything else on fire? Anyone who want to operation maintenance? One of our newest departments. And this is our dedicated staff member who goes around and takes everything. Again, you see the ramp up.
What page do you?
This is page seventy-five.
Thank you.
That's right. So this is out of public services that manage this, but this is our two employees. So again, anything that's related to citywide repairs, we are trying to get better charges. Originally, we're charging to individual apartments, but on stuff like for city hall happenings, that's not really finances fault potentially. It's not really a city manager's fault. Never more city manager's fault. But it's, we usually split it up between those different things. So this is what this department does. But all the work orders for the city, Joe is our maintenance man. So he can really know stuff and everything.
And then he has someone that works with them.
Yeah, that.
That's for two people.
So this one in particular, these lights are very custom.
Oh, good.
And as you see, a lot of them crack. So we've had at Dickens at the time trying to find the right one and it's expensive. So we did find four that are similar to the regular place ball.
But we're actually going back right now trying to get the foundation to assist us with that or the commission, the museum commission.
It's been a lot of trouble.
I think they're reaching out to the contractor to see because they were the ones that did these. We called the original person.
With the architect.
Architect.
Good stuff, that one.
Yes.
I wasn't going to call any names.
So they're working on, that's right. They're working on that part. So because they, Lauren, while she was still here, had actually gotten a hold of this manufacturing. They're like, no, can't do anything. We don't make the work. They're in Canada. It's really hard, y'all. So that's why we can deal with this one. I think they've narrowed down, though, something, you know.
We did have something, just a way that.
We haven't had anybody cancel it all yet. We have, so the guys have the option if you don't look up again. But they still have it. They were hooked with it.
I almost canceled the entire workshop before. Anything else on?
No, that's just one of those little things, though, in my little notes to myself. It's like our facilities always be so top-notch that people watch around and keep them in. So having to walk into this, we should have fixed it.
Well, it's tough to get them a quarter. This one's back too, right?
Yeah, no, you're right.
Finding it and getting it. We went to a few places. Now Ferguson has been our best bet of it. But this is one too that we're talking about on budget, right? Cabs and payback and all.
It was supposed to be four thousand dollars to do lights at first. So we said that's ridiculous. So we've been.
No, it was way more than that.
Six thousand?
Yeah, it's at least that. Y'all, and that's why the commission wanted to get involved. I think they were going to contribute a thousand towards it. This building though, you'll see, we've already added two thousand in the line in general fund for the addition because this is supposed to be self-sufficient off of rentals. And right now, we've already blown that budget and have been using general fund to support this this year.
Maybe you take those lights down. Maybe you don't try to replace them. Put four of the lights. You just get it. So if you have to come in here, they go, four, this is quality. I want to replace this.
Hate that. They're really cool. I hate that they cracked so quick.
I will go close after this meeting or pick up something and replace it.
Let's just do it. I know, which it was a straight ordinance. The stuff that you're building into is kind of, it's kind of difficult to.
There is, I, again, I'm not a manager of the light replacement, but I know there's a little bit that's not included.
Very.
Oh, yeah. It's, again, I don't want to spend half an hour.
It's as simple as it is.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything else on operation maintenance? We love that department. That's the work of all them. All right. How about, next one is Parks and Rec. So that's page seventy-eight, the fund department.
I would like to.
Or is that here to argue with me? Or the fund department?
Right.
All right. Any questions about Parks and Rec?
Um, Adam's still here. We have got to get us, we got to get us some cameras or something out there. We've got way too much vandalism out there. I don't know what the answer is. I'd like to get together with Adam and let's see what we can do. We have got to protect our huge investment out there. I don't know who's doing it, but they've just got way too much free rein, Daniel, as far as. I know that Adam and I talked about it. You have to keep the, at least a restroom open for the general public. We want to, but when you and your wife or tennis team or whatever's out there playing and they go into bathroom and it's, again, like Bobby said about here, you walk in here, your first impression, you got one shot at that. And I know that. Anyway, I could go on and on. What can we do to?
Bathroom's been destroyed three times this year.
Yeah.
Actually physically destroyed, vandalism, they have destroyed it. So we have, we've been in consultation with police. You know, we've discussed multiple options. It is a large park. It's at different hours. Cameras, again, have been a conversation we've had across the board, again, with police in investigations. And they're not as, this is not NCIS. This is not, you know, and it's just, they're not as effective as you think at capture, actually identifying people. They just give general distractions. And so we have a group of teenagers that we have kind of identified that are coming for destroying things. Apparently, we did find a TikTok trend of destroying public bathrooms recently. This is something I've dealt with in multiple cities. Parks are typically culprits. We have homeless who break in to keep warm. It doesn't matter if you lock it with a magnetic lock, they will generally, they will destroy the door lock to get inside. It is, it is epidemic to our industry. I don't know what the, I think the reason uptick could be contributed to sub-social trends. But our first goal is to work with police to act. I don't know what the, I think the reason uptick could be contributed to sub-social trends, um, but our first goal is to work with police to actively patrol and moderate, make more rounds around it, to try and discourage that activity. But it's tough, Bob, I don't, I'm barring, you know, spending quite a bit on some sort of hefty locking system, I guess, um, or something, but Adam, go ahead.
We've already spent a good amount on a hefty locking system, we have the automatic locks that lock at ten P M. every night, and they unlock at four A M., so we've done that, we put a specific camera on that bathroom. We've gotten the lights refixed on the complex that's closest to, it's to shine on the playground, where we're looking at options of installing a specific light just for that area. But because of just having to constantly fix that bathroom, our light item for installing the light has been used just to fix the bathroom, so we don't have the funds to put the light in. This budget, now July one, we get the new one, it's number one on our list to do.
Maybe, I mean, it might be, you know, we're doing from our side, which is the limited city power century up to police, maybe we can patrol police, but I think maybe the community effort, um, highlighting the fact of, hey, some pride in our facilities and police, police.
Can we put some more signage up regardless whether we do or don't have cameras, smile, you on mechanic camera, um, this is under police surveillance? Something that would trigger, they say, you know what, whether they do or they don't, I might better be careful, because I could be on camera.
Yeah, I, I agree, I mean, we could do something like that, yes.
We've, uh, we put the signs out there, and they take the signs and they'll, and they follow.
The, the first, the type of person I think who goes to destroy public bathroom is not deterred by a sign, um, I would imagine, but I, I wonder how much of the community kind of aware is about it, saying, hey, you know, this is happening, please help us stop it. But that is a way to sort, because then you now identify with Dr. Rob, and also bring attention to it, maybe bring people who want to do the same thing. It's, I'm hoping that we can get returns of sudden normalcy, where hopefully, maybe only once a year we get found and destroyed, you know, instead of three times, but not at all.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, this has been a reason uptick, and I'm not sure what the culprit is.
Yeah, and in closing, I'd like for you and Adam to get together, a lot of these surrounding areas are having these huge tournaments.
Sure.
I would like to think, and I'm partial, that Barley is second to none.
Sure.
Whatever we need to do, because about everything we've got out there is original. Whatever we need to do to poof our product up a little bit.
Sure.
To make them more encouraging and put us on the radar, because if that facility sits dormant, and another park fifty or hundred miles down the road, having fifty or sixty teams for one or two reasons, Daniel, we've got to find out what that is. And poof our product up, so they'll say, well, you know, Hartsfield is just as nice as, and I know Patriot Place over, something super nice, and the beach has got one or two new places. Who wouldn't want to go to the beach, I understand that, but I'm just, I just want us.
Everything we could do to promote, and, you know, as far as, uh, and I would say we do do a fairly good bit of term, we have tournaments that are scheduled, but then things get canceled and whatnot, but we could definitely increase our frequency. Discuss with agencies, reach out to them and see what, what reason they went to, the beaches, I think it's pretty obvious why they're going to the beach. But that's where we can also work with, we have Neptune Island, we have, you know, discussed this yesterday with the store commission, um, we have a lot more to offer than I think just, uh, more of a weekend experience. So when a family comes in, um, that's why our accommodations go up, they are getting warmer to stay here, but we have, we can reach out to other people who may have go to some, and say, hey, why don't you try us out for this year? And even if it's alternate, alternate, or, you know, alternating type of thing, or we get them, but that's a good thing. But that's more the conversations we get, um, discuss us taking kind of full control of our recreation department, student program. And that's something that, again, there's a couple of irons in the fire, they can be fixed first, and then, it's not that it's on the back burner, but, um, as far as getting an agreement in place and things like that, we definitely need to work on that this year, and then we need to decide what we want to do. But as we take kind of our own, we can take control of management's destiny with the recreation program, it's going to take contributions from city council and the city to spend money to do that, because once we, um, take on programs, take over programs, and that's going to be a cost. And that will, I think, encourage more tournaments, because some of the, some of the big tournaments are programs that we don't run, right? You know, so softball and.
We just provide the facility.
We just provide the facility, but we're controlled them.
Yeah.
That we're promoting them, you know, that's, Adam, you have any thoughts on the closing thoughts there?
I'd love to jump in on that, because that's a big thing that I was, I was thinking about leveraging the things that produce revenue force, Bob, and you said it, because it is, I'd love to, I have no use, I want to give Adam more money, so we can sponsor more things, you know, we can bring more people out there, because that translates to people in the restaurants, and to the heads of beds. It's the same thing for Neptune, it's the same thing for these facilities. Y'all remember the old book, Rich Man, Poor Man, I mean, it was all about, you take something that's revenue-producing, and then you leverage that revenue to produce more revenue. Buy two bicycles, you rep one out, was one of the examples in there, but that's the thing, Neptune, it, we'll get to that in a minute, but our promotion budget for Neptune is, it shows that it's going down by twenty thousand dollars. So things that produce revenue, and, you know, we're going to bring in one point six with Neptune, and costs two point three to run it, why in the heck, you know, don't we promote it? Or Neptune's sitting right there beside that beautiful facility, they all dovetail together, so give it Adam, who I think is doing a wonderful job, more tools to bring more people to those ball fields and do things recreationally. That's one of those things that puts you on, man, me and you're at the beach, you know, all the time, you get what's going on there, but look at Florence, you don't have to go to the beach, and look at Sutter and all that. We have good stuff, and we just need to, to ramp it up a little bit, it's just making sure that, you know, the lights ain't broken, the stuff that's done for that, but letting him reach out, giving him some money to reach out, that's where I think the budget reflects your priorities, going to be money allocated to ramping up the things that produce revenue force, because they'll ultimately produce more revenue force, I just love to see us grasp that concept, you know, a lot of fixed expenses, they're legacy, they're here, we got to take stuff to do, to bring in more money, or, and or talk about them tax increases.
Well, and the signage, we got good signage, but the cosmetic things like, we used to have the rose bed, you know, in the curb, fresh straw, I mean, you know, just anything, because we still have a lot of locals that go out there and walk or whatever.
Sure.
And I mean, they're taxed, all our help is funded as well, so I mean, not just for the weekend.
Sure, yeah.
People, I mean, it, it's kind of, when they park their car, they'll look over and say, boy, that shirt does look nice over there, or whatever, you know, I mean, it's, it's just a, and I'll agree with Bobby, whatever we need to do to spruce it. If we have to spend a little money to redo the beds, or the infields, the outfields, because I'm sure there's a life expectancy on the grass or whatever too, where it's, just like flowers in our yard, sometime we have to pull them up and go again.
Yeah, so I mean, what, what I think what we need to do is take a, um, maybe a C I P. list directly for the Parks and Fire Department.
Sure.
And, you know, that would take some time to analyze, and then look at what comes up, certainly small things, you know, one thing that kind of comes up often is the sign, which is not our sign. It's a legacy sign, it's been a part of it, and apparently there's some feelings attached to that sign, but that'd be something I would like to improve. So let's, uh, you know, we'll take a look at, and that's maybe this drubest year, we can look to do some stuff now, I want to do stuff now, but let us do an actual capital improvement plan on the park. To include, I mean, we floated the idea of a Barley two point O, you know, a second, uh, expansion of Barley, um, you know, and that ties into Neptune Island and things like that. The track, it's, the track needs to be resurfaced and things like that, so those type of expenses, um, as we kind of go through them, they come up, but, you know, capital approval plan for the park is that first.
I think that's a great idea, C P I. is a great idea.
Sure.
Yeah, I would say, I was just going to say, Adam and I talk quite often, um, and he does a great job, it's beautiful out there, that facility is phenomenal. Uh, it's unfortunate with tournaments, because we don't know the week of it, if they're going to make or not, it's very difficult on that. I would say, we live in Lexington, I play on a Hartsfield, my son plays on a Hartsfield travel ball team, and, um, we live in Lexington, and it's because there's so many more people. So if you don't have enough teams, sign up for it, they've promoted it to the best of their ability, but all the Lexington travel ball teams get to stay home, they love it. So there's only going to be so much, and now I'm telling if I'm wrong, that y'all can do, in addition to what you're doing, other than a Barley two point O, right? Because we don't have the field, it's like, we're usually across three different parks in Lexington, with fifty to sixty teams, it's, I'm concerned comparing apples and oranges, I want it here, we get so sad, we want to be in Hartsfield every weekend, I want to be able to stay home, you know? Um, and I definitely want us to have hospitality and accommodations, but they have a much bigger cash flow intake on that. Um, I can skip to Neptune Island a little bit, we get amazing tag funding, that's much twenty thousand dollars less, what about that savings we get? We get that from, um, P R T., S C. P R T., that's the only reason why you see that cut there. Uh, we, we did write that hard, and I would say to Adam, you weren't great with the lease, of what we can promote out of the water park and from Barley, um, I, we want all the tournaments we can get, absolutely. We can figure out why they're not, I don't know, maybe I can talk to the U Trip director and try to figure out why they think they don't make, um, absolutely.
Well, if we have to breeze a palm, or whatever we got to do.
I'm like, what do we do, if they don't have enough teams though, and they can't cover recalls, they're looking at it, they're not coming, right? At the end of the day, your triple S A. and the Top Guns are all there to make money.
And it's very competitive.
Yeah, y'all, it's hard, I think it's hard to get those tournaments.
Yeah.
Adam, if you come to town, get a pact if they're going to tournament that directs them to restaurants and things, is that a main street?
Uh, we just created that last year.
We just created one last year for that types of purposes, so they use all of that.
Yes, one of those, you know, saying, come here.
Even the center theater hits.
Do our merchants buy into it and say, you get a ten percent discount, if you come here in the English, you have to, I used to do that.
But I can start looking into that, I'm sure.
We have a few aggressive restaurants out there.
We do.
Would do that.
Yeah, it'd be easy, um, yeah, I could talk to them.
Ten percent off to all, so some tournaments are.
We do that with Neptune Island, they have their own page, so maybe.
We're constantly looking for partners with that type of thing.
Stories somewhere downtown. Restaurant, they're here to play ball, they're going to town to eat.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But the intention by.
I've got a P D S.
So they'll hit one, two, or go out wherever.
Done with recreation, I'm ready.
Ready, oh, anything else on recreation?
Um, just anything recreation or Neptune Island, which you keep coming to, is there such a thing as an emissions tax, and we charge that and get that? What percentage is, is that a hundred percent us, or does it go to the state, or what?
It's a five percent emissions tax.
Five percent?
Yes, and we pay that to the state.
We pay it to the state.
So we collect it and then, yeah.
So we don't get any benefit from it.
But with parks and rec, we wouldn't do that, because we don't engage these.
Right, right, but is there an option for a local emissions tax?
I don't know, you'd have to.
Some cities do have some.
Well, if there is, that might be an option at Neptune Island.
Well, the thing that's kind of helpful, that's now, particularly, going back to Parks and Rec, um, the kind of difference I see with our city versus others, that we do not have a dedicated funding source, most have dedicated village to Parks and Rec district. We've talked about that, there is a nineteen fifty five, our, that has a Parks and Rec district with zero taxi village. And so it does exist on the books, I assume, unless it's, it's not the phone, but, um, that's kind of the issue we're onto, is that we don't, we have to pull from the general fund, so money is, again, competing with public safety and things like that, and, you know. So, but definitely it's worth looking into, we certainly can, we, we constantly, we're constantly looking for ways to improve our marketing. I know Adam is reaching out, trying to do tournaments like that. A lot of the things I think are going to be, when we take charge of the recreation department and all the programs associated with it, that's what really improves, I think, should be really helpful, y'all thought?
Well, it would, Daniel, that's one of those things, I guess you may have said that, well, the fact that we don't have that dedicated line for recreation, and so many cities do, you can read about them, they, they just take throw money or.
But they have a special purpose.
They have a special purpose district for it, and so how difficult is that?
It's all legislative.
Legislative.
Well, the previous mayor, our daughter, was, was, it won't citizens to be taxed on the, on addition to it, because really, that is adding another, you know, I don't know what the location would be, I'm interested to see for that.
Well, how parts of town should?
That's all.
Which is the same as.
The same as.
Same time as.
Well, it's like if we add village, you add village, you call it different things, but it's still village, but that's.
That's right.
If people thought this day and time recreation is so large, that they, that their money, part of it was going for recreation, and they've got, like you said.
Hey, I'm all about it, um, I was just speaking for the previous mayor that didn't, and that's fine, it was, um, it was the adding that additional, which I was, I'm thinking through, why, because, oh, I would love a special purpose district, unless, I mean, I would be all about it for Parks and Rec.
So it's all legislative?
Yes, to get assigned.
How about penny sales tax?
That's typically the counter function.
And you, but you could earmark it.
There, there are things they will allow and they don't allow, like you can do a penny.
Yeah.
I would have to look and see about a.
The city can't create a penny sales tax.
And most of that's for infrastructure.
Right.
It is. But we would rob Peter if they called it a special purpose.
Well, you're already at ten percent, you're already at ten percent.
You're going to rob this, they call you going to waste time.
And then, and it's a matter of taking more signs, that's I think where we talk to other cities and get that process first thing on.
Is that nineteen fifty five?
Yeah.
It's out there, but it just didn't have taxing.
Yeah, no taxing, they already had it, had members that were appointed by legislative, and it was nineteen fifty.
It's in the fifties, I found a, a reference to it in the paper, and then passed on to Natalie, and Natalie found a statue.
Okay, so we have the, we do have some of the, like you said, I mean, in the Hartsfield township percentage, there is a two mil, which generates for them, I think, a hundred eighty thousand dollars a year. You know, I certainly like to see ward or a, or a, I mean, a recreation program, um, but that would be an additional village on top that would be specified for Parks and Recreation.
Maybe somehow with. Conversations with the county and maybe the legislative delegation, there could be some consensus.
I think there's going to be, uh, again, this year, um, once we get the one intent care of.
Yeah.
That option.
I get that.
I'd say that with no children in the system, just understanding that that is the benefit of everybody, brings people down to recreation, so it puts, it puts people in our restaurant, it puts people in our.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for this, but it, it would have to be a, with lead, candidate delegation.
So having that already on the books to nineteen fifty five, is that half the ballot, and it's there?
Well, it's there, you know, I don't know, I'm not looking for lawyer notice or sunset after, you don't use it or what?
Right, got you.
Well, are you streets and grounds that?
It is, um, I did, Adam, you did a close authority, we covered it, you want to talk about it?
I mean, to Karen's point with, like, they're always in Lexington, because they have so many teams there, that they really don't have to go. In years past, and Bob can see for this, we used to have six, seven, eight travel ball teams that played at Hartsfield long. So we really didn't have, our teams didn't have travel, because that's enough to make a turn. Well, as recreation and participation's gone down, Lexington's increased, Northern Beach is increased, and that has a lot to do with the facilities they have and stuff like that. So I'm not saying building a new facility is going to increase those numbers, that's kind of the whole thought process, it would help, absolutely, but would it actually fix the issue? Probably not, the big issue is we need to build recreation back up to where it used to be, to justify the building of the tournaments, to bring them back to Hartsfield.
What are those areas around this city that don't have facilities, that have kids that want to play ball, that maybe we're not tapping into them enough to, you know, where's that line, we know where they say, I will go to Columbia, or I would come this way.
Could be the same thing Neptune Island draws from, I think.
Well, Neptune, a little ball.
Well, we're forty-five minutes.
We pull from about two hours from Neptune Island, I mean, so recreation, so the county, those are recreation programs for the bar, Society Hill, um.
Darlington.
Darlington, yeah, I forgot Darlington, um, so they can go all of that, so that's our pull for that, for rec, rec league stuff, now travel ball, that's all over, I'm not sure, you know, we have the Northern League and.
National, but national that has, I don't think any travel ball.
I mean, it's a, it's a combination of things, um, you know, I do think that we do try and go for as many tournaments we can, it's a capacity issue, it's also a, you know, there's often stuff going on where hotels aren't available, you know, we do have our hotels built, so. I think it's, again, as we go through a capital approval plan for the park, let's build up our plan for Neptune, or Darlington, for Parks and Recreation itself, the program, let's identify possible funding sources, and that's our roadmap to kind of improving this program. Okay?
Good.
All right.
So when you put that in your quiver then, I mean, can you, I know you've got a thousand things for you.
Yeah, we have.
Let's, let's, let's be intentional.
Oh, absolutely, that's, that's been in my quivers since I got here, um, certain things to press, yeah, but no, you're absolutely, we are going.
Where, where we are today, the recognition of it, let's be intentional about it.
Sure, agree, absolutely. Um, one, my, my thing, this is the second capital purchase, a new truck, uh, our van is dying, and that is our typical for bigger out of people. So it's twenty-five thousand dollars, that's through state contract, that means we can buy four to one, one fifty for twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, or three to five fifty, so. All right, uh, we just had, all we have left is streets and grounds and cemetery operation, airport operations, that's all we're going.
Okay, let's, let's hammer through that. We need some food.
That's right. All right, streets and grounds.
Lunch is here.
Lunch is here. So streets and grounds, again, public services is on page eighty-three. And we have had some promotions there. I did create a, make a streets and grounds manager position this past year. Um, so instead of being under utilities, we have a separate manager position. He's doing a decent job. He's doing, he's doing an excellent job. So he's one of the managers who reports now to the director. And then we also promoted supervisor in that role. They, of course, are responsible for all the streets and grounds in city, watering plants, take care of them. They have quite a long list of things they take care of in addition to all the requests we get for things they grow. So they are quite busy. Any questions about that?
Can I ask one question about that thirteen hundred percent increase or was it?
Yeah, that's right. So if we were not filling accurately, we didn't have it booked in the right line for, something to water, watering our flowers, watering everything. For landscape, street, uh, watering and maintaining the like for that, so that's now in that. So yes, thirteen thou, thirteen hundred percent rate increase because we're doing it in the right line.
Right, at C P I, right?
It's right, yeah, yeah. We're trying to keep up the collection of water.
So they used to not bill ourselves, we're billed water. Uh, we have meters on everything, but for our master firework, that's, we all require to bill the city for the water that's utilized, because that's our objective.
We buy our water just like we do from dead.
Absolutely.
Selling waters, if that was a revelation.
And the Neptune Island one, that one should hopefully go down some. They kind of badly.
Bonding, bonding requirements to do that.
Can't provide these services. I asked them to reimburse ourselves for it and like I said, no. So it is in.
Bill ourselves and pay ourselves.
That's right. Yep, and there's just a counter back.
So same thing, all those other years, like, wasn't budgeted in this line like it.
We weren't billing ourselves.
We just weren't.
There we go.
So now we.
We're billing, yeah.
But the net is the same.
Yeah.
We actually make money off.
The water supply, but they shouldn't be, we pay revenue side.
You're telling me so.
But that's because of the water supply side. We would see a part that back because of our transfer, the transfer station.
Yep.
I wouldn't say it's a net because we only take a percentage of it back over in the operating transfer, but it would impact that because it would increase our revenues on water supply.
So pay it and get it back on the transfer.
That's right. That's right. We have to book it.
That's what we have to count because they, they go over crazy. All right.
That's what we're here for.
Anything else in streets and grounds?
I do like the, uh, the increase in the park maintenance supplies. We think that's from the last conversation.
So they handle, the Parks and Rec handles lawn and fire, correct? With in product.
Really, only Hyrum Lee and the tennis courts at long.
That's right.
There you go. And so they handle the rest of the parks. Okay. The last two funds, our cemetery, cemetery is a, it's unfortunate, we are seeing an increase in revenue.
Page nine.
Ninety, we've seen, we've seen before.
Oh, that's right.
We've had a decrease, uh, this past two years, unfortunately, that quite increases for another plot size. So a little bit more appropriate. We did not look at last year, even though I think we had an increase because just, we didn't want to, we don't want to make money off of that. We were truly wanting to maintain our things, but it was such a substantial increase.
So that, and sorry, I just want to say that takes in the variable portion of Marion's contract when she gets a certain number for the launch of burial.
We're starting to make additional.
We, we have to pay additional.
Now, that contract, I believe, is up next year? Out for the next year?
Six thirty, twenty-three.
Yes, um, historically, we have not had anyone else bid. So, um, that's just not a problem. And we are, we are constantly maintaining the cemeteries. We do treat for firings. We do try to, we make sure that there are no deaths happening of flowers, but, you know, things, wind blows, things happen, but it's, it is an open park. We cannot seal it. Uh, we can't close it in, so it's open for everyone.
Marion's part in opening a grave.
So she, she does, she opens it and finishes it. Now, she does not do the lowering of the.
Cast. Just like the. That's a funeral.
Yes.
She has that opening.
She, she digs the grave and covers it.
She digs.
She digs it, yeah, or one of the works, but she's on the back end.
You're billed for it on your.
They, that's exactly right. Yes, Brandon, Brandon gets to handle all of that. He does a great job. He has a bunch of great topics there. He's very close with me.
We've had, we've had, this year's been stressful, right? We first opened it. We've had, because of the influx of plots that are opening, closing, they're being double booked on Saturdays, and so there has been a lot pushed to get these things kind of in time manner. We only have so, especially green lawn. That's why green lawn improvements are so necessary. But it's, I, I think they'll recognize that we have four active heroines in the city and they are all breaking, they're exceeding their records, you know, breaking records. And so that all comes to us. So, John, I think just everyone be cognizant of the fact that this is a, it's been a tough year across the board for everyone, including four remote workers who contract with.
Does Park Magnolia that has the headstones, does it flood?
I don't know where I've ever heard anything about flooding.
So I was getting ready to go out. I talked about going to the side and said, I don't have one. Somebody said, well, don't buy one in the park that has the headstone because it floods.
I was under the impression I could park down near the ditch.
Yeah.
So there's some flooding out there.
Yeah, that's quite.
But it's not, is it?
Toward the high school. Toward the high school, toward.
Toward the high school.
That's the matter.
Okay, so is, is it falls back there and it falls off in the back?
And those do have headstones towards the high school.
Okay, okay, back there.
Daniel.
So we have still.
Eleven Street, remember looking at the flood map? Well, not flood map, but the drainage issue.
Right, oh, right, yes.
Still not wanting to let you know that.
Right, flooded in the.
My, I've not known that it's done that. Recently, but, um, some years back, we had some flooding.
So they flooded everywhere.
And, and we could get it to the county line, which was backing off the county line, like, you know, the ditches and things.
Brandon, have you gotten a complaint about flooding?
Uh, not through the customers. Uh, Marion's mentioned it, uh, when it's raining very heavily. Uh, there's a certain area back there, Magnolia, that will get.
Are there graves in that section? There are graves.
What about green lawn, right?
Green lawn, I haven't heard of any flooding issues. Um, I don't have a general area on that, but, um.
Did have severe problems one time, um, from, when the, when the storm was out there down.
Yeah.
It was, it was real bad out there.
We'll look into that. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. It could be improved when we do some of the.
But it's, it's just a general draw on the landscape.
If it's lower than the ditch, that's what it is. All right, next is airport. I was already on it, sorry. So the airport, um, this again is mostly a contract with Rhydera. I don't know if we actually did, anticipated book the revenues from the new hangar lease. That could be why there's the increase. I don't think we did yet because that's still a decision. So we didn't want to show our cards, so to speak. But that's, you will see a slight increase in after that. Yeah, the deal contract is up for renewal next year, or I think in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. So five-year contracts, so we'll be negotiating some tests. I want to look at fuel sales. I want to look at, um, hangar lease, everything like that. Any questions on that?
She said twenty one.
I believe it's next year. It, um, it goes, it's up for renewal. I think they can.
Twenty two, that's up for.
It might be two years, twenty twenty twenty.
I think you have two years.
Twenty twenty four, that's right.
Oh, oh, twenty twenty five.
It's an odd year whichever one.
It's twenty twenty five. We just reviewed it in twenty twenty.
Yeah, so I might ask for it, add that in. We'll get that in later. It's here when it comes back up. That's helpful to have in there so we can get that added for that. And you'll see the airport city match went back down this year just because last year we had added in the furniture and things like that for the new building out there.
Um, we did, we did budget this, this, in this year. You guys approved a FAA study to begin for looking at air, the runway. State mentioned, but. Lengthening, not lengthening.
I think it was redoing it.
Just redoing it. We did not talk about lengthening either, but that's a complete law law. Because of costs of all materials, we opted to hold a year on it. They, they say they recommend to start, you have to go for it every single year. I think with everything going on, they're going to be not holding to that. So we budget thirteen, we paid thirteen thousand dollars this fiscal year for a study that would be active and we could use it for the following fiscal year. We do need to do a, and it could not, it could be just a patch job, so we'll see, but the April isn't more than a straight natural. So, that's all we have to mention. All right, with that, we have finished general fund.
Time to eat.
You ready for lunch?
No, I am.
Okay.
Take a break.
You don't want to be on all sections. Uh, I'll tell you what. You're wanting to eat.
You're a text, you're a text, you forget something.
Yeah, I'll text you. Enterprise fund, this is fund O two, which is on page, starting on page ninety-six. And this is our water, wastewater sewer and Neptune Island. So let's get into the revenues. Get into the revenues.
It's not, it's still tied.
The revenues.
It's still sorted.
So, um, uh, water and sewer does continue to perform. You can see a pretty steady growth, uh, the last three years, um, including this past year, we did have some more growth, but just take away from that, that we are, we're water rents and water and sewer rents, as we call them. So essentially the usage fee for using our water and sewer. Sewer is actually a little bit higher because we have more sewer customers than water customers. We have several county customers, including Bay Road and elementary, middle school, elementary. It's outside elementary. We do get payments from there, so that's what that means.
Now, the, just to the eye, it looks like revenues are growing faster than expenditures.
Yeah, so.
Did numbers bear that out?
We're, we'll, we'll fix that when we get to Neptune Island, you'll understand. Where that comes from. Uh, so again, watch for utility revenues support Neptune Island.
Yeah, yeah.
Almost, and hospitality of that. But yes, our water, our rates, our water and sewer sales continue to increase. We have a two hundred, we predict, we're anticipating a two hundred fifty thousand dollar increase.
We didn't really decrease these that much during COVID, I don't think.
No, no, I feel like that's going to be probably the biggest portion of what's increasing that you can see here. Um, the ratings over and over is going to be the, um, that's what the operating transfer is doing. The transfer over from hospital.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so we did, we're able, because stuff is rolling off of hospitality.
That's right.
We're now, now able to portion a lot more to Neptune Island, which is what the goal was. So we take the hospitality monies, instead of coming out of water and sewer money, we put to hospitality because that needs to continue for a while as well. But that, that's a good portion of it. Um, so water sales and those will increase when we increase businesses. A slight increase because that's not as, it's more money over the whole, of course, for people homes. A big thing that will really help is to do housing development. Um, the one out Bay Road is thirty three homes, that's going to help. So those are things. As we get more of those, any of those, our single water and sewer sales go up.
I'm going to say something right quick. If you're on page ninety-six, though, you'll really see while that only shows a four percent, we are doing so much better on revenues this year because if you look at those three databases at the bottom of the stimulus surplus. Um, and then look at that federal stimulus funds. Y'all, last year, we heavily depended on fund balance and federal stimulus funds to get us there. This year, we are, we saw a really good job of increasing our water and sewer. Um, very excited about that. Brandon has worked so hard to clean up. When you have thirty-six hundred, four thousand accounts, y'all, there's going to be things that we need to clean up. Um, I would say they've done a great job collecting revenues to be able to laugh for us on this. We are entering the last year of our ordinance where we increase it by three percent each year for C P I, that's what we have in there. My recommendation is because we've been doing so well and we're able to cover our expenses, um, that continue that to next year. That won't be this budget, but next year, I'm not doing another order and say, we don't need it right now. Y'all did such a major overhaul with that first one that we don't need a revamp of the process. Y'all, y'all created the wheel last time. We don't have to do that again.
One more increase.
We did.
This, this year.
This year, but then I will continue to walk the same, which includes. Tell your mom I'll talk to her.
Yeah, it has some power.
Yeah, that three percent doesn't cover the C P I agreement. That doesn't cover, that's just keep us maintained.
It's, and it's to avoid, as we were talking about, which Baccus up before, I mean, we'll have to do a sizable increase.
Yes, well, it's through the three percent each year.
Honestly, I mean, that's a good approach.
They're happy this year not using two modes surplus. And when we did the financing for the water park, it was always the intention to use hospitality revenues and water park revenues if they were there to cover the debt payment. This is the first year that we have the full debt payment for the water park. That's why we're seeing the large increase in the hospitality spending to cover that. The best part is that we're not using water sewer funds to pay for the water park. So excited that we have the hospitality funds available. We're not burdening ourselves. We have the money there. They did an amazing analysis that helped us determine that. Um, they're really excited that we're not having to use fund balance to pay for water park debt service.
And so is our public services.
Yep, period right.
Waters, and this, and again, um, we're going to take expenditures, but we are still looking for two million dollars of the larva monies. We did not budget for some of those expenses. So it's nine hundred thousand dollars for store water and about one point one million dollars with the water and sewer improvements to our water towers. That was the arfa, as we discussed in our workshop. That's, so those are part of this budget year, but not in this.
Portion notice. You would think two ninety-seven is in there. I mean, how expect to the nine hundred thousand just now? That's one phase of it. The two ninety-seven is one phase of the FEMA nine hundred thousand that y'all read on the ARPA. Um, that's the portion that would be due this year. Now, we are talking with them as well since y'all are approving it, you know, it's obvious idea when we have ARPA. Uh, since y'all are good to go with the nine hundred thousand of ARPA to pay for the FEMA portion of it. Let's just go ahead and get it done and not do phases. We did phases when it was going to have to come from fund balance, but since we have dedicated funds for it with ARPA before costs continue to rise, if there's a way to get this back on schedule, we can get it done this year.
And we did roll in it once, opposed to do it three or four years.
We only did the three year before to help our budget to get us there. But ARPA has changed that for us.
Um, this is just a breakdown, oh, did I go to Neptune Island? I did go to Neptune Island. So Neptune, so I split, this is split up into water and wastewater, and then we get into Neptune Island. And now you see, Mr. Mayor, the reason. But as you can see, it is, the costs are going down. That two thousand eighteen, I think that was the first year or second year.
Those are two years. The reason why you see the, a much lower one there, well.
Well, that's COVID is.
That's COVID, yes, that's COVID. And the eighteen nineteen was because we opened it.
Yes.
So that was opening year. Um, that's not so big because also in that, you have all the capital, it's all paying over everything in there. And that's expenditures, the capital waste purchases of at least six hundred thousand there. So, um, and then twenty twenty-one, we would have had the, um, Crappens Kitchen, the Food and Beverage Building Fair.
But it's still COVID ring group. We still had, um, capacity limitations.
That's right.
At the start of that twenty twenty year.
And you had modified hours.
And modified.
Oh, it's not hours.
But you still set a per day record.
We did, a thousand fifty-two. Isn't that amazing? Seventy-six operating days, a thousand fifty-two average per day. The best we ever had was last year.
So in this, so when I started in the middle of this, the twenty, um, that's when we, uh, had, the COVID came in. It was right between these two that we were discovering that we were operating during the week and it was.
In August.
In August, and it was essentially, you were bleeding out because it was, no one was coming. And so we made the call to cut the operating days and go Friday through Sunday as opposed to a Monday through Sunday. And that's what saved us, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Well, this summer, I'm very excited for them, so this will hit. June is always our biggest month. I'm excited to see what happens for them. This is going to be the first year. While we were concerned with the Darlington County school schedule, when they went to modify year round, it actually has helped us a ton because it's going to be the first year we're opening the full month of June, seven days a week. We've never had that opportunity. June is always our biggest month. People aren't on vacation yet. They're excited for summer. They're out of school. It's our busiest time of year. So Adam's going to have so much fun with the month of June. It's going to be a great month for him.
We had, so as I said, lingering on August, those days have been short.
That's right.
Went to June. So we really have two full months. Went to June, so we really have two full months, June and July, of complete operation, which is gonna be our, our good month. So, hopefully, we'll see an increase in sales, and hopefully, people, you know, we still marketing, and people come from about two hours away, is what we're noticing, we do zip code, code research, and so, they come as far as we got stuff in Charlotte, and everything turned out.
So, next year, the school district will get out earlier, am I?
I'd have to look and say.
Because they're starting back in August.
August first.
August first.
Right.
Yeah, that would even better for us.
So, it could push the season, starting.
We're gonna, we're gonna change it depending on what the season is, we're gonna grow with what the waters we have.
Starting the year early, or might actually be quite difficult because of the weather. So, like, right now, it feels good now, but the temperature of the water is like fifty degrees, so.
You can only go so far.
We, we can only move it up so far, just because of that.
I'm concerned, because we open next, they open next weekend.
October, April fourteen. It's our next.
It's gonna be June.
Mayor's command is already written.
Good. They're picking back up. I sure wasn't a big year for it, but we.
Yep.
Group sales are still lingering. So, I mean, again, we anticipate it coming in, and that's why, so we did in budget for a new splash pad this year, because it was about five-hundred-thousand dollars, and I'd cost probably, but at the time, it was also done. But that's where, when we start talking water park, we need to expand the amenities.
Right.
So redo the splash pad, offer more variety, because that's, so if you guys have not been, maybe not, but we're trying to, the splash pad and the zoo is the reason why people are going to the zoo. Not to just see the animals, but they're going to splash pads, splash pads kill. And so, expanding our splash pad to be, again, on market with the Neptune Islands, it's still the Pirates.
Piratesville.
Piratesville. It's two thousand thirteen, so next year is what we're looking at, and when we do that, then we can justify a height, a rate increase. Because right now, if you increase the rates, we did increase it a little bit, but not like a substantial increase, because there's no new amenities, we don't wanna burn people out on the park, but that's the nature of, not show business, but nature of attraction business, that we have to keep adding and adding.
We can't afford a slide tower, but we can do a splash pad, I think two, city council will have a real opportunity there too, to highlight if we make this, if we're able to make it one of the accessible-for-all type structures. I think that would be really cool, and right now, we're limited to the heights, which we would still have to have a lifeguard there managing it to make sure there's not force play to hurt the smaller kids. But if we're able to go to this one large complex structure that we booked at, and it'll be Adam's first time going to WWA, that's when we really find out what we want there. But to have one large structure, and everything kind of comes off of it, we're able to have all ages that are there, hopefully, that was getting covered along the side. Why I said, the water park crew out there and maintenance, they go, come on, it's like after work, and those features are not working out there. Two thousand thirteen, from Rain Drop, that's a creative, a very small company, it was perfect for the new tenant, but now, this is gonna be, this season?
This season.
Yeah, this is the fifth season of water park. That's crazy to think about, it's time, five years, that new is running off, we, we gotta figure something out for that.
The new slide tower was in the.
I can't do that.
Two-to-four million dollar range, is that right?
It probably, I mean, the max two.
Two, okay.
Yeah, but that's.
But that, no, that's still expanding. Because we have, we don't have room.
Yeah.
So, the soccer field is the next logical, well, the only logical spot to go because of soil composition. So, it's, it's that kind of mentality, and that can, again, as we talk about fire, the carbon cell, we can talk about those things, but those are just some things you wanna kind of holler at too. Staffing, of course, is tough for everybody this year, we are working our butts off to get as much staff as we can in, that's Adam's sole job right now, it seems like. And HR is really helping out that, we're kind of all hands on deck right now, that's a, and so, the main thing is that we're losing, we're just not having as many people apply, and getting them to come in and retain. It's a problem everywhere. The, the youth age that we're trying to hire, it's just a different ballgame, so we have enough for, of course, the opening start, we're, we're ready to go on that end, but we're gonna still, still actually, we're gonna see, and make ten numbers. But, I mean, you know, the first time we opened up, like ninety lifeguards, and now we're at seventy-something, is that right?
First, like, first season?
Right now, no, right now, we're at how many lifeguards?
Forty-four hires.
Forty-four hires, that's right, we need enough sixty, that's what I meant, sorry. And so, we have enough to open, but it's tough, and YMC, we just have a same company, they don't have lifeguards, so we are the reason for that mostly. I wasn't too, I wasn't too worried, but it's still an issue, they're having, it's just, there's not a lot of people working, the workforce for that ain't too big.
And we did increase pay this year, Gerald, we did increase it to fifty-one. So, we did increase pay, increased pay this year, but we're hoping that while it's still not even compared to fast McDonald's or the fast food places can offer.
Or certain gas stations.
But hopefully, the work-life balance, they do a great job of working, the staffs, like, what days can you work? You only work two days a week, that's fine, I'll take the two days a week, they don't force them to work weekends or every day, we take whatever we can do off of their schedules. That's really good out there, and I feel like we highlighted before the leadership opportunities that they provide them. Hopefully, the purpose of that and the work environment we provide.
We do, we do want stuff, and we have, that's for that and stuff, so it is a fun, a really fun place to work.
Right.
And that's why we are award-winning.
That's right.
But definitely, we will be offering lifeguard classes from council members, so they can fill in, just so you know, that's kinda.
Get ready.
Twenty-third through twenty-seventh.
That's right.
But that's our revenues, so it's.
Yes.
So, we, they can get into, they can get to Lazy River, not the slide, not the slide in the Lazy River, the splash pad, they can.
There is limited, they can do things there, and then they can get in the wave pool, but then you provide for them loads for handicap accessible to get into the later, they're difficult. We have special harnesses for them, so that they can go on the Lazy River. But I feel like the opportunity there to make the splash pad more accessible, I think y'all done a great job with the playgrounds.
It's not negotiable.
I agree.
Right, you know, so if we're gonna do it, let's do it right, and let's make it that way. I think, y'all, that's definitely a focus with the playgrounds, and I think it translates to that.
So, this is, this is the revenue, this is from emissions and whatnot, so we are, we are just made a growth this season because of the four operating days and the good months, so a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, but that again, is that what, eighteen dollars a ticket, and we raised it to eighteen twenty-five?
Yeah, we did, we only raised that, I think, twenty-five cents, a few cents there. A few things that reflects to Cabana's, I mean, y'all, people just, they love it, and they, they sell out so much, it was time to up the price, so that's dynamic, pricing gets more, it costs more for those on the weekend versus a weekday. Also, with food costs going up, which we did reflect on the expense side, our revenues on food went up. Having the one place in Krappens Kitchen really helps, and.
That's exciting for a full season of that, too.
We actually do have a cost savings issue, though, because they're switching the point-of-sale system, and that's right, we got out of ideal, and ideal had every online transaction, we got charged a percent to our new vendors, if not, so we're saving twenty-thousand dollars in processing fees.
That's right.
And so, just so you know, so council did authorize the staff to, within a twenty percent kind of variable, to increase rates, so we stayed within that, and raised up our rates for employees, paying. We maintain that level of control. This is a breakdown of Fund Two, so this is now including all water, water sewer and Neptune Island. So, this is a breakdown of our revenues, as you can see, it's thirty-six percent water services, water rents, thirty-seven percent sewer, because again, we have a couple more sewer customers, and twenty-two percent the water park, and that's emissions and whatnot, it's food sales. The rest of them are service charges and penalties and things like that, miscellaneous, I think it's broken down, just a couple other things. But that's larger, where our monies come from, that fund. The big areas of growth are, again, water rents and wastewater rents, that's a growth that we see from new businesses coming in, new housing, as we continue to grow, that will grow. And that's a, that income stays steady, so it's, it's really good to have, it doesn't fluctuate with sales, and they're using the water, but it's pretty consistent. Then the water side, emissions, I guess we're anticipating about, I think it was a hundred and sixty, but I think it's actually a hundred and fifty thousand, sorry, there, and then, because hospitality's doing so well, we are doing a much larger transfer opening, so another almost three-hundred-thousand dollars from hospitality to save the utility fund, we're having to pay for the water company. So, any question about revenues, before we get into?
And y'all, really, that comes back to the splash pad, you know, our goal was always for the water park to break even, but, um, we're, we're gonna have to do something next year to justify a price increase in tickets, general admission, we did a tiny one this year, but I didn't feel comfortable with increasing it, huge amount, I know staff costs more, food costs more, we would have those reasons, but we couldn't go, we couldn't go too much.
Our ultimate goal is to provide a local attraction that is affordable for residents, that's why we're a local, or season master, say, property. But as we attract more and more, and do start competing, we need to expand our emissions, unfortunately. Costs, this is again a breakdown of our costs, operating expenses, salaries and whatnot, or salary benefits and operating expenses are a larger portion of our fund, and then, the big one, again, is we do transfer from our utility fund to general fund, and that helps us, that's based on calculation that we do. It's, it is, it's all backed by a formula that does not deplete the utility fund to its detriment, which is a lesson that colonial, I have to call them out, but they did kind of, those transfers, they were doing too much, and paying too much in general fund, essentially, it was at the detriment of the utility fund, so we still have fund balance enough to do repairs, and we can budget and calculate expenses, so, those are the biggest areas, is expenditures in utility fund. And that's Neptune Island, debt service, of course, paying for the park, which is a big thing, tech personnel is even more than our, we employ a hundred-and-fifty kids, about, and then we have four dedicated staff out there. Food and beverage costs, everything goes in the running, water park, there is. So, if you want to, then go ahead and jump into the expenditures for water, so, and that is gonna be on the page.
And when we talk about that, if y'all.
Ninety, hundred, sorry.
If y'all want to reference it, if you go to page one-fifty-two, if you just wanna see that, so y'all can understand why we see the water park, what the big jump, see here, I wanted y'all to see kind of how we set up this when we did this financing deal. You see, if you look at thirty, twenty-twenty-three, look at the jump from this year, okay? We set that up because the two thousand thirteen hospitality line rolled off, and that was always the intent for the big jump from hospitality dollars to assist, because we knew we would have hospitality funds available to help cover this cost, that's why the payments were set up that way.
So, it did double.
I don't want y'all to be shocked by that when you see that hospitality triggers, right now, we are definitely taking more than we originally hoped from hospitality, absolutely. Did we think COVID would ever happen? No, or that cost goes, no. So, those, I'm thankful that we had hospitality, because we would be utilizing water sewer, we all know that, if, if we didn't have hospitality, but. So, I just wanted to point that out, though, that this is why you're seeing that big jump, if we set it that way with the financing when we did that line deal.
Any questions on any of that, before we move on? All right. So, page one-hundred is our water and sewer division, five-hundred, six-hundred, it is combined, but the expenses are kind of doubled, so you see our water expenses, and you see our sewer expenses, but a lot of our staffing does that. Any questions about water and sewer?
You mentioned one-hundred of the page, jump here, ma'am. You mentioned Brandon chasing down bills. Do we have a sense of how much water, just like, we don't, we can't account for? Yeah, I imagine there's a certain balance that's expected, of cause, you know, connections that aren't metered, leaks.
Well, leaks, we can track, because we're producing the water, and then it all comes back to us, so we're at the beginning of it and the end, and so we have a pretty good idea of how much water we are seeing, it's not really accounted for, some water, though, in certain industries that are outside, or city lines, we do need to get a better handle on that, and that's more of a, can be a political thing, but we're gonna end up fixing that. By doing, we have a plan to put a flow meter essentially at the beginning and the end.
Yeah.
So, but no, we, we can attract early, so, we do have leaks in water, the main thing that you'll see is us treating more, treating more because of groundwater infiltration, so it's not leaks from our water to the side, it's leaks from groundwater that are gonna treat, we're gonna treat it. So, that's probably the better answer, if that makes sense.
I would say, though, the Ferguson systems that we use, you've been asking the data label from that system, they're looking at daily.
Your radio.
It's everything radio read, and, oh, see, I didn't hear you, Sam can speak to it better than I can, I would say.
I know you're doing good.
I've learned a lot from Sam, and truly his crew on that, and I know Brandon and them work within it as well, they've worked really well on that, and they're actually able to tell customers real time, or within, I guess, twenty-four hours of it, if there's a leak or things like that, Brandon, he got no checks in as well, so they get ahead of it, for that part of accounting, from actually like collection standpoint, we did set off debt, I'm gonna take Brandon on player one. He did set off debt with DOR, and the numbers that we've gotten, I can't remember how much we've gotten this year in set off debt, it's probably been thirty thousand set off debt, and what that is, is that's when they go through the tax returns for old accounts that have finalized. And it's first come, first served, so people, they get garnished from their taxes when they file them, I think you're getting a big refund check, not if you, not if we've entered it in, federal's always first, but then city and state and local is first come, first served, and they do a great job of getting those funds in, and it's a really good thing for us, I don't know if you would be interested in this, but we have to do a fat debt reserve, so the accountants come in, the auditors come in, they say, wait, you say you got like two million in accounts receivable, you're not gonna receive all that, and we have to book it and spend on it. So, what he's doing is cleaning that up for us on the front end, getting that money, and it will save us money on the back end, too. He does an exceptional job of collecting money, the calls have helped a lot, too, I know, maybe they've called you before on the automated call.
Free cutoff warning.
Right, they just walk on down and call, and you know, that was one thing Mel really did push for.
I was gonna say.
He's just gonna say it first, okay? So, and going to auto draft, that's good, and then online deals, love it, I still am pushing for, if we can figure out a way to get them credit, switch to online deals, and we'll pay to send out paper every night, Chesterfield did it, y'all, I clicked that button so fast, to switch onto online deals, because I got a one-time bill credit for switching to online billing. Smart Beauty, well, we give it a hard time, it's done a great job of yours cloud, I mean, generates the deals, sends it out with the, the gov website that we use for online deals. Yeah, and we finally have paid our credit card, we don't really get in the number, and in the first month on, I remember sixty people paid that way, so that was sixty less phone calls that our staff would have taken and actually entered the numbers.
That's a good time to kind of put the transition, we are moving to less people coming in, to pay typically the ones who are coming in are the ones who are paying later, and they need to come and take care of it in the office, but we're noticing a huge trend in people, just the way the world now, less face-to-face, more interactive, it opens up more possibilities for us, for our staff, like, finding quicker ways to get the money out, for the pay things. So, we're keeping track of it and watching it as we go, we're gonna, as much as we can stay moderate, we will, but on the wastewater side, that's for the billing, on the wastewater side, we do have quite a bit of infiltration that's coming, and we are having to treat, and that really, and as roots break into these, you know, we have, we have lots of different types of pipes. We have clay pipes, which as soon as you put in the ground, they can crack, but they can last a hundred years like that, then we have some Sunoco pipes, Duramax?
Duropipe.
Duropipe, which is essentially paper and tar, which is just a lovely product that we're replacing, and then, those type of pipes, and essentially, what's happening is that, over the years, we've had infiltration coming, so our waste art treatment plant, that, we need to get a handle on our infiltration, because that's throwing off our numbers going into the stand. We have three-point-five, we don't have capacity, but we're really, probably, it's fifty-two point five, but on summary days, we'll go up to four. We'll succeed our capacity, and we have to go into a reserve pond and things like that, and that does not trigger the same levels, but when you consistently get to the percentage, but it's, it makes it difficult for us to analyze that. So, anytime we can do an improvement of sewer, the products that we're talking about, the arfa, those are designed to help us still take care of some of the infiltration. It's a, it's an epidemic problem across every construction in America, all, all systems are aging, vitrified clay, which is the one that goes into the ground, you normally see, again, it's very hard, but very, it's brittle at the same time, so it can crack immediately and then allow for infiltration, and still retain structure. So, it's, it's a whole different world, but we are trying to fix that, so, we're not losing water on the production side, we're losing it on the fixing side. Long-winded answer to your question, I don't really answer.
How much longer is Duke Power, the ash ponds up there using our sewer?
Well, they still are using, studied there.
So, several years?
Yeah.
I'm gonna check that agreement, though, because we have an agreement, didn't we, for the ash pond?
We did, they built that, the lift station for us, essentially. So, their plans with those ash ponds are to eventually put in a solar farm, or a wind farm, or solar, solar, because eventually, when they do dry out, and they have flat land, and they'll really wanna build on top of it, so we need to, we'll check to see how that's going on, but that lift station. But that lift station also knows us expanding out that direction. So it's still one of the, for us to have that intention.
Yeah, I feel like we don't do a ton of money on that. I know in certain months of the year, we get a really nice check from the ash pond. But I'm looking at the monthly revenue.
Probably flushing once.
Right. It's not, and I just remember when they said, we get a lot of rate, that's good for us. Cause it's, it's even more out there. But I'm interested to go to see how much that's generated monthly.
So Dane, we have industrial customers in MACB that are going to rule, so their expansion is good for us. And so we do keep track of that. Again, it continues to perform. All right. Anything on the water and sewer? You guys want to talk about expenditure? We did it.
Um, Dane.
Matt.
Just on the, um, on my, take the message I'm reading. Cause John and I discussed this earlier.
Sure.
About the Darlington County water and sewer submits payment for the neighborhood.
Yes.
We do the school.
Yes, we do. We treat them. We get paid for that.
But the other residents, how do they pay?
They will, they'll be billed according, they would pay to the county, the county pays us. So they, if they pay to the, the rule, anyone in that area, if we take that sewer in, we're going to, they're going to pay us to treat it. So it's not just the school, it's that whole area, South Park's whole area.
So they send us their one hundred million earnings each month, all in Canada's? And that's how we bill it back out? Cause it, it starts at zero for sewer. There isn't, you know, the water is after a certain amount. And from that zero out, they get charged for that. And we actually bill Darlington County.
So, so, so we don't bill the individual resident?
Correct.
We bill Darlington County water and sewer.
And that is just the, for that area.
For that area around that side of the sewer.
And that's good for me. I don't want to bill on all those residents. That would be, that would be a lot of earnings to have that.
Oh yeah, yeah.
And as well, our sewer infrastructure maintain, we just receive it. We have a reduction to that. So there, so those lift stations are not ours, correct? But it's outside the Darlington County rule of water quality.
No, sir. All, all lift stations out, the city belongs to the county.
Yeah. So we receive the sewer, we treat it, but we don't maintain that line.
A lot, I'd like for us to revisit the agreements or the lawsuits and everything about that. There was a lawsuit some years back, maybe during 2000s about what we can and can't accept from that area.
We're talking about the Four Corners and the San.
The Four Corners, the, you know.
Pull that out of Marty's files.
And, and just to kind of see where we are on that. I mean, it's been 20 years ago.
Yeah, because the, the last market that I built, you know, that built the lift station right in front of Kingsville United.
Exactly. And see, I think that was part of the, right, the lawsuit and everything.
But I, I, I just, I'm just trying to get some clarification as to if we had any responsibility for sewer for residents.
So our only responsibility is to treat it, not to pay it. And so the, the lines from the houses to the sewer lines are not ours.
Right.
And so any issues with backing up flooding during, for spray systems, that's on that. We just treat it. And, and honestly, then fixing would help us because we're taking on that groundwater for the grant, for the treat. So that, well, we have no responsibility as far. But let me review the lawsuits and see what's going on.
Yeah.
There is one I did want to say.
Why don't we look that up? That had something different roll there?
Yeah.
Okay. Get me up again. We'll call the contact.
We mentioned Raul Raring took over that.
Just for, to finish up, the last two capital requests are in this line. This for a F250 truck. And then also something that we are need to help us do control is a new dump truck. This is a large capacity dump truck, the one that we have now. It's a mini, essentially a dump trunk. And we had issues when we, so actually when we did the last clearing in the ditch, we started to slosh out the side because there was too much of that truck. So that's $98,000 and then the trucks that are re-kept.
And power, financial policies that we deal with with utilities, those are ones that we will use for our fund balance. Fund utilities for those, that's not additional debt.
Yes, we'll pay for those dollars.
And we have revenue surplus, so we're not even touching fund balance.
All right. Any other questions? We want to move on to Neptune Island? Yeah, got it. Neptune Island.
What page?
Page 111.
Thank you.
The big jump is debt service. Any questions on any of that? All right. Well, the next is Fund 18, which is going to be our miscellaneous or Mr. Enterprise Fund. So the first one is Stormwater Fund. That's on page 119. I think we have, like I said before, we have one full time board that we got to increase this from some of our promotions. Any questions on the stormwater?
We had batted around stormwater fee.
Right.
What's your, what's the staff feelings on all that?
Sure.
Sure.
Yesterday, okay.
Yeah, I mean, if we knew that fee, I'm, y'all are, y'all are definitely better versed in stormwater and how we.
And thinking about flooding problems and everything we're having, I think that would be a way.
A fee, what I, what I would suggest with the fee is it need to be proportional based on the amount of.
Hard service.
Hard service. So residents would be charged much less than commercial business. So we do essentially get a study for that, look at what it looks like. Make a recommended fee allowance for that. But the main thing with that is that it would not generate enough to really do big projects every year. We couldn't bank it. And so what I've typically seen down in smaller cities, you have a stormwater fee and then you bank it for a couple of years. And when you do a project, have a stormfore payment and refuse to do a project. Having a fund out for stormwater related projects, even though we are not, we don't owe any stormwater, to maintain some of these things would be highly beneficial because otherwise it's kind of out of utilities. And, you know, we don't have a revenue source to back it up.
So what would the study cost?
I just wrote down, find out what costs.
I'm not sure.
I just wrote that in.
Okay.
We would have done one, I think, in the past, unless we just arbitrarily assigned it to $3.
We just arbitrarily assigned.
We do. So we should have done a study to, to show a little bit of, because it needs to be a fee based study.
Well, and there's a lot of lawsuits down in Rattles. Really help me understand that. Because when we did outside for, for more, we do a house recovery and in city, right? Bay, sewer, that you have to be able to justify.
Right.
Why is it costing more?
Arbitrary.
That's right.
And it has to be tied to capital improvement.
So this, they do a lot of stormwater fees as well. ourselves is phenomenal to work with. Let me get a fair, it's free to get a proposal. Let me see what that costs to be. I'm strictly stormwater though, because their stuff is kind of like the three different levels of what you can get, you know? Let me see the difficulties to get that.
And it would have, if implemented, it would apply to carefree property?
Yes.
Sometimes there's a pushback from churches.
Oh, that's a good question.
That's what they do. That's how I may have to figure that out.
You've got large parking lots and things like that?
Stormwater is, the systems are getting better. And as we talked about with DOT, they, they have quite a system to maintain. And so they, it would, it'd probably be in our best interest to start taking active role of theirs. Is that?
The previous stormwater fee that we had was $4 per month on our water bill.
Right.
And to this day, you, city residents don't know what happened to that money.
That money, I believe, went purely to pay for salaries and stuff and did not pay for these projects.
Well, part of it went to the Beradic Pond.
So the money went to the Beradic Pond. But no, I don't, I would, if you did a stormwater fee, like any type of study like that, it's like impact fees are kind of come up in the same vein. You want to tie it to specific uses like projects. And so I would say, if you did a stormwater fee, it would be kind of palatable for residents to say, this is what we're going to do with it. This is the plan that we have placed. Here's the public document. These are the projects, the projects we want to do. This will help fund that. At, anytime we can tie it to something tangible, I think is the best option. But just to collect money and not really have a, think of reason for it, I do agree with that. It's not the best use of that.
Yeah, it was not because I sit here today still unpleased with that. And I just want that to be known.
Understood.
Unlike a lot of other city residents, charged us a fee supposed to be for stormwater for a few years.
Yeah, it was several years.
Several years. And nobody knows what happened.
Sure.
So that's why I'm letting you know.
Oh, sure.
You're probably going to get some pushback from this.
Well, absolutely. And I, I don't blame people for, if people were, were upset at that, rightly so. Maybe you need to have transparency for it. It wasn't wrong. I don't think, I think the study would have helped understand better about where it should have gone.
I think we anticipated the, the letter coming, so that mandating it, and it never did come.
I'll speak to that. So we were somehow.
And we did give some of it to send some of our folks to conferences and training and education for that letter to come.
If we became an MS4, it triggers certain parameters. And we're going to talk about some storm related issues in just a moment, but sanitation and yard debris. But it would trigger certain parameters that we would have to do to maintain. So no more, you know, yard debris, gutters, maintaining things inside. So that's what we were anticipating. We did get skipped on that. I'm not sure how. Is that?
Dan, if I'm not mistaken, if y'all remember, we did a study within the past four years on stormwater. So it's possible some of that fee could have went today.
The, you talking about the FEMA study, came in L Robinson?
Yeah.
It was, it was a pretty good.
That wasn't that big a grant, but it would have been part, it would have been up to lead. I think that was triggered the need for the study to be thought of as sport was coming. We did get skipped and.
All around us didn't.
All around us didn't. I'm not sure. Maybe we had some help from the state above, so I'm not sure. But it, it is an extra cost, but it's still the best practices. So even though we're not MS4, it's still the best practices to maintain your ditches and maintain stronger. It's to help you to avoid flooding. Cause most of the issues that we're having in this FEMA study are just lack of maintenance in these ditches. That overgrates of the infrastructure, a ditch can convey the water very easily, but not when it's covered in trees. And another issue I believe with that, that fee was that commercial properties were charged to San's residential. And that, and that is not, that's not appropriate. So if you look at the amount of water that Walmart has thrown off of their roof, it's a, it's a down, it's essentially a dilution of water.
Yeah.
That's coming off of that thing that you can go kayak and you can throw the water to. And a house is not doing the same thing. So for them both to be charged $4 is inappropriate. And that's what a study will help us do. So we'll have something to go back with, with, we can tie it into specific projects might help. Still going to get yelled at, so it's, it's okay.
Yeah, I, I understand that. But I, like I say, um, this, this is something we were made to do.
Sure.
And it did not pan out. I didn't like the way it was done because it was not done correctly.
Right.
And, and I was very upset by that. And then to not be able to tell us where the money went. Okay, you got to pay it for so many years, then, okay, now.
So I think in this case, we will make sure to do it the appropriate way. And again.
Oh, let's hope everybody forgot about it except me. Something like that.
Well, if, if we do get asked, we will have a detailed history where that money went. I do believe a lot of the money to pay for the pond out by the school, is that the Beradic Pond? And then also.
And 11th Street doesn't flood like it used to.
It does from the hospital.
Downtown doesn't flood like it used to. So, so some good did come out of the money.
It did. And so if we can, let's, let's dispel that myth.
Yeah.
So during this process, let's, let's, let's take it by the horns and explain where that money went. And I'll start from an equal angle.
It's back with Mike Wilson, right? We redid downtown, dug up some bunch of that across the theater.
That 11th Street was when John Clemens was here.
Yeah, James Clemens.
And from, when I saw the old budgets, the deputy director was actually to that as well. Dana, you know, had Dana.
He was paid out of stormwater?
Yeah, he was specifically stormwater. Was that his name? Dana, Dana.
That's right.
Dana.
So we do use it for storm.
It was specific stormwater.
We've managed.
Was here.
Yeah.
Right. Cause it used to be a lot more on that, on that.
He did some of the, some of the engineering on that.
Dana, it was Dana. They used to have a, Dana B, what was Dana?
Daniel Hamilton.
Hamilton's, yeah.
It was before I started. I just remember hearing a lot about that. Now I remember looking at old budgets and seeing that budget.
That's got to be fun, going through old budgets.
It's interesting.
It is, it is for him.
Right.
So that's stormwater.
It is so much fun. Y'all see how it's side by side.
I'm going to move on. Anybody have any questions on stormwater?
We're going to.
Y'all see how it's side by side over bad debt it stands? I mean, I think it's interesting.
All right. Next is concessions. It's Fund 20 and 125, 125. And that is a fairly small number of resident property. So it's included here. Any questions about concessions? Here in the line. We'll move on to.
I'm selling that food out.
That's right.
You did sell that.
All right. Next, I think I skipped, oh, then infrastructure park funds, 129. This is the Volta County Business Park revenue. I believe we have two active, 130.
I have to make sure we get this here.
Sure, I, I've skipped it. So that's our Volta County Business Park. We have two of those, right?
Let's talk about how important this is. Y'all see the last sentence that says 629, 2025.
You know, you're money.
It's going to be done. So when that happens.
That's the first.
That's the first.
That's the first one.
We caught, that was the Walmart.
That's the Walmart one. So what will happen then is we'll just go back to regular tax mileage on that. That's just going to follow the property taxes.
Yeah, the counties are discussing.
They want to give us.
The change in this.
Oh, they're excited.
Yeah.
Sure, they're excited.
Yeah.
They, and they, I, I think we might have a hard time doing it without them. Cause we really, they really gave away a lot, especially when it's active right now. Not that they're impossible, but it's, these are great for cities.
I'm trying to figure out how to calculate what our tax mileage being after we get away from this 80, 20 split.
Does that count?
What is going to be the difference, right? Because the infrastructure bill, the biggest part we pay out of here is, we still have a debt payment. I love that one over there. The other part of that is, um, is due lighting bills. So I need to see what's going to be coming to general fund for property taxes. Is it going to be enough to cover all those due light bills? And where are we going to have to absorb from general fund? That'll be a big question.
So we'll, we'll ask, we get closer, we'll be prepared.
It's just something to consider.
Even at that, the good news is 4th Street has developed.
Oh, goodness. We're still, we're still going to be gone.
Yeah.
It worked.
I just don't know what, I'm interested to see what is the difference in the revenues that will be generated property tax wise versus this 80, 20 split. The counties only have that 1%, y'all, they called me on July 1st every year that way.
They get 1% of the second MCBC, do they?
Yeah, they do.
So they.
They call, but you know what's different? The county sends it to them in the second agreement. We don't. The first agreement, this one, we send a check, but the county will set it up different that time.
Right.
Anything else on that?
What does the second one expire?
I'd say 2028, eight or nine.
See, do we write that? If not, we can add it.
I didn't see it.
Somebody will let Pete know where we are.
Hey Pete, we're about to go to solid waste fund, page 132. All right. Let's go to solid waste fund. Now this is the last big fund we have to talk about. So looking at our solid waste revenues, we are increasing, which is good. And that's been a lot dealing with Vincent, really going after commercial customers really hard. Cause again, we compete. Now, good news there is that we discovered that our rates are very competitive. So that's good to know. But you can see it's been a pretty sizable increase since you've taken over. But you can see, it's been a pretty sizable increase since you've taken over, so good job. But expenses still continue to be pretty much on par, and that's, that's a problem. And that's what we're going to talk about, because really, I would like to, I would like to see similar utilities here. Because the amount of expenses that come with sanitation, trucks, you really want to build up that fund balance really quickly. The growth we have this year is only 48,000 now, still, we're 3% growth. But it's, and that again, we need to see the expenditures, I should not say water and sewer, I'm sorry.
Oh, is that sanitary?
That's not water and sewer.
It's not fun to me.
And we really cut expenses last, the past year, because of everything going on. We're made up of two things, residential and commercial. It's a very complicated type charge.
Slow down, slow down.
I'm sorry, it's 51% residential, 40% commercial. You notice that there is nothing for yard waste, which is our largest, our largest program, which we're going to talk about. So is there any first big questions about sanitation expenditures?
I asked those last night, would you answer those about breaking out residential fuel from commercial fuel?
And that came up because we were, when we were taking stuff to landfill, we wanted to know how much it's actually costing us. So we now split commercial and residential routes, truck routes, as separate fuel lines.
What's the, the history of this landfill versus that landfill, the trucks being managed?
Yeah, so, just real quick, the, when two directors got involved.
Send a quote, is that a quote?
We got to a bit of a tip, which I always cannot give out in the transfer station. And it was not, you know, that versus us type thing, but essentially, they were turning our trucks away a lot, we were having trouble with them. And so the previous two directors that got aside, we're going to just go to the landfill, because we found out that we could dump it for free, essentially. But the landfill is not, I wouldn't say it's as, as well contained as other. It's designed to be easy to dispose, and that truck is going to dump. It's not designed for commercial trucks, it's, it's in our garbage trucks. And so what was happening is as we were going, after a rainstorm, they essentially would pull our trucks with the dump, the dump, the olden, or through the mud and through all that stuff. And it was ripping out of our undercarriages. They also were bending our, it would pull us out of the chains and then bend our lift gates. It was destroying our trucks right in front of us, the, the cost to maintain these trucks skyrocketed. And so we actively sought a solution to that, then the county's belt went down, and so we were waiting on them to come back. And so I think, I don't know, if you had just come on or you're not there yet, we bought a truck, a commercial truck, to, because the two commercial trucks are old. We also made a decision a while back to do a refurb on a truck, which is, I will never, ever, ever recommend a refurb on a commercial or garbage truck. It does not work. You can paint it up much as you want, and it was a hundred, $19,000 paint job, that's about it. So there was a couple of decisions made that were not really in the best interest, I think, of relatively new director who is still getting his feet left, but don't blame him at all. But it, once we realized we did get back to the county, we did, we, the county's not going, we're going to them, so we went back to tipping fees. But as I said, it's $80,000 tipping fees, but it saves on every other year paying $250 for a new truck. Because that's the, they're not disposable, so it's not one-time use. So that's in a nutshell, and we're trying to work better with the county for them to kind of not be so kind of wishy-washy on tipping trucks. They're a business, they need to, they need to provide a service, and we're willing to work with them coming different times to help them when they have, you know, flow issues. Because it's all about how much traction they get in it to push onto the bear, what their de-head permit says, how much traction they can help grab at a time. So there's a lot of variables, we're willing to help, but we're working much better than that.
Is much of that tipping fee generated by us taking yard waste and things over there to be buried, or does that have nothing to do with it?
Yard waste is separate, yard waste is free, it's a different landfill as well.
Different landfill.
It's a tipping fee, right? Tipping bill, tipping fee for yard waste?
No.
This is only residential, just, just only commercial garbage.
The two men and the truck get over there and everything?
Yeah.
Is there no solution for that on the horizon for, you know, again, I've talked to you about putting things in a landfill that would naturally decompose? It just seems so wasteful to even take, you know, people to run a truck anywhere if we have any land or could do something and have people come get free mulch, you know? It takes a long time for that to happen.
Yeah, yard debris is, is what I really want to talk about, this is kind of something that we've been working on. We've talked about this for a while, yard debris is, it's a pretty costly burden for us, it is the most full for weight. You cannot take it to the same landfill, and the reason why they do that, because landfills, of course, are strictly monitored and regulated by the federal government, and they have what's called airtime. And every bit of airtime is essentially capacity, and they don't want to fill it with anything but what they can fit in it. So yard debris and C and D waste, which is your construction material, but also couches, furniture, they won't take it there, because that's going to take away from residential garbage that can produce methane and whatnot and so forth. So there's certain landfills you have to take yard debris to. The issue we're running into is that, and this is just to be honest, is that the effect that we allow free unbagged debris is killing us. The unbagged debris in our gutters is destroying our stormwater system, it's creating such a problem for our people, because we have to pick that up with that tin cloth. And we're destroying yards to pick up a wall pile of one yard of lawn bag. So what we're going to be recommending and proposing to you guys in the ordinance form is actually to go to bag to mandate that all limbs, all small debris leaves and yard grass clippings have to be a leaf bag, a bag, or a roll cart, which we will provide. We also looked into potentially providing for one year lawn and leaf bags to help offset that cost for us, because it is now a cost of that. And it actually be cheaper for us to provide the lawn bags than not. The reason why we need to do this is because, and let me also focus back, we also still would do bulk pickup, but only twice a month, as opposed to four times a month, which is killing us on recital. We also would allow, in, because it will free up some time to pick up the white, the brown day furniture type things, so mattresses, couches, furniture like dressers and whatnot, wood type products, we'll pick those up as well, so you put those on your yard debris pile, we'll pick them up twice a month. The, the thing that we're running into is that we can't sustain yard debris permit as it is. It's, it's too much on our equipment as we're doing it the way we're running it. The tin cloth needs to be, it needs to be phased out, it's destroying our yards, you don't know how much dirt we replace in people's yards. I believe a couple of you can call me for dirt yourselves.
That's the one that comes down from above?
That's the one that, no, that's the, the inside. The one from above is actually better.
Better?
Oh, yeah.
It's better, it's just slower.
It's slower, and, but if you're limiting that to a big pile, we're getting four, because the main thing is that if you have several little bags, and I meant to take pictures to show you, but I think you guys will receive a million of lawn leaf bags, the little pile that's on the curb, it takes just as much time to stop what we're doing, set up the equipment, pick it up, rake it up, as it does to pick up a large pile sometimes. And that's, that can be every single house, and so we're running behind, but the yard debris permit itself needs to be repaired. Natalie warned me of this, my first came here, she doesn't know what to do with yard debris, because it's a problem. This is a big change for people. It's going to be probably not well received by people, some people. But we can expand what we're offering, eliminate some of the dump sites that are happening, because people can now put their furniture out and pick it up. And then also, the main thing, I think, is that we can stop inundating our stormwater system, having to spend $80,000 to clean up ditches, because there's just too much debris. It, it can't continue as we know.
Part of the people putting the debris that gets in our ditches, if we're hauling it off for free, which there.
So I don't know.
That is not fun at all for the county.
We're not, we, it's a charge. So the.
Not the yard debris, it's the brown.
There's a separate charge for the brown, for the trucks, if I call you and say, I've got a sofa to pick up.
Yeah, that's a twenty, that's up to $25.
It's $15 per rock.
Yeah, so people are throwing those in ditches.
Okay.
Now, yard debris, what's happening is that when a little leaf bag in the gutter is just washing into the storm drain. And so it's creating issues with our, our stormers are backing up, and like I said, most of the maintenance is taking care of limbs and stuff that have eliminated the, kind of, the, the storm.
And after a storm, it takes our guys' time to go clean away from those storm drains while they can.
Yeah.
To open it back up. Just to keep all that gathering there.
Yeah, and the highlights of it, we kind of skipped over, but the, the roll cart itself, so we have several neighborhoods that are part of a test program, the brown roll carts. It's, it's working out very well, we have great success, and what we want to do is almost get almost ever to have that, because.
Did you have one of them?
I have that, yeah. If you can have your thing again, it works out great.
So it's in the budget to continue that phase, the phase out?
That's a smart thing to do, you know, get people to adopt that, I mean, you can get a lot in that little car.
The main thing we're going to run into is, is the people who have yard, yard services. So if it's a contractor who comes out to take care of your yard, like a, a mass service or something like that, they are supposed to haul away the debris. If it's a gentleman who's coming out, or a lady who's coming out to take care, it's essentially a yard guy, because everyone has a yard actually. They can leave that out, because that's just, that's just the extension of the unit, essentially, but if you have a contracted service that is a business service that may need to pull it away. A lot of times you'll see a company come into the street, they'll be five or six ounces and throw it all in the curb, and you're not supposed to do that. So we do have codes going after that, but that is time consuming, which we don't have time for, because we're taking care of yard debris all the time. But this is a, this is getting forward to being more forward thinking about how we're impacting our city and impacting our operations.
So our expenses there, the man hours that it takes to do that, then to haul it somewhere, even though there's no tipping fee, where is that stationed?
That's in Lee County, is that from?
No, that's in Darlington County, it's the same place as the transportation, it's just in the back.
But it's not the same, the landfill is much better, because it's different.
But we're still rolling trucks over there, taking hours.
Fuel, man hours, fuel, everything.
Maintenance on the trucks.
So what's the solution?
As well as, can we draw that, is there no place we can put those? There is a local, there is a more local place that will take it, we've explored two places, one is that Sunoco has, right? Yes, for festival, we have a storm.
Yeah.
When we have a storm, so we're, we're exploring that option, and, and even in keeping it bagged, our brand thing will not affect that, we can still take it, we can still take it bagged, either plastic or paper. It's still, it's very thin, so it's easier, but that's the direction that we're.
But we don't have a property where we could just dump that stuff.
We do not, yeah.
But we don't.
There is another.
I'm thinking Pooton Street, but I guess that's not.
Arbor Works takes theirs to another local area, and they allow free mulch and mulch it for free. So we're exploring this, it's just the amount of volume, what we have is more.
How many tons a month?
Uh, off the top of my head, but I know it's more than garbage. We take more, we take more tonnage in yard waste than we do garbage.
It's just, that's what I'm saying.
It's just a sheer, it's a sheer amount of that.
I can't remember though, with this thing that we're talking about with yard debris, going to the two sinkups for large, won't that save? Was that, or was that when we were going to do the recycling part? Does that save you any days off for y'all? I can't remember, I'm having to make a route. If you go to the pickup twice a month.
Roll, the rolling trucks have, have to tonnage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say on man hours.
Can you imagine? I mean, that's going to be a big saving, I think that will be a big help.
What we're getting with brown carts, did everybody do, did you go study that? If all of us had a brown cart, how would that feel?
We would just run it like a normal garbage truck, and just put a couple guys on the back, and they just tipped it in the back.
And still send out twice a month, you have tin, tin cloth, new trucks.
And see, it's noted here, I was interested to see, we're considering this phase two of that oil. And it was noted in here that they go all.
What page are you on?
Um, I just had the, I was just reading it.
I just, I do anticipate plans from Home Avenue.
Oh, it's on page 139.
Your district?
Thanks, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Law.
So last year made it 115, and for fiscal year 2023, they're planning to implement phase two, which is 160 cars. Uh, we made sure not to include the specific street or name of where they came up with that, just so that one in here, since we just, we didn't include what phase two.
But if you guys are interested in that, I would recommend purchasing more, because the roll cart, now roll carts are a little higher right now, residents, and all of that. But that's why we think that purchasing bags, we've done bulk sales of these things for like 25 cents a bag, 20 cents a bag. It's, for $6,000, I think we'd get several thousand packs of it, so it was a pretty good deal.
It's just easier for people to put in a roll cart than a bag.
Well, that's the goal.
We would love to be able to do a roll cart.
We've, we've pitched the idea of going to the roll carts, since we have the, the thing, and some are more frequent flyers, if you say. Some are like, sure, some are dead, no, and I'm not going to hurt you if you do it. So I won't name names, throw out my neighbors. But the main thing here is that we need, this is something that we need to do for sustainability this program. Leslie Kintz, we've talked about it a year ago, and it's, it's needs to be done now, and, uh, this is something I've been thinking about since I got here. And this is something that we need to do to help sustain the program.
So it has worked successfully on.
In a, in a small pilot.
Risen Circle.
Risen Circle, some areas of.
And I've got it wrestled. I don't, I haven't seen any others in my neighborhood, Nancy just heard that they were available, and she called, and they brought us one.
Okay.
I, I don't know that I have a neighborhood that's used.
And I'm about to be the only one on my street.
Well, they, um, because there was a, a letter that was sent out.
Yeah.
You know, they, this is a pilot project.
Right.
And, you know, it, it just stopped there, so we did proceed and further.
Oh, no, we continued, the pilot, the project's still going on, it's.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm saying, just like you said, Nancy heard about it, she called for one, and Johnny called.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so, um, what's going to be available, and until you're able to get carts, they may have to use brown bags.
That's right.
Well, if that, at no cost.
No, we would provide them all, the ramp up.
Um, that will help it to be more palatable to citizens to be able to do.
Yeah.
Um, and hopefully it will, because if you have a, a, a pile of leaves, then the next thing you see drink bottles in, and you see drink.
Well, it catches garbage, you know, it catches all sorts of stuff, it's, and then what really happens after it rains, that pile gets taken down the way, and eventually ends up on top of the storm drain and clogs it, and then our guys are going out to the steel rigs and taking care of it. It's, it's, it's such a domino effect of how things will improve, just getting that out of the gutter. If we were in MS four, we would not be allowed us to do it, so this is being proactive.
Who's the MS four, is the, that's the sort of.
Yeah, it's, it's actually the, the, the classification for a stormwater city that falls in MS four laws, I don't know what it stands for, I apologize. But we, again, we, it skipped us for whatever reason, because it was coming down, and that's, we weren't correct, we were ramping up for that reason.
Because we kept getting warnings that you're, it's coming, it's coming, but we never, we never got the dates in session.
So what I've, what we're doing is, staff is already kind of prepared, on break times, going to be repealing or replacing section park, and we will see it, and make tent, if any, if there's no other objection to it. But I think this is the best we're going forward, we will take, get some flack, but we'll ramp it up and take time.
And also, Dan, um, we may need to clarify as well, that it will not be for landlords to say, you can't.
Exactly, that's still under.
MS four is municipal, separate storm sewer system.
We already.
Four guys to the.
You missed two first.
So we, we already had a separate system, back in the day, they thought sewer and stormwater just need to combine, that's why people see the stormwater, go, that's sewer and top. So ours is separate already, some cities have combined quarters, so that's, that's a negative, so we might have skipped it because we didn't have that issue. I don't know the reason, but this is, as we go forward, this is going to, I think, operational, it's next to the sense for us.
Daniel, we're going to allow a couple of times for peak season?
Yeah, I would probably anticipate doing this and having a.
As far as putting it out by the curb, because, you know, a lot of times in March or April, or whatever, and I'm just guilty, I'll almost have my whole front curb full, because I've done the spring cleaning.
Well, see, that, that's the issue that slows us up. So, so it's, it. The main thing there is that, so if, if we had a leaf back, which we got rid of as well during its time period, which I would agree with, a leaf back could, that would take care of you, I would, we would say during leaf season, put it out to the curb on the day, the day before, and we'll come with a leaf back and suck it off, only leaves. No bricks, you know, sticks or cats in the leaf pile, because that happens, see that? So the leaf back would do that, but we don't have a leaf back, so we would have to have it backed, leaf season is when we are completely inundated, so we'd have to have it backed. Again, if we ran MS four, you would not be able to do that anyway. So I would think that we would definitely allow for a ramp up time and several, you know, get free passes several times before, because eventually, it's going to be a penalty code enforcement penalty that's potentially going to take it. Okay, because we have to enforce it sometimes.
Yeah, I, like I told you, I don't love the bags, to me, they're more trash, like you're creating more trash, but I think overall, it's the right thing.
I think the goal is against the roll carts.
It'd be a little bumpy, but we'll adjust along the way.
Well, one thing that we had that could have, that could essentially make it so everyone had a yard debris cart immediately, was to completely abolish our recycling program, and let a company like Republic have it, and for $15 a month, they could shuffle it up into having recycling. Then we could take every single roll cart that's blue, which we have a couple of that, 1100, 1%?
Yeah.
Something like that, and I could be, could be a little less, and give those out as yard waste, put a sense on it as yard waste, and then we could almost completely give those to every customer in the city. Recycling is another one of those things, we are not making money on it, it is a good service, I think we offer, but there are other entities offering. Republic did say they could, they could actually dump it for us and use our existing carts for $5 a customer that we would pay. But then, if you were to, we only have, I think customers.
About 1100, yeah.
So if everyone in the city though recycled, we would lose money, but our 1100 recycling, that's volunteer based. So I didn't want to tackle yard debris and recycling the same year, because I don't want to have a riot, but that is out there. You could essentially, that would save us 100. So I didn't want to tackle yard debris and recycling the same year, because I don't want to have a riot. But that is out there. You could essentially, that would save us a hundred thousand dollars in operating today. If we cancel a yard, it'd be perfect, and Republic can take it over.
Can they yard debris take that?
Yeah.
You mean cancel recycling?
Recycling, excuse me, recycling, we can't, so that's, because the recycling truck is twenty-five years old?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six years old.
Just turned twenty-six.
So we need a new recycling truck. The, um, the cost of goods, because we take it to Sunoco, they have to then ship it to, um, Columbia to be bailed, so they're, or to be processed, so they're bailing whole, like such a cool material. And then shipping away. So it's typically actually costs us money to recycle, up to six thousand dollars or so a year that we're paying for them to take, then they make money off of it. Because the process for them is to have to take it to another facility, and the cost for that is offsetting, I guess. But, um, and then personnel, so we have two daycare personnel for recycling. It is, what, once, you have it once every other week?
Yes, every other week.
But essentially, it's one route a week, one route, one, so they're constantly running. If you got rid of recycling, allowing a private hauler to do it, who's capable, to make Republic come in again and do it. And let a customer choose to do it for fifteen dollars a month.
We pay them.
No, not the fifteen.
I would pay the fifteen, so they don't get mad we're taking away the service.
Well, I would only pay the five, but I'm worried about, because five dollars at eleven hundred customers is, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars. Great. Sounds like a saver. But then we have another eleven hundred sign up, now it's a hundred and ten. And we have another eleven hundred signing, thirty-three hundred.
No, if we had a mass influx of people doing recycling, that'd be impressive. I just don't see them.
I don't know. You never know what's gonna happen. I just, I don't want to take a hundred thousand dollar operation in terms of two hundred thousand dollars, because we just opted to operate. The main thing here is that recycling is a cost to us, and I would probably say next year is gonna be the time we have to look at another truck. So that's another two hundred and forty thousand dollars or so.
And we can go to Republic.
Right.
So it makes sense to just do leaves for now and then fight that battle next year.
And, and another.
And with the hooks, is something to change with the cost?
To your, to your point about the, um, the bag, um, it will also help keep people honest, because believe it or not, people will take their leaves and take them down the street and put them on a vacant lot. So that, that will help curb some of that type of vanity.
I think so. And then doing a new kind of campaign.
I'm, I'm taking pictures and I'm calling. And, and, you know, it, it, because it makes no sense.
No, it doesn't. And I think, you know, we have the county, I think it's all like, you can't assume everyone has a truck that needs to take to the couch, the county may feel, because I could take one up to the transport convenience station and bypass twenty-five dollars.
Right.
Or fifteen dollars to do the couch out. So I think offering this, it is a new service we're offering for free. You know, and we'll campaign the heck out of it. We're gonna do phone calls, keep it moving, but it's, I think this is the direction we're giving.
It'll, it'll truly help in the, um, disturb public district.
I think so.
You know, people, uh, landlords and big tenants, and then they take it around the block and put it in a nice green ditch, and, you know, it, it's just real, real bad. But this will help clean that area up and keep it clean up. And as well as, um, help with the drainage.
So I'm looking at not a, it's not gonna increase our costs other than maybe some more roll carts and then bags this year. Um, we'll get some numbers for that, see what it'll look like, and we'll, before the, hopefully before the budget, we can have that in, um, in the budget.
We have roll carts in. Did you want to do more than the nine five hundred?
We did, we did. Nine five hundred.
Nine five hundred dollars for a hundred and sixty?
I would say, because we have thirty-two hundred customers, and we have a hundred eighty carts, aren't we?
Uh, about two hundred.
So we need to ramp up this pretty quickly, but not that quick, because I'm not sure how many people are gonna take a roll cart. Definitely bad, it's already the offer. And I would anticipate starting, maybe not even this season. Start it the next season, or start getting stuff out there and not charging anybody, and then we get into next year, and it's fully enforced. So we'll, we'll provide behind the timeline, but when this is gonna be ramped up, to give people time to accept it. But just getting the idea that this is gonna change it is very important. So.
I don't want to be more, yeah, I was thinking about the impact on the budget, because I feel like when y'all were talking through what we were gonna change on the code, it was gonna be they can provide their bag, or we will provide their bag.
Well, we were, we were talking about, yeah, they can still provide their bags, because we're gonna, honestly, guys, we're gonna go with the most cost effective bag we can find. Um, and that's putting it nicely. So people are probably gonna opt to go with the loads bags. And just say the brown paper bags, kind of standard under end. Um, the ones we're suggesting for mass purchase are a little bit, and that's to encourage people to go to the cart at some point. This is not a permanent, we just provide bags. We often deserve a roll cart, but once they get into the house, it's sixty-two dollars for a roll cart in the now or last years at that house. So it's, it's gonna be just that brown can that's tied to the brick can, so you have two roll carts now. Okay? All right. Anything else on sanitation?
That, that project will also help with aesthetics.
I think so.
Throughout the entire, the entire city. If we stop, if we stop making those holes and having to put dirt in them.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right. Yep, and tearing out cable lines and whatnot.
Water meter.
Water meter, everything, yeah.
Keep coast gas lines.
Anything else? So that before hospitality fund? I believe so. All right. Hospitality. Um, so this is just a kind of breakdown, so hospitality continues to grow and accommodations is not gonna get worse, which is good. But it's, we, we do, I do see that it's going back up at some point. Um, this is the twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, I think our twenty twenty-two numbers are even higher.
Oh, yeah.
So we're, we're doing much better. And so what we're seeing is accommodations starting to back up. Um, hospitality continues to perform. So people never really shuttered that much during COVID.
How much of that do we get to keep hospitality?
Well, um.
We send it some off to the state, right?
We need some hospitality, so our fund, we transfer almost, is there without the shooter?
Yeah.
To cover the natural. So we have a built-in reserve. He was asking.
No, I asked you, okay, if we bring in a million or two, is that a million or two?
Oh, yeah, that's ours.
That's our, this is our.
It's right here. They don't send any of this to state. All the local people on the page, they pay us directly. They don't go to the owner.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
So that's ours.
We do have state accommodations, that's probably, we do that. And now we're going to the state and they send it to us.
How much of that can we transfer to general fund now?
So right now.
It used to be like forty percent or something, didn't it?
We transfer, uh, because right now, we get forces going to take over that.
So much of the accommodations has to be for tourism and marketing. And we get to choose who we give that to, we give it to ourselves.
I'm gonna make sure we get our budget changes here.
That would be right, but that would be a question here. That combination's tax committee is getting ready to meet soon. When are they meeting, Chantilly? Accommodation's tax committee.
Um, this took the N M A.
Yeah.
Are we still challenged finding a driver with a CDL license that we have to have to move the stage? Do I understand that correctly? We have to have a CDL to move that.
A certi.
A class A.
Yeah, so that, um, so we talk a little bit.
Only the stages by federal can come up with that. You have any rest?
Sorry?
Just have only one or two people against, right? So that means somebody's gotta come out on the weekend.
Yeah, we try to rotate as much as we can, but.
So Bobby, currently, um, utilities handles up the most part, and I have, it's our heavy equipment operators who are, all of our utility workers and on-call ones, they do that. So we only have three or four right now. And it is a problem. And the stage is, is over. It takes about an hour to set up now versus what it took fifteen minutes before, because you have to level it out, the level system's kind of broken. That stage is a problem. Uh, we're, we're having quite a bit of burnout line from our presence. It hit the, it kind of hit the, 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 it's the, it's drop up the camel's back over New Year's, when they want us to come out on New Year's and get it, and that was one person we had to come out and get it. So we canceled that. We couldn't come in that, that staff, they just couldn't do it. And the issues we have is that none of our other jobs require a class A C D L. All of our equipment is one of the class B C D L. And the issue is our class A drivers can go make a kill on somewhere else. So we do have, um, a quote for a new stage, um, one that is a button start to essentially set up and go, and it does require a class A C D L. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It can be trailed by a two fifty, F two fifty. Right now, we're using our mini dump truck to turn up, because that's the one that can handle it. And now just maneuvering downtown and whatnot, because it's going to be super.
Something like that, when I hear that, this a hundred and fifty, I'd spend that in a heartbeat when you think of a twenty-two million dollar budget, not having to get somebody with C D L A. That is where money makes sense, because again, that's a revenue production, people rent that stage and do that. Some sort of things that make sense.
And even further, the small.
Go buy a new stage.
Yeah, the new smaller stage would be more versatile. I think people would look at more, because it's a fit.
We have.
Oh, but y'all, y'all don't see the political side of what we do with from the staff standpoint on it. Everyone down here thinks they should get it for free. This, this is, the, the, I mean, all of them are like, no, don't do another stage because what, we're, we're not a rental business, right? That's a great journey. I would love that idea of it. I, I agree on the class, C D L class driver. But y'all, it became so much work on them, because the P K festival was doing it, it was pulling to all these cities. And let's keep it here. I think that's great for city events. I'm all about it. But when y'all get into the businesses renting it, they're like, we're bringing new money, we should get it for free. The things we face, they feel like it's another city service, and it's talking two different things. I think it would be much better, absolutely. Uh, we shut down a lot of capital projects this year, and that's where we went back and forth. And we debate this all the time.
So the stage is no different than them renting this car, and it shouldn't be viewed as.
You would see it that way, right? That feels right to me, but it's not. From their perception, it's not that way.
For the few that was screaming, I mean, we got to do what's best for the city.
Agreed. Well, I'll tell you, what doesn't look best for the city, honestly, is to build a permanent stage at Berry Park and not have a transportable stage, because that is the issue that we have. It's, it logistically.
Things will check, cities evolve, and Berry Park may not be the part.
Well, I don't necessarily, I don't like what Berry Park is. What I'm saying is that operationally, it is a nightmare to manage. This is, the stage requires heavy manpower to take.
And we can't leave it.
And we can't leave it, while we're talking about it's a liability issue. So, so there's two, there's two arguments here. One, if you want to keep the stage, absolutely, we have to get a new stage. But we also have to really consider how we're doing with this, if we take care of it. The second option is to not have a stage, we only have city events. It is, it is, it's been a nightmare since it was created. Um, now they force the issue of, well, I'm told people to do it, and this has been a sticky point since two thousand and nine it was purchased.
I think we had a tune here to talk about the stage.
So it's.
Pretty close to it.
So that, that's the thing, guys.
It moved that and we rented out to other cities as well.
And we did. And that was two gentlemen driving. I mean, we're, we're picking these things up at three forty sometimes, because it takes time for the band to take up the part. It's a great idea, guys.
Yes.
Logistically, if we're gonna do it, we have to do it right. Um, it's, it's very difficult for us to achieve. So my recommendation would be to only use it for city events, if anything. We could keep the same stage we're at now, but we'll use it for city events. Like if we shut down Bourbon House, we can live with that, that's okay. But not just to shut down the street for, for a liability or something.
It is, it is difficult, y'all. And now so he ran into even, a lot of times these events are nonprofit related, a lot. And that's a very difficult discussion. Because then we're after them, and y'all at least gotta get us to cover our costs. Because if we're doing OT, we're asking people to do this every weekend.
Give up their holidays.
You can't leave it. It is, it is way more complicated. That's why I say why people go into the rental business, because there's definitely some big money to be made. Um, but it is hard.
If you don't believe it, rent some of those tents and chairs and for weddings or something.
Right.
Sam, you have a comment?
Show some of the expression.
Daniel, remember also, as we, you and I, we had discussed, we had said before, that is a big billboard for the city of Harpsville, it's got our name on it. And we are having trouble trying to find somebody to actually service this trailer. As far as we know, nothing has ever been done to it. No high software.
We're having issues.
None of that stuff.
And so the same point, it's, it's great to promote the city, but Sam and I talk a lot, it's also bad when the city of Harpsville's stuck inside the road, but you can't get it out. It's a hydro.
Drive somebody's town.
And you have to tow it. So that's the issue we run into, because it goes to Darlington, to the racetrack. We only rented to about four different places. We kind of cut back so much, because we don't have the manpower to do it, and then just.
We've also had to blackout certain dates.
The guys who are, are doing it are actually the on, on utility, on-call utility staff. So if there's a, there's a stage rental, they're taking it in the middle of the night, so if there's a water leak, they have to stop what they're doing, but we have to bring other staff into it, because the stage is taking the rest.
Let me ask this question. Um, is there any way that we should think about setting up that Berry Park, um, permanently? And then purchasing a new one that, um, would be used for other type events for, if, what's your thought, Daniel, what you gotta get to?
Sounds like you got, seems like you got a weekend job.
And the thing is, there are also other options. We're ready to go that way. This truck, this stage that we found for a hundred and fifty, it's a little bit smaller, but it's still, it's actually more open. It's really cool. And it's a one button start it. But there are also stages, and this is where we have to work with our insurance, to see if this is available to us. But there are ones that are all inclusive, with the cab attached to it. So instead of like, we're driving it, you sign the liability thing, you have your insurance, it's like ready to you haul. And you take it, pick it up, and then we are out of it. So then my staff is not having to drive it and pick it up, because, for instance, the governor's school, we love them, great partners, but they had a graduation. So instead of coming downtown, they wanted to set up on their, I'm not picking up the other school, but I am. They wanted to do the graduation on their site, and they, they required it at sunup, um, to do it, because they had a seven AM graduation start or something like that. So we need to be there at four in the morning to get started, because the band was coming, everything was coming, and it's pitch black on Sunday. And my crew, I can't have my staff, they're, they're doing it. They have a hundred thousand, you know, over, how many gross pounds is that there? Eighty thousand pounds or something? So I mean, this is a huge piece of equipment with a dump truck going home. In the middle of the night, it's a huge safety issue. I mean, this thing is not, it's, it's, again, in principle, I love that concept. But I would have rather done a designated downtown spot, maybe not Berry Park, um, as opposed to that. So if you want to do that, I would recommend we go after, and that's probably more of a hundred, if you have it, but all inclusive, that's a different rent. And start it up and close it down yourselves. And then if it breaks, then we have insurance to cover it.
Just solve all your problems. Leave the old stage where it is. It's permanent. We don't rent stages anymore. We don't move the stage. And anybody else needs some other stages, they have to go later.
And we could do that, and the only thing I would say is that we would still move it for city events, because if a, if an open house.
You have to have it for a lot longer.
If you choose to move it for city events, that's fine, you know, you do.
That's like.
You're not moving in the middle of the night, you're not there at four o'clock anymore, but just quit renting.
Because we spend the ten.
Even Darlington Race Track, I mean, y'all, they didn't warn us, because the police were involved. It was something for police. It's, it is difficult discussions.
And just, we just, we just, you know, some things run their course. We've done it for ten years, we just exit that business. We have a stage for us.
Agreed.
We want to, and we're just done with that, and we're not having to take.
Bobby, if you, if you champion that to this group right now, my C two A crew will carry you out.
It's just one of those things, we're talking about, we get bargained, there's a solution to it, do it.
And no one, no one wants to pay downtown.
Just do it. When you first said a hundred and fifty for the other stage, I was gonna, just do it. But if it's that much of a chore, and we can still use it, but we move it, we want to, and you keep it over yonder, and we move it, we want it, and we just don't rent it.
Does that, does that mean if someone wants to use our stage, they hold their event in Berry Park?
Yeah.
Not just the city, but anybody?
Absolutely.
That's exactly right. If they want our stage, it's gonna be a hurry.
We're not so sure that there's gonna be people without in the downtown, going to that event, spending money, staying in hotels, whatever.
Yeah. You're putting them right there in their hotels, you're doing everything else, that becomes a simple hook. This is the best downtown part of that side of things.
So what's the recommendation, is we get out of the stadium?
We, we've already limited, we've already kind of been basing it out, because of, I mean, New Year's, I felt like was the breaking point.
But free up all of our, just what we just heard, just free our people. It's one of those things, don't barter our people down at any point. It's not that much.
Oh, we don't like that one.
So then you just, you just get out.
We don't.
We just go do it later.
Um, the only, we're able to cover our costs, because we have to use hospitality over time. That personnel line, that's what we're willing to.
So we will honor our.
Well, that leads me to my, my next question.
Well, we'll honor our contract, um, for the stage rental. Or did we already do that?
You already did.
Oh, good.
And it went swimming, didn't it?
Well, in town stuff again isn't as difficult, but we can.
It gets messy there.
And it, it, the precision to put that thing for college out, you gentlemen, it's, it's amazing. I'm surprised we haven't done something worse, so. But thank you.
Thank y'all. From an employee morale standpoint, that would be a lot. From an employee morale standpoint, that would be the line to get.
Yes, it would. Because I don't think that that conversation, I think it had happened at one point, but maybe just remarried badly and it did not go the way it was.
We did make money on, to start off with.
We did.
Yeah, because we charged ten or twelve hundred dollars and.
It went down to seven hundred dollars and it's still being asked to wait that every time.
Yeah.
You know.
But now if we're gonna keep it, I would like for us, if we hadn't put any money in it, get the hydraulics or whatever fixed on it and go back to the.
We, we tried to get the first couple of tenants for them to come do a quote to fix it.
It's just three.
Crazy, so I said, well, y'all do a lot with PD Fleet, can y'all see if they can get some stuff on it because they do all our other stuff.
PD Fleet, I want to miss one.
Right.
So look, we're gonna continue to get someone out. The issue is that the hydraulic lines are covered and that's what we've noticed with all of these stages. Everything's exposed to the back of it so you can see it because right now we just don't have it. So we will continue to have it serviced, but not running it as much as certain things in the lifetime of this thing. And we certainly can walk in like a bull, huh?
So a scarf around it.
Put a scarf on it.
Let's go break, we're very nice.
Only the nicest, thank you.
Only the nicest.
But, but still, I asked a question about having a movable stage. Not that we rent it to other cities, but he said it's a more, it's a smaller, compact stage.
So the stage that we, the stage we found, we found the tow behind Carroll was that are a hundred, hundred to a hundred fifty thousand. A hundred fifty was one that was comparable to what we have now. A little shorter, but still not, it didn't be the same, it was much lighter, so it took, two by, two fifty or very nice fifteen hundred pull. But what I was getting at is that that's still a staff time, even though it's still a push button for us.
Okay.
If we were gonna stay with the rental business, I would suggest it, but I think we're going to get out of it too, guys. It's just not worth the money. And I think again, I would rather encourage them to come downtown, you know, and stay downtown and do the event downtown and triple into the, the business.
And, and the reason I'm asking is because if we have an event now and you still look at, we don't have that stage. We don't have that stage.
No, and we still have a platform that we do have, but that is more for, you know, some sort of.
More smaller.
It's smaller.
Is that what was used for the veteran's day thing?
Yes.
And that part is kind of.
We used, we used it at Holiday House, you know, we used to, right in front of the tree. Yeah, that's the one we used to.
He used to always camp, see all the play with it, just get out of the stage.
Well, I was gonna ask, it's a work session, so we don't vote, is that sort of thing that needs a vote?
No, just in general consensus.
Okay, if there's like, if it's agreeable, it's just a staff decision.
Just give them, give them the guilty to go. We know we're at stages.
At least in their phone calls, we're about to add a lot easier.
And after we made our card out.
Actually, yeah, it does help us because me and Samantha, since Florence left, we've been dealing with a lot of people at the stage. So it's great that taking the rentals off is really great for us, but we will have a lot of people mad at us. I already have the people in mind that I'm thinking about.
Do we need to make some marketing or that effective as well?
Yeah, we will.
Give some, give some notice.
We're very excited and very grateful for you guys.
Yes, sir.
And, for sure.
We'll handle it now, this will make sure that we're cool. We have a new contract tomorrow. We'll have a cutoff rate at some point if it will stay, but we'll still use it for city.
Probably, well, graduation.
Get some of that right later.
We'll handle it. Trouble. All right, the debt service fund, now we're just getting into the remaining stuff.
What page are you on now?
Page one forty-six, this is more information.
Did you have anything?
Yeah, I, I just think I'll bring this up in hospitality. I had lunch, well, Daniel and I had lunch with PDRTA.
Yes.
And once again, they are asking for some financial support for their program. They claim they're getting fourteen thousand dollars from the county and maybe even from the city of Darlington and some of the other cities and, and counties that they serve. And they're just asking basically Hartsfield to do, in their shape, it's just familiar, it's not the first time this happened, or this asked and made. And I think they make a compelling argument about bringing people to town, it's been a little bit of money. Couldn't quantify it, wouldn't know where to start, but I think they provide a valuable service. My understanding is we said no in the past because we don't make donations. Per, per ordinance from ninety-three or whatever. But I do think it's a good program, it's probably worth our buy-in because it really helps our citizens and there's some amount of, of money we make from the taxes and the money being spent by those individuals. So I wanted to throw that out there to see what council, how council felt about it this year. And to put a dollar figure in it, I was thinking we meet their last ask of seventy-five hundred this first year and kind of see how that goes. The, the issue is how do we fund it so that it's not a donation, so that we legally can do it? I also noticed that we have a longstanding, and you may be able to tell me the history of the Trees for Tomorrow program? I feel like that's a similar, they, they provide a service to the community, it's not.
I think we're paying for designation.
Yeah, seventy-five hundred dollars, so that was another, like, where I got that number from.
Is that how we get the Trees for Tomorrow designation for Tree City?
Yeah.
Maybe PDRTA can fill us in for designation.
Or just a service contract, if we've had a service for us.
That's right, I would say that, I would say go that route. Definitely not hospitality, I put that back in general fund. I put it in four ten, hospitality, you get it to stay all, what we can and can't spend it on, and I'd be careful with it.
Darlington is using hospitality, but there, we are, because they might be measured into, I think, the side of Hill.
Side of Hill, Darlington, so that's.
I would be nervous, I would not put that under hospitality. When I think of, maybe I'm wrong, do we use that, that they go to the street medical department and things like that?
They go shop, they go shopping to doctors and pharmacies and groceries.
They go to doctor's appointment.
There's a certain.
They use it. The last time that the young lady came for us and asked us for a donation, I asked that we consider doing that. Now, I was told that we made a one-time donation of, I think, twelve hundred dollars that they used for signage.
We did, we did a donation in kind.
Of any kind.
The, the thing about it is, you know, there's, the contract essentially of the ordinance has, because we're having, we're trying to get it there with people asking for money. Excuse me, anyone who was a nonprofit would say, you know, we provide a service, but this has a Hartsfield dedicated route called the Heart Route. So it is a service that we provide and essentially they're providing to the citizens of Hartsfield. So I would just do a service contract.
Yeah, it is a co-creminal organization, right? It's not like it's a five oh one C three, so there's.
It is, interestingly, a classification.
I could not find much information on the website, very hard to follow on what they are.
It's that this particular council appoints a member of their board.
Yes, Albert someone, or saw the name on it, wasn't Albert, but I saw, hey, there's someone from Hartsfield this thing.
So if we can make it happen, just, we need an amount you want to do. Seventy-five hundred, okay. I think it's seventy thousand, seventy-five hundred.
And, and also that, that would keep the fares free. Because the people that use that bus, sometimes I pick them up, you know, if I'm at Walmart and I see somebody that caught the bus, you know, there and they say, well.
Um, you might, can you draw a hundred?
Okay, and so they'll see the bus pass, oh, he's on time, you know, so they really, really depend on this bus. It, it makes a, goes up across the lake.
It's just the side of hill now, bracing it.
Yeah, but it, it, it really does what it wants to do, I mean, what it's supposed to do. And otherwise, these people, tax fare, oh my God, and gas has gone up. It, it was really hurt. And they have, like I said, at, at the medical room, they go to Walmart, it's just so many different things that they can do. And I think it would be a good thing for us to give that one-time donation.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a good, a good service for us to support.
If y'all aren't agreeing on that, is that something that y'all want to do? Is that, because I would mean, we gotta update the book, because we're going for that general fund.
And we have to get a contract.
I don't like making quick decisions on something we just hearing about. I know we've heard from them before, but we're gonna bring us something to the council.
So that's how, what we can do is that doesn't have to look at the budget where it says, that would be fine. Once we have things in hand and we can, it would be a part of what y'all approve on it and I would put it out on the special projects and services line, but if that kind of don't have to, we can wait on it. It wouldn't need to, it wouldn't be big enough for an amendment, it wouldn't be any of that. I would either do a lot of special projects and services for four ten or I would do contingency, that's what I would do.
I need my index card to travel.
That's just your administration.
General fund, don't worry. It wouldn't be for just one year though, because you know, you do a contract, it's an ongoing thing.
That's right.
You can hear a ride, Bobby, so, there's.
We're not just called out specifically, it'll be if it comes after July one, if with that dollar amount is.
Well, I guess they're also, they are asking for.
They need to add some of that though, because they don't have our stock.
She was supposed to get you some information the last time.
She didn't.
She did.
I gave my business cards, because I really wanted to see the financials to understand.
Right.
And I didn't get it.
And they didn't even run forward, because I don't change channels at night. And this group has been.
I'd love to see your financials.
And we never got it. So I still have to, that organization has a history of just going to the Indiana Space, it was at the helm at that time. And they're doing the best job now they've ever done.
And I will say, we have a relationship with them.
She or she leads, you know, we need to know organizations.
And we're, we're starting, they use our parking lot now, they're having troubles with everything, so we are allowed to, because they're very thankful for that. Their parking, their police department is in the back, that's in the parking lot.
We'll get to you, so when you're looking at a service contract, even then, right?
Yeah, but they.
So, and they have similar ones in other cities that they can provide to us and we're going to, so we'll get that information too.
Just make the requirement that they provide the financials that you want.
Yeah, um, this is quite a, a contact.
First time. We would look foolish putting money in the sucker.
I have, I have an email from him.
Okay, well, for, I mean, whoever y'all want, if y'all want us to follow, we can, I just want to get funding just one.
We'll leave it out of the budget for now.
More than that, finances and services.
I do know that they are looking at it because they want to anticipate their, their things. I think what we can single to now potentially is the amount we're considering. If you guys are going that far, but I'm not sure if I want to.
I would say we're considering something about our volunteer.
I'll tell you what, the next question is gonna be, they're gonna ask to come up for a council. They've kind of already hinted at that.
And they need to bring financials.
They need to bring their financials.
Bring your financials.
She came that night, a year, year and a half ago, we, we just said, that sounds wonderful, we'd love to understand more, give us some financials.
Moving on to the last remaining questions.
See if they can be at the May meeting or.
May is gonna be a, we got a big one.
I agree.
It's a little heavy.
Because they're gonna ask that question, I know that he's already asked.
Well, yeah.
I just want them to ring the numbers.
They can do it a budget, I'm just like.
I'll let them know.
All right, the next things are just more, are more information, is that correct? I mean, the debt service fund is just kind of looking at what our debts are.
Debt service?
Yeah, debt service fund.
That's the GeoDebt, that's the one that we have to set a deal on.
Yeah, and then, and then moving to the Pemixes and grant matches.
Sure, you did.
Where do they come from?
What page are you on now?
I started, I said it before.
He's just flipping her.
I said it before, but everyone's paying attention, what, forty-five? Sharon.
I heard you.
Um, that's the start of our remaining funds. And then getting into the remainder is our budget schedules.
Right, same, it's a little bit.
So just to go back, yep, yep, set for which?
Six meals.
For how long?
We're still waiting on it, so we'll get that debt schedule.
Looking in the future, how many more years?
Let's look in six. Let's start with that schedule.
Intention.
Probably a hundred years old.
Oh, it has only, a project maturity, six, one, twenty, twenty-seven. So at that point, we, we would have to, we would roll that debt off. But that would, yeah, that debt would roll off.
Five more years?
Look at her, she's started in there, she's had a great job.
Is it six meals or seven?
It's six.
Six meals. Six meals.
I think that the other one.
Is the two thousand fifteen water service.
That one, that's the public work stadium and that was the Ferguson meters, water meters, water meters and public work complex.
This, radio meters for two thousand fifteen?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a lot longer.
And that, um, on the debt service meter, that was six.
Six meals?
It's that guy in a heart.
Hartsfield.
It's in the city of Hartsfield. Page one forty-eight, you see the bump up in the debt services again, so we're taking now, we'll have hospitality money coming in two thousand thirteen from the end. We just, it's not, it's increased, but doesn't have to come out of water to.
No, and that, this is total debt across the board when you look on page one forty-eight, is that, sorry, is that.
Yeah, that's everything.
That's all the debt we have across the city and we are gonna see them pick the bump up now because from the refinancing, we're starting to make payments.
Correct.
Yep.
We got that reprieved for a couple of weeks.
That's right. That's right.
So, but that build-in, the bump up that we knew was coming is covered by, by hospitality as well.
That's right, because we had to roll off the hospital.
We get asked and figures get put out there in the mayoral campaign.
Absolutely, it was so much trouble.
That we owe and so forth, that's what we owe.
That's exactly right. And it's, and it's not forty-two million.
If you add them all up.
It's not, it's not even in.
That's general.
Supposedly, God, the most we got is twenty-two. I mean.
I mean, twenty-two plus twenty-one.
What was he doing?
I will be referring all questions to the city manager and I will assist the city manager.
Happy to help.
Follow the debt.
All right.
And I really, y'all had them, I, I love the status that, that they were able to pull with, he can, he talked about it in the email. It really does speak to the hard work from the staff, departments that put in when you look at the growth of that, all the fund balances.
One fifty-eight, pick one to you.
Yeah, a lot more work than that.
Our fund balance, it's hats off to all our staff and stuff, they really needed a challenge. And they thought it would take two years to get to that fifteen or seventeen to.
Fifteen.
Fifteen to seventeen percent, and I remember sitting at twenty-five. So we're gonna be in a situation where we're gonna have to spend money because our fund balance is such a hell of a find out. But I mean, that is a testament to the hard work of the staff, to, to challenge them to cut spending, to be more judicious in what they're doing, to be smart about it and they, they answered it.
Well, I think it's a tribute to everybody that economic growth in the city the last few years, we, Bob and I talked about, cut taxes one time and haven't raised taxes since then. And if you look at the county and you look at the school district, just like every year, something else.
Heck, because you saw for them, you did this, for them to dig the cost of living, they're adding four point four meals.
Yeah.
Meals all to cover that.
If you have not read the minutes, the minutes from the county council.
April meeting.
April budget workshop.
For the county.
Jeanette Bishop sent that out, you need to read it.
Did you watch their meeting last night? How contentious that got on the budget? Now they're back to first reading it, you need to go and watch that stuff. Kurt Aston's asking, very good question, but very good question.
Henry, those questions, if you feed to me, Bobby.
Brought in a ring, but he brought in a ranger.
He brought in a ranger.
And again, grant matches, I'll be tested that, but we are, we're really pushing for a lot of the grant matches, we're gonna be in the Marco, we already talked a lot about that. And I think we still have a couple, the CDPG grant, the FEMA studies in there, it's being phased one phase, re-edited still phase. And it's escrow not phased funded, so we don't have many grants in here that we're looking at, but we're still gonna be going after it as much as we can. We have one or two that hits that one as well, it's gonna be ramping that up, but. We've, we're near the end of the hood, so what else you guys got?
I wanted to ask a question about the, I guess, grant and grant matches in the, this third, brother, brother, this. I know we had a couple of two or thirties that we had to complete before we could apply.
So it's one right now, it's a CDPG grant for South Park West Station. It has been, we run it to the ways. It is, we're running to delays, materials, and then also scheduling with the company. The company, greatest destruction, we will be putting them on notice if they're not here next week, which they have now promised for the third time to be here. I will only have to move on. So I'll be happy to talk to them about that. I spoke to Eric, who's the self-personal management assistant for, I mean, no problem saying that. The, once that's done, though, because that is holding up our process, we cannot apply for any other CDPG grants. The money that we dedicated this go-around, we're going to be using that to, we've already started engaging, we're getting surveys done, and, and cemetery, I remember that, Greenlaw.
Greenlaw.
So I have.
We have Mary Avenue, we're getting Greenlaw, and then we're going to get my home yet.
Yeah, and I have a staff that are drawing up plans for six through, so we might actually go save three thousand dollars, and we're drawing, by the way, accounts that we do, so. So if that happens, and we're going to go into next year, and I would love to say, if we could use the authority to fund a more robust study, or something to do. I think that if we have to, we could fund some things like that, but South Parkville is on the radar for next year, so we're going. So that's the funding we're going to go on for this thing.
So when does council have a chance to look at this, again, what's the timeline for?
Well, we've, we got through the budget workshop, we're going to make amendments, we're going to release, have to.
Okay, but today, still, this was like staff's recommendations, which was, it doesn't mean this.
This is our proposed budget. That's your proposed budget for you guys, do you have anything you want to talk about today?
Well, what we talked about last year was you guys were going to say, look, here's the pool of money that we got, that we see as extra revenue, and here's what we're choosing to spend it. Y'all are going to give us the same amount of money, because we had differing ideas about where we would spend it, not in the same places that you would. Y'all said, okay, we'll get that for you next year, and we were going to have time to look at it and go, well. And getting it in May, that's, you know, we had a chance to have this meeting maybe earlier, but we remember that conversation, when we said, at the end of all that mess last year? Y'all kind of knew where the money was, is what we said, and y'all would say, this is how much is available, and now council, if you have any different ideas, tell us what you're thinking.
I think this is the venue we do that, and we've already made several changes, just informally talking about PDRTA and different things. So if there's any suggestions we've got, I think we need to bring it up here.
Yeah, Johnny, just getting this last week, and it's my fault that I didn't get a chance to pick it up in the last day or two, but again, not knowing, I, I spent five hours yesterday going through it, and kind of got an idea about how much revenue. We were expecting year over year on these things, and then looking to see where they wanted to put it, and a lot of it I liked, but there's some other things, I think, about our twenty thirty plan. I think about the priorities that we set, and what I don't see is anything that moves the city forward toward the objectives that we drew on. One of those big things that we talked about, and it goes back to what I meant while I go about taking revenue to leverage it and do more, get more revenue with it. Do more festivals, build out our parks, fix our things, you know, just, just do the things to create some money for us down the road, and more livability things. And make our parks and recreation as good as they can be, those things take, and we haven't had a chance to.
That would be a year out of planning, in my opinion. When, when I was hired for this job, I was told my number one role, my biggest responsibility, is to prepare a proposed budget, a balanced budget, right? We come in based off of the discussions and the policies that are in place, and how we see the city moving forward. Our responsibility is to come to y'all with a complete proposed budget. The, the back and forth of what staff recommends versus what the pools of money, that is, that is not my understanding of how the process does work on it. Now, I think some things where we talk about, yours are the bigger visions, right? I wrote down the special purpose district for parks and rec, the capital improvement plan. For parks and rec, it's not something that, that can happen overnight. That, that's a bigger picture, and one of those big things is the work that we have to put in with county council to get parks and rec back. That's not throwing money at the problem. I think hiring staff like Elise and doing those type of things to help develop and continue on the path for Main Street. Absolutely encompasses the things that you're talking about with festivals and doing more. If there is one number, though, that we did go through this last year, I do remember that, if there is one line where you're hoping to see an increase, that, that we could, absolutely, let's have that discussion. Daniel, what do you think?
Now's the time to do that, this is, this is it. So I, I don't recall the conversation about pools of money being discussed as far as. What pocket money the council is saying, because that's not your job. Your job is to improve a proposed budget, not to argue.
Father, you said twenty thirty, were you talking about strat plan twenty thirty or both?
Well, we have a twenty, we had a twenty twenty plan, now we have a twenty thirty plan.
So the comprehensive, there's some of the stra, our strategic planning meeting stuff.
So that is, that is the budget, strategic planning, which is what council came up with, their goals and desires for next year, so. Mary's and Cemetery is in, is, again, in the budget, but not part of those numbers. New website, you know, revamping our programs for more downtown festivals, that's part hiring the main street manager, part of that, we got to get people in place. I'm just not sure what else, I guess I do need more description of what is revenue generating, that's not, is what a specific example is. Because that's, if that's what we're missing, then now's the time to discuss it, but what is exactly a revenue generating project that is not a overseas budget?
Well, one of them that is in the budget, we didn't get a chance to go back to it, because we were talking about so many things, was like marketing for Neptune. It's a revenue generator, but yet we cut the marketing on it by twenty thousand.
We get so much back tag grants, we have more than enough, and we haven't, oh, you can go ahead, Stig, this is her project.
Yeah, so that's what I'm working on currently, and trying to get more money and stuff. So for tag grants, we get, it's a.
What is the tag?
It's a fifty-fifty.
Tag tourism.
A tourism in, um.
It's their S P D O.
It's a, like, S P R T, tourism basically focused, and so it's a fifty-fifty match grant. So they give us forty-five, and we have fifty in the budget, so I'll have over ninety thousand dollars to work on, to promote Neptune, and to also promote our city. We did a boosted one for our Holiday House last year, went really well, and we saw an increase in that, so we'll do that this year as well. ATAX will also be using that money to also advertise, but locally, because you can't use tag locally, you have to use it outside your fifty mile radius. So you've been using it at Charlotte and Warnerburg.
So we are sure an increase in advertising, particularly means tags, tours, and advertising.
So, so that would have been a little note to put in there, all it shows is a twenty thousand dollar deduction.
In the description for that, that line, um, charity benefits. I don't know what everything is, where it actually breaks down and talks about it. It's on page one sixteen, in the chart there, so it shows a negative twenty thousand dollars in the bracket for estimated tag reimbursement. And that's where it got, and the budget is showing, and you just look at the overall, like, budget from seventy to fifty, but then when you look at the chart, you see that we took twenty off just for our estimated funding, that we're getting from tag.
So that's how we reflect it. We still spent twenty thousand, we just didn't get it back. We didn't cut it.
So that's the last twenty thousand.
That's right.
So really, it's, we're spending less than a million.
I'll tell you one, too, social media, Casey, I probably could fill up with your company, it's great, though, it's much cheaper, right? The whole way we should have to advertise, and Billboard's great for us with Warnerburg, but social media changed the game, makes it so much cheaper for us.
We've got a lot of businesses downtown that have really taken advantage of social media.
Tell you what, with Blood and Pineapple, folks, I'm going to go down there and get it, and see it. They posted some new shoes last night.
Daniel, you were asking for some specifics, many cities have done more Main Street grants or different type grants to encourage their. That's, that's leveraging money, that's taking money from the budget, offering it out there, in hopes they'll improve the property, which improves revenue. That was just nothing like that, anyway.
No, that's, we need the staff, so right now, they focus, yeah, they do, you're doing the streets, they'll do that. Has been fine grants that are more available, we have plenty for the city, but right now, we're just, that gets out first.
Well, I see there's two cool projects that are going on.
Grants like us setting aside, the city setting aside fifty thousand dollars like we used to do when we first started Main Street, and we said, you know, we'll give you this for a facade grant. And you improve your building, and we did a low interest loan associated with it, but that was the city, not going out.
I think some of that was from Sanoco, too, they did facade grants for, and they suggested that.
Well, it wasn't, I'm sorry, I was present down in Tampa when we started, and everything, we got some money from Sanoco, they were instrumental in getting us off the ground, but we had merchants, we collected dues.
Right, and Main Street, Main Street's being rebuilt, so Main Street did not collect dues from last several years. So we are rebuilding the Main Street program, again, we're accredited, provisional accreditation, so. But that is something that, so if we want to talk about adding a grant for facades, we've got now.
Sure, Warnerburg, now's the time, so.
And I think for those who want to have a commission or something in place for that, because we ran into this with demolition, we need to have a clear process, application process for those type of things. That is why next year, is one of my goals, even though I'm not in planning zoning, is to have an application approval process to start updating these properties demolished at the unit. Because some people were taking it, being, that's not what that program is for. I think the same could be said from the facade standpoint of that, and one thing that I know they were found, and Elise, you may be taking this over, and Parks and Beautification was going to help with this, I love it, y'all. It was going to be like a catalog of things that already are approved by ARB, that we could, right, that we could fund, like rocking chairs, different things that are approved by, they're already, they don't have to come before them each time. And we could provide funding for that, and that's something Parks and Beautification is looking into. Absolutely, we want to continue to grow downtown on Main Street.
You mean Parking and Beautification.
Parking and Beautification. So, absolutely, I love the catalog I did, because it's already approved.
We just want to say, that is a little more than undertaking, people want to, they want to know what it would take to approve, like, what colors you can paint a building, that's part of, more of a zoning and planning, I mean, overhauls, front scooters, or, but ARB was this. Measurable to it, it's just something that when the new planning zone comes in, it'll be part of that, so. Part of our strategic plan was to revamp our codes, and so that is, that doesn't cost us just that time. So we're going to be doing that ourselves, and doing a revamp for our strategic codes, planning zone, code enforcement. So that could be part of it.
So, um, you're working on the demolition application process.
Yes, we, we discovered, we, it shuttered during COVID, we didn't really cut it, and we added more money, but then we didn't realize that it was a process that was to go through a foundation and things like that, and I would like to explore.
Yeah, that's why. I never understood.
Here it is.
And agency, you know, that's why I suggested, any agency that we're giving money to, or that we're accepting money from, and running through that, they city, city business. That we have to have that information, because misinformation, or no information, you know, we've been jammed up with that, and I don't want to see us go bad.
Sure.
Okay.
Bob?
I'm good.
I think that for Main Street, when we start accepting those dues and all, absolutely, let's get back on that grant front to do that.
And our, our own stuff, but, you know, and that's, that takes time to see what is, you know, best practice across the country, so, I mean, there's several programs that are successful in other cities, and we can look, but what if there's stuff that would have worked in the past, and we need to revamp it?
Right, and Jenny, the director, she's really great, so.
Yeah, we work with Jenny Paul Hall, so, Main Street's on the rise.
Trace, anything else? Or Bob? Any other ideas or concerns, anything from the staff? Opportunities?
It was all here.
Well, hearing no objection. We can, sir. Thanks, everybody.
And there, take out bucks and gigs, one wants some food. Help yourself.